All right, we'll get started. Welcome to the June 28, 2023 Board of Commissioners Budget Hearings. Please silence your cell phones and pagers and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are looking at the back of the chambers. We'll call them in order. I'll recognize Mr. Gary Drews to do the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. First on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is the time that we're going to do the physical 2024 Pennington County Budget Hearings. Just before I recognize the State of Employment Presentation from HR Director Carol Bancroft, I'd just like to read for the record the mission statement of Pennington County. The mission of Pennington County, South Dakota, is to provide quality public services as determined by law and citizen needs through the innovative leadership and the teamwork of its people, officials, and employees. Services shall be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner consistent with available human, natural, and economic resources. I just wanted to reflect that for the record for the beginning of the Budget Hearings. With that, I'll recognize Carol Bancroft for the State of Employment Presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. And what I'm going to share with you today is the State of Employment set the tone as far as when we're looking at the budget, that how do we need to look towards our most valued asset, which is our employees. So let's start with where have all the workers gone? As we know, the labor market is very tight these days, and so we're going to take a look at the national from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, that some of the data that they have provided, as well as we'll look at the state level from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and then also at the county level from the South Dakota Department of Labor. So as far as what the latest data shows from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and this is as of April 2023, that there are 9.9 million job openings in the United States, but only 5.8 million unemployed workers. So that's lots of jobs, but not enough workers to fill them. If every unemployed person in the country found a job, we would still have 4.2 million open jobs in the nation. So a survey was conducted by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and what that was, was a survey of unemployed workers who lost their jobs during the pandemic, on what is keeping them from returning to work. So there were 27% that indicated the need to be home and care for children or other family members, that that has made the return to work difficult or impossible. And we are also very well aware that within this statistic, that there are parents who are struggling with the cost of daycare, as well as not only the cost, but also the availability of childcare. And so 28% also indicated that they have been ill, and their health has taken priority overlooking for work. And the survey also revealed that some are still concerned about COVID-19 at work, and indicate that the pay is too low, or are more focused on acquiring new skills and education before reentering the job market. Another factor is the global grain of the workforce. It's shrinking, that the U.S. population growth is projected over the next five years at 0.6%. So to remain competitive, employers must reinvent their way of thinking to attract generational workers who have value, work-life balance. So looking at some of the statistics from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and I'm looking at the first two top rows, the openings and the hires, that if you'll look at February of 2022 through February of 2023 as a comparison, you'll see that the openings in the state of South Dakota were in the thousands, in the 30,000 range, and the number of hires were right at that 20,000 range. So there's a gap, a very strategic gap there, that our openings remain consistently high compared to the ability to hire. Also looking at the unemployment rates, and this is from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics as well, that when you look at the Rapid City area, that you'll see in the top blue line that I've highlighted with the red circle, that is for February of 2022, and the dark blue is for February of 2023. That 2.9% was the unemployment rate in 2022, and it has dropped down to 2.4% in February of '23. And then if you look at Pennington County, which is the lower highlighted with the red circle, that in February of 2022, it was 2.8%, and in February of 2023, it had dropped down to 20, or 2.3%. So another key takeaway is to look at inflation, and what the impact of that is on the labor force. So when you compare as far as in the 12-month percentage change as of February 2023, and again, this is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics on the Consumer Price Index, that if you look at all items, it shows that in the West, North, Central, which is where South Dakota is considered in that area, that it shows that the inflation rate has dropped down to 5.4% compared to the national average of 6%. However, if you look at the food costs, you'll see that in our area, it's 11.4%, where the national average is 9.5%. And then as far as energy, that that is 2.5% in our region, and the national average is 5.2. But you'll see that I've highlighted with big question marks, that we know that here in our area, due to the growth that's going on and the inflation rate that we're experiencing in Pennington County and Rapid City area, that our average is above what is the West, North, Central region. So this is a bit misleading when you look at it. It looks like it's a good news story, but we know that in our area, that does not hold to be true. Then the South Dakota Department of Labor and Regulation, that it shows, and this is as of April of 2023, that Pennington County's unemployment rate was at 1.9%. So when you look at it from the information I shared previously, in February, it was at 2.3%, and now in April, it's dropped down to 1.9%. And we know that because of the seasonality, as far as the tourism industry, which is one of our primary industries in this region, that it's dropping even lower than that at this point in time. So the labor pool continues to tighten in our area. Another factor that I was asked to provide was, what's the wage outlook in the next three to five years and beyond? And you know, you'll see here that I'm saying I don't have a crystal ball to be able to give you that information. I can share with you that the projections for the national average wage increase, that they're projecting because of inflation starting to come down, that the wages will settle back down within the next three years, and the pre-pandemic level is where they're anticipating it to go to, and that would be around the 3% to 5% annual increase. Projections for Pennington County, of course, are far more challenging due to our low unemployment, the 18% growth factor that is projected, as well as the higher-than-average inflation rate, and our short labor supply. So we can expect that we're going to feel these labor cost pressures at least through So giving you a summary as far as what's going on with our employees here in Pennington County, that when we look at the turnover rate, and this is from our HR scorecard, that the national average on an annual basis is 20.2% turnover that you can anticipate. And with Pennington County, that you can see the trend from 2017 through 2022, that when the pandemic hit particularly, we were starting to see that, but it was actually starting to trend that direction already in 2019. We are above the national average, for example, in 2021 at 26.9%, and in 2022 at 26.3%. So our turnover rate is higher than what the national average is. And then I broke it down further to look at a four-month average, so this is January through April, that if you look at a national average for that period of time, it would be 5% would be the average. And again, you can see here in Pennington County that we are above the national average in 2021, 2022, and 2023. And I brought this into play as well, that we heard so much about the Great Resignation. Well, with the labor market status as it is now, it's turning into what they call the Great Reshuffle. In other words, you have to attract people who are currently employed elsewhere in order to be able to fill your open positions. So the employee summary, if you look at as far as how long does it take us to hire, and this is from the point in time in which we post until we actually make a job offer, that if you look at the last year, it was an overall average of 72 days that it was taking us to fill an open position. And then breaking that down and looking at the last six months, and the reason I talk about that is because there are some things that we have put into play that we are looking to reduce that trend. So in the last six months, it's now at 63 days as an overall average. And I just want to draw out, if you look at the month of June, this data was pulled on the first part of June, so there wasn't any data. That's why you see that it's flat. So some of the key takeaways about the days to hire is that it has reduced from 72 to 63 days, which is a positive trend with a nine-day reduction. And we're monitoring it very closely to determine if some enhancements that we've put into place are drivers for this continued improvement. So some of those enhancements are, is that we're using marketing strategies with any of our postings, and we're really promoting what's the employee value proposition. So in the past, our postings that would have been out there on an average for Pennington County would have just been showing as far as what the position title was, what the essential functions were, and what the compensation would be. And so instead of using that route, what we're now doing is it's a marketing statement, telling who Pennington County is and what we have to offer, and putting our benefits right up front, and the stability of working for Pennington County. And we are seeing some enhancements of that nature that are starting to draw applicants. So we're also using other recruitment sources. In the past, we were using just NeoGov, but we've branched out, we're using South Dakota Works, Elevate, the colleges and universities, et cetera. So a much broader scope as far as our recruitment efforts. And then, of course, we're evaluating the wages and benefits for recruitment and retention, and that's a work in progress at this time. Excuse me. So just looking at our census data, just to help you understand as far as the state of our employees, is that as of the end of May, we had 812 active employees. And breaking that down further, that of those 812 employees, we had 36 employees who are age 65 or over. We have 54 employees who are 54 years of age and are over, and then we have 60 employees who have completed 20 years of service. So that's our vulnerable group, that they are at risk of retiring and having the full benefits package from working with Pennington County. So that is 18.5% of our employees. And then if you look also, that we have 388 employees who are considered legacy employees, and there's some that are also in that 150 employees that are at risk of retiring. So there's a blend of employees there. But there are 388 of our employees who, they are planning on 20 years of service so that they get that 50% of sick leave pay. That's one of the perks for them to stay with us for 20 years. And that's 47.8% of our employees. Probably most notable here, in addition to what we're at risk of those retiring, is that we have 426 employees with less than four years of service. And to break that down further, that 97% or 97 of those employees have less than six months of service, so they are new hires. 123 employees have six months to one year of service, and then you're going to start to see a diminishing return on our investment, that there are 83 employees that are in their second year of service, 63 employees in their third year of service, and 60 employees in their fourth year of service. So that's a downward trend that we're starting to see, and if we don't do something to disrupt ourselves on how do we retain those employees in those earlier years of service, we are at significant risk. And so when I attended the SHRM conference, that one of the things that they talked about is that if you can retain your employees for three years, you've got it, that they're probably going to stay with you for the duration. And so that that's a critical timeframe in working with our employees and making sure that we are supporting them to want to be a part of Pennington County. So some of the things that have happened so far, just as a quick review, that we've made some recent policy changes, and great appreciation from all of the staff, as well as the Compensation Committee, and myself included in that, as far as what the Commissioners have done. And so the sick leave usage for facilities closures, that that has assisted our employees with being able to manage their benefit time during those partial days of closure. And then the really big win was the facilities closure leave, that our employees who work emergency events are also paid time and a half during that, so recognizing their great efforts, as well as keeping our employees whole who are unable to work during those facility closures. So just giving you an insight into what that impact was for our employees before this decision was made, is that countywide, on the dates of December 13th and 14th, as well as the 22nd of December and February 22nd, when we had the facilities closure due to the storm events, that there were 17,081 vacation hours that our employees had to forfeit in order to cover them and keep them whole as far as their compensation. That was a financial impact to our employees of $435,973, that they were not going to be able to plan for a vacation to be able to have that work-life balance. And so on an individual average on those dates, that it was a total of about 36 hours or almost one week of vacation that they were forfeiting in order to have pay protection during that time, and the financial impact on an average was $850. So that's why it's such a huge win and deep appreciation to the Commissioners for moving forward with putting that into play as far as the facilities closure leave. So wage adjustments, just to give you an update on where we're at with that, that there is different pieces to this, that the elected officials, that we did complete that wage study and adjustment in April of 2023 for the elected officials, and the budget impact of that was $67,900. And the county employees, where we're at with that, is the wage adjustment of 2024, that the Commission has approved to start with a 4% increase. And then the market analysis and wage study in process for 2025, that we're going to be giving you a complete update on that in July, but we're well underway with that study and targeting the middle part of November to the end part of November to be able to give you a complete analysis and wage study. So the future hiring needs is the last segment of this, that the lurking variables that we're facing is the growth in the county, the inflation for food, housing, and energy, which have a direct impact on our employees, the low unemployment rate, as well as the labor cost pressures that we're experiencing. So looking at this as far as future hiring needs, the projected population growth for this area in Pennington County is 18.9%. And I want to qualify that, that if you look at the population change between 2010 and 2020, then it was 15%. So what that 18.9% in the next 10 years is indicating is that we can expect that we would have that normal 15% growth and an additional 3.9% growth. So that's what these numbers and figures are calculated on. And so with that, the key takeaway from this information, what does that mean to Pennington County? That means that we have a minimum hiring need of an additional 100 to 150 employees. So the future hiring needs, looking at the economic indicators, that I thought this was interesting to share as well, that the labor force participation rate is at 65.97%. And what that means is that there's about 3,000 or more employees are possible people who could be employed who are not participating in the labor force here within Pennington County, in the Rapid City area. And our unemployment rate as of April 2023 for Rapid City was 1.6%. So that's the steep uphill challenge that we're facing. Looking at the inflation rate, and this is the national average, what they, you're seeing is that downward trend that we've been looking at, is that in April of 2023, the national trend was at 4.93%. And so the goal that they are working with, with the Federal Reserve, is to bring it back into the 2% range. And so what you're going to see in these upcoming slides is that Pennington County's inflation rate remains higher than the national average. So looking at this, the cost of living in South Dakota, that you'll see I've highlighted with the red circle up on the top graph, is Rapid City is 2.1% higher in cost of living than what the national average is. And that's supported down in the bottom grid, showing again Rapid City is at 2.1% compared to the national average. The only other community of significance in South Dakota for this purposes that is greater than the national average is Deadwood. So that, I thought that was very interesting to know that info as well. So talking about the current state and our future hiring needs, that this is from our Census report of May 2023, and it's broken down by department to show you how many people we currently have in those positions, and this is number of noses, so to speak, that we have 812 employees, and we have open positions as of the first part of June, of 55 open positions that we are actively recruiting for. And so there is a disclaimer that there could be a little bit of a disconnect between those two numbers, and it's because the census was as of May 22, 2023, and the open positions report was as of June 1st, so there might be some gaps in info there. Not significant, though. So in summary, our challenges truly are the labor force and the impact of that 18.9% projected population growth on recruitment and retention, with the unemployment rate being less than 2%. And staffing needs for the county population growth by 2030 are projected to be at 100 to 150 additional employees, and that will be a direct impact on our mandated services, as well as the trickle-down effect for any of the support functions. And if you remember back in the facilities needs assessment by 2040, that this number of 100 to 150 tops us out right at about 1,000 employees, and the needs assessment for facility shows that by the year 2040, that we would be right around 1,300. So our current state, we've made great progress with the Compensation Committee and Commissioners with enhancements to our benefits and undertaking the wage study, but there is more work that needs to be done to meet the needs of our employees and for future employees. So the call to action, that the decisions that are being made today will have long-term effects. This Board of Commissioners is really key to the future of Pennington County and the citizens that we serve. So we respectfully request the Commissioners be willing to take calculated risks, to reinvent ourselves in how we approach making our most valued asset, our employees, a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. And I also want to take a moment to thank you. You took the time to set up appointments with each Commissioner and kind of go over this before the Budget Hearings, and so I applaud you on that. And this is great information that I think, you know, we've never really, we've heard it before, but to have it put into a presentation and given to the community as whole also, I think is very important, and so I appreciate it. So with that, I'm going to go to Commissioners for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Carol, quick question for you. While you were talking through it about the turnover rate, and how we're a little bit higher the last couple of years, does that take in consideration terminations, retirements, medical, all that? So does it take in consideration all of that? So that's all part of that turnover number?
Yes, it is. And one of our goals in the upcoming year is to take that exit information and make sure that we can do a drill down to understand exactly what are the reasons why people are leaving. Currently, we don't have that level of detail.
Gotcha. And Mr. Chair, follow-up on that one. Is there a way to compare what the ratio is for the previous years when we were lower than average? I mean, did we have an increased bump? Maybe we had more retirements, and some of them we know because people are like, okay, I've got health issues, so I'm retiring, COVID-19. There was a lot of different factors. I just, I just want to know, the two years that we started going up, do we see a higher number of turnover because of basically societal factors that have made it happen? Does that make sense?
It does.
And then eventually, hopefully, we'll come back down to a regular norm again. I'm just wondering if there's an anomaly. That's probably what my biggest question is.
What I will do is research that and see if I can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Drews.
Carol, a lot of this took place before your arrival. But in '21, '22, at almost every meeting, we were dealing with a department of trying to make it so that they could either retain or hire people. And we, as a Commission, didn't have a lot to go on during that period of time as to what the projections for the future were going to be. And so we made probably a lot of wild stabs at trying to correct issues that were taking place at the time. So at this point in time, would you say, based on the things that happened during that course time, are we pretty well in balance for each department at this point in time? Have we been able to bring that back to a sense of fitting into a plan that seems to be working and proceed from that? Or are there some major adjustments that still need to be made at some department level?
I think there are still major adjustments, and you're seeing that with the wage study that we're doing, that we're looking at each of the various positions to start with, and seeing as far as do we have the right job descriptions, and then what should be the right compensation level for those. But I think that at this point in time, what I'm hearing from the department heads, and I suspect you'll probably hear from them as well, is that they still feel that challenge of being able to recruit and hire and retain people, that they're struggling under the weight of what has happened in the last couple of years, and we need to figure out some strategies on how we can help them with that.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross, connect.
So Carol, we reached out to other major employees in the employers in Rapid City area to see what their, what their, you know, we take the 55 that we're short, and we have 812, that's 6.7%. So have we reached out to other employers to... So have we reached out to the other employers to see where they're at in comparison to us?
We have had conversation with the city of Rapid City to understand some of the things that they're doing to try to abate the gap that they have. I've also had the opportunity to talk to Black Hills Federal Credit Union, and they're facing the same challenges that we are. And when I was at SHRM Annual Conference last couple of weeks, that was the common theme that was throughout the conference, is how are we going to approach this, knowing and understanding it's a national problem? It isn't just local, but we feel it probably more so than some areas of the country, just because of the growth that we're going through, which is driving the inflation in the area.
So when an employee terminates, do they, I don't know if they tell you where, you know, we're going to this employer, this employer. I just wondered who we're losing, the ones that do terminate, if they're going to another position in Rapid City, where they're going and why?
It's a combination, that there are some people, of course, I'll start with the most positive story. Some people are going home to be closer to family, so they're leaving the area. They have found a position in that area that they feel more comfortable with. Then we have those individuals, they're job hopping, basically, they're going to other people, that great reshuffle that's going on, and what is appealing to them is it has probably a higher starting wage than what we are offering, so wages are playing into it. Another factor that we need to work on as well, it could be the culture that they are working in that just is not a good fit for them. And so it might also be the type of work that they thought it was going to be a good fit, but at the end of the day, it's something that they don't like. And of course, as we talked about, there's retirement that is in this, and I think many people are deciding that it's just, it's time for retirement at this point in time, because mental health, and I'm going to hit this one really hard, that is something that you don't hear a lot about COVID anymore. But one of the things that COVID did to our country is it surfaced mental health issues, and that is probably the number one concern that employers really need to be aware of, is the mental health of our employees.
So I'm assuming we're the only major employer that is offering the four-day work week?
At this point in time, I think some of the major employers have flexible schedules, so they don't actually have where the operations are closed, but they have the flexibility to offer four-day work weeks as an option.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hancock.
So Carol, did you do any comparables to Sioux Falls to us? How many employees do they have?
Their employees are less than what Pennington County is. If you look at Minnehaha County or Lincoln County, if you combine the two, you probably would have the equivalent of Pennington County. So yes, I do have a monthly meeting that I meet with the HR directors from Minnehaha and Lincoln County, and we talk through these various unsundry issues.
So I'm saying that population-wise, even if we went, we doubled to two hundred thousand. Let's say we doubled to two hundred thousand. I guess I'm not getting the projections from what everybody's saying, the eighteen point whatever, because even if you went to two hundred thousand, what's Sioux Falls, like a million compared to Pennington? Or maybe eight hundred thousand more people? Yet we have more employees, and for the future, even if we doubled, we're going to go up a hundred and a hundred and fifty employees for the future, and we need more space. So I guess for me, if the comparables aren't making sense to me at all, and maybe that's why I'm looking at this going, okay, and I'm also listening to people in the community, first, there are going to be ten thousand, then there's going to be, oh, there might be forty thousand more people, there might be twenty thousand more people, hold on a sec, inflation's hitting, things are happening. For me, it's not all making sense.
I think when you try to compare Minnehaha or Lincoln County to Pennington County, you have to realize our services are different. And so our services for the population is also what is going to be driving the increase in employees. For example, they don't have what our Sheriff's Department has as far as the same level of services with the jail, et cetera, that they don't experience that type of service.
Well, maybe there's some of those things we need to copy, in a sense, for the future, because we don't have enough employees to fit every position that we have, that maybe there's public-private partnerships, there's different things that maybe we could do as well, instead of inventing, reinventing the wheel, maybe there's other areas that we maybe need to do less than. And Rapid City, I know, does a lot of public-private partnerships. I used to take a lot of classes on it, and it made more sense than government running something, the public actually, enterprises are more efficient and effective, without sounding rude to anybody. But I just, I'm not getting the drive, even if I doubled to two hundred thousand, that we need a hundred and a hundred and fifty more employees for the future in order for us to give people the service we've had, because we're at, what, a hundred and ten right now? How much has it went up since we've been here? Another, I don't know, not very much. So when are they all coming? I know the V1's coming, are they bringing fifty thousand, are they bringing ten thousand, are they bringing twenty, are they bringing forty? So we're calculating that, again, you know, if we went up fifty thousand, that we need a hundred and a hundred and fifty more employees.
Right.
I keep saying, my bottom line is, we have to be more innovative for the future, and if we don't, we're just going to keep saying people need to be paid higher and higher and higher, and that's, that's not going to fix it. It's not going to fix it. There's got to be, again, technology-driven and maybe some public-private partnerships in some of these areas, so we don't need more space, we don't need more employees. I guess if it was my business, and I was in charge, to a certain extent, I'd look at those areas where we could branch out and, and be more efficient and effective for the community, as well as not put the burden on the taxpayers in Pennington County as well. So those are my thoughts. Again, I just keep hearing more employees and more space. If you ran a business that way, you'd be bankrupt by now, because you, you couldn't be efficient and effective, and we're showing it through the turnover. Things need to be different in a few, few areas, but I think it's something we need to look at.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Deb. I'm going to make a comment for.
If I can, I have two comments.
Okay.
One, I wouldn't mind seeing that chart where it says future hiring needs. Commissioner Hancock made a good point, showing what we do and Minnehaha, side by side, to kind of see the, the policy, or the, the number of staff. One thing I think will be, the one thing that I do know that Minnehaha County doesn't do that we do is they don't do JSC. JSC falls underneath Sioux Falls, so I mean, that's a chunk of the labor force. I don't know how much other things fall under different entities, but I do know that. And I do know that the population of Sioux Falls is roughly in that two hundred, two hundred and ten ra- two hundred and ten thousand range. It's not, I'm not saying that in one way or the other, I'm just saying for, for comparison, but Minnehaha County has a smaller footprint, if you will. I mean, we probably have more in our highway department staffing than they do in their highway department staffing, because their, their highways for the county are covered by the city. So I think whenever, if we get that report to kind of show the difference in, in employees, we'll see that ours are different, but there's a significant reason why they're different.
But look at the footprint between the two and the two counties, so.
Thank you for the report, Carol.
Between the two and the two counties.
And.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're combined almost, because they're that close.
But I, I do want to make the comment that this is a great presentation and information that the Commission needed, and I think one of the best assets that we had that, that this Commissioner had done is reinstating the Compensation Committee. I think that's a little precarious about the name of it, but it's, it's also about retention and, and other things that's involved with that. So I think you guys have made some good progress in some of the changes so far, and continuing the conversations within those meetings, and I think what you guys have brought forward shows that we, we care about our employees. And that's number one with this presentation, is that we care and we want to retain and educate. You know, one of the other things that you mentioned was the starting, the days change from date of, you know, seventy-two days to sixty-three days is important to people. I think another thing that you guys talked about, and the department heads have talked about, is about changing some of the requirements on the job descriptions to, to not so much as needing degrees and so forth, to try and get the people in and working with them that way, and, and that's the three-year mark. So I think, I think you guys are doing an outstanding job, so.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions for Carol? Thanks, Carol.
You're welcome.
Next, we come up to the twenty twenty-four provisional budget presentation from our auditor Cindy Moller, and I'll just take a moment of privilege before you start, and want to wish Brittany Moller a happy birthday today. Today's her birthday, so if you guys see her in the hallway, wish her happy birthday. Thank you, Brittany. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. I know you guys all have this information in front of you, I'm not going to go through it line by line. I don't have a great big presentation like Carol, I'm not that fancy. Things that we want to note is that, looking at our reserves, we're definitely short of our twenty percent goal that we would like to be at, estimating at that right now at about almost sixteen percent. Not horrible, but obviously, it can use some work if we want to maintain that twenty percent. If the Board wants to maybe reduce that goal, that is something that's totally up to you guys to, to make that determination on. You can see that our growth was down a little bit this year in the general fund, so we are not going to be able to increase the amount that we're levying as much as we did last year. Looking at the preliminary levies, of course, we're looking at a reduction in levy based on the increase in values. I did put together a little bit of information about that, what happens with the TIFs, because I know that's been a big discussion lately, and our growth, about a third of our growth was in TIF districts, so we don't get to capitalize on that, those new tax dollars to port all the, support all the services that we have to supply for the new areas. So I think that was kind of an important thing to look at, since that's been a big discussion with a lot of people lately. Does anybody have any questions about the levies?
The only thing I noticed on here, Cindy, is it, is we are down forty-two thousand four ninety-seven from last year, even with growth.
Yes.
And that kind of sticks out, and you're saying that's pretty much because of the TIFs.
Mm-hmm.
And so, which makes sense.
Yep, yep.
Towards the end of tomorrow, we'll have, we'll take time with recommendations and so forth and discussions. Is there any questions for Cindy from the Commission at this time?
Mr. Chair, the only thing, I'm just looking at the second page, and it looks like the TIFs are, you know, might be something we need to look at stronger in the future, because that is impacting our financial potential to, yeah.
It does impact our growth, and of course, you know, that, that keeps rolling along. If it's, you know, four hundred thousand this year, then another half a percent on four hundred thousand, I mean, you just keep losing that, and that amount just keeps growing every year.
So Cindy, also, at the end of the year, the unspent funds that are given back, I mean, that's kind of helped. Do we have that numbers in our book? An average of, so we can, we know, because I think we were at like eighteen percent or nineteen percent of that reserves, and then with the unspent, we're above that.
Yes.
I'm expecting that to happen again for twenty twenty-four with, you know, we budget for employees and then don't get them in, so we'll end up bringing it back up.
Yeah, the, the over-collected revenues and the, and the unspent, yep. I, I will definitely bring that back, kind of to wrap things up tomorrow.
That would help.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any further questions from the Board, or Cindy? Cindy, thanks, Cindy.
That's quick and easy for presenting a provisional. I know there's a lot of work to be done, but.
Yeah.
This gives you a start and something to think about and.
You did very good as highlighting what we need to do. I took it home and went through it the, over the weekend, and so you did very good job of highlighting what.
There's obviously things that's, you definitely don't want to, but.
Yeah.
There are options out there.
Okay.
And then moving on to my budgets, I guess. So with the election budget, obviously, twenty twenty-four is going to be a large election year, so the budget's increased over thirty percent. I do have increases for the poll workers in there. I think they deserve a little more, maybe even than, than what I've put in there. They work a very long day, they dedicate a lot of time that day, and in preparation for, like, coming to school, picking up supplies, those sorts of things. There were also some increases in the programming rates, ballots, those sort of things that we have from ESNS for Election System and Software. So those are included in there. Some of those things were up twenty, thirty, forty percent. They hadn't taken an increase in quite some time, so I wasn't surprised to see them. Does anybody have any questions on the election budget?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Is that kind of what that supply and materials is? It's a hundred and sixty-two thousand increase? If I'm reading that correctly, is it because of the cost went up that much for all that material?
Yes.
I mean, that was, out of all of it, it looked pretty reasonable, then you see that one big bump. Okay.
Is that all on the elections?
Nothing more. Any further on the elections? Nope.
Just for your information, the, the poll workers, just so you know where, what I'm looking at, for the superintendents at the precincts, I'm looking at three hundred and fifty dollars for the day. And then that includes their couple hours that they spend at schooling and picking up their supplies, of course, we'll add mileage onto that for, for the supplies, and then three hundred dollars a day for the poll workers.
I think that's more than reasonable. I think a lot of people don't realize that the poll workers, you know, once they're, especially the superintendent ones, that, you know, they got to do additional work, but once they're there, they're there.
Yes.
They're not leaving. They either bring a lunch or order it in, so.
It's a very long day.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr.
So Cindy, on the, on the new law that is going into effect July one, on needing to count.
The post-election audit?
Yeah, the post-election audit.
We don't really have a good, a good understanding of where that's going to go and exactly what we're going to need. I did not include anything in this budget for that.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I, I didn't figure you did.
No.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a clue how many people we're going to be looking at. We don't know what the process is going to be yet, so it's kind of hard to speculate.
And, Mr. Chair, to tack on to that, probably going to talk to the state about being able to fund that, since it would be a state-directed issue?
That is, I believe that is in the law, is that the state is supposed to cover it, but I know their, their number was, seemed awfully low.
Yeah.
To cover the entire state to start going through ballot by ballot for, you know, five percent of everybody's precincts. I'll be working on that, it'll be interesting to see where that all comes on.
The only other thing I'd have on elections is I think your department does a very good job. I was up there during the recount that you guys did, and they kind of took over your facilities, but you guys were professional, respectful, and handled it very well.
All the kudos go to my staff, they know what they're doing.
Yep, they did.
They take initiative, they jump in and do what needs done when it needs done.
They did. Okay, next, do we go to the Unorganized Road Fund?
Did you want to touch, touch on the auditor budget?
Yep.
And that's pretty, pretty simple and self-explanatory, it's not increased. And that's pretty, pretty simple and self explanatory. It's not increased a whole lot. The operational costs did go up because we're looking at the, getting the new software up and running next year. So working through a few of the details on exactly what pieces of the software we want to implement. So I don't have a final total on what that's going to be yet. Hopefully, that's going to come in and streamline a few things and make things easier on IT, make things flow a little bit better between equalization, my office and and the treasurer's office for for tax purposes.
When's that, you guys are working on that, and that's going to take like when?
Hopefully, we will get it implemented in '24. I'm still working with the sales guy on exactly what modules we want to have in there. There's some that he has in my first estimate that I don't think are necessary for us. It's not something we need to be changing to right now. Might be something we'll want to add in the future if we decide the software is working the way we want it, and we think it would be a benefit.
Okay. Any further questions?
So then we can move on to the unorganized road, which all of the revenue that goes to unorganized road gets transferred into Road and Bridge. So that's included in their revenue. So you'll see that. Domestic abuse fund, same thing. All of that money that comes in currently goes out to working against violence. And then the accumulated building fund for debt service, that is all based on the needs to meet our obligation for our bond payments.
Are there any questions for Cindy on either one of those?
Mr. Chair. So Cindy, what you were talking about on that bond payment, I noticed the number of principles significantly down. So that why, that's the reason why we only had to pay a lot less than we did the previous year? Is that what I'm understanding?
Um, it's actually, um.
I'm seeing a reduction.
We're paying, we're paying more in interest.
Oh, we're paying.
Less in principal. Uh huh.
Oh, I see. Okay. I just overread that. I was like, why did our principal payment go down in our, okay. So we dropped our principal payment down and they were increasing on tracking.
Yeah, we've got a couple of our issues, 2014 A and 2016 B that will be paid off. We've been paying more principal on those the last few years. So those will be paid off and then we'll be paying more on the interest on our newer ones.
Got you. Okay.
Any more questions? Any more, anything else you want to share, Cindy?
None right now.
All right. Thank you. Next on the list is Health and Human Services. Give us a minute to get, get to that, Barry. Takes a little bit. There we go. Here you go, Barry. We got your first page up here.
Okay. Good morning, Barry Tyce, the Director of Pennington County Human Services and the Veteran Service Office. I decided to spare you the PowerPoint this morning since you get to see my PowerPoints all the time anyway. So a couple of highlights to point out in here. I noted in the narrative, we anticipate an increase in economic assistance requests as the American Rescue funding diminishes. We've seen a, not a significant increase, but fairly steady increase, kind of like the pre pandemic timeframe. And so we are one of the only agencies that provides assistance with rent and utilities. There's some other agencies that help, but we're definitely the, the first stop for many individuals. Couple other things to note, as you look at our budget, the work comp, it shows a significant increase, but we just had to adjust those. We worked with human resources and made sure we were in line with that. And we happen to have two work comp claims over this previous year. And so we anticipate maybe a little bit of a, an increase. So shows the 55% change, but obviously it's, it's minor. First time in over a decade, I am requesting an additional staff member, and this would be for the Veteran Service Office. And I touched on that quite a bit within my budget narrative. We remain the busiest Veteran Service Office in the state of South Dakota. Of course, with our, just our community growth and with our anticipations of the base growth, we feel like now would be a good time to ask, ask for a new employee in the Veteran Service Office. There, with our three that we currently have, they're very busy. And I try to send you the statistics, usually quarterly, but they're generating more claims than we ever have. Last year, they set a record. This year, we're on pace to setting a record. And that's just because of the volume of customers we have. We've worked with the Secretary of the Division of Veterans Affairs for a number of years. He comes out and visits with us. And so they've done a slight increase. That would have been from last July, the state did, for reimbursing us for one of our VSOs. We're always pushing for reimbursement to all three. That hasn't happened yet, but I think it's definitely worth the conversation. They did increase that by $1,000. So it's not significant, but it's progress. When it comes to the, as you probably noticed in my revenue, there was a decrease. We don't have a lot of revenue coming in through Pennington County Human Services. And a majority of the payments are made through the auditor's office, but we had an individual that would pay monthly. And it was not a significant repayment, but fairly significant. And he is done with those payments. And so we adjusted our revenue to reflect, of course, what we see as a decline in our very minimal revenue. When it comes to the grants, we're currently in the middle of the Bureau of Justice Grants, which is with our rebound program where we had partnered with former Sheriff Tomlin, newly elected Sheriff Mueller on. So that's been a good, it's provided us with some good opportunities. Hopefully, we continue to reduce the reduction of individuals returning to the jail. And so through our rebound program, that's where the IRI grant exists. Couple things I wanted to highlight too, when we talk about the three to five year forecast, we still work with local foundations on some funding that typically will help. We can leverage county dollars against for rents and deposits and utilities. Deposits have become a significant piece in the work we do because getting individuals into housing in our community, it's much more difficult now than it ever was. And so as I was just doing a report for the local foundation, we've accessed almost a million dollars from them over the past decade for assistance with areas that are leveraged against the funding Pennington County hopes with. I know Carol talked a lot about recruitment and hiring. We've been fortunate in our office. We're right in the middle now of hiring for a staff assistant. You know, we, we did receive applications, which is good. We usually receive 40, we 40 to 50 received nine. So we're hoping, like she also mentioned, we keep the culture of our office. We had a long term employee retire back in March. And so I feel like the, we've always worked on a, a kind of a flex schedule of four 10s and some of us work five days a week. But I think that's always been a huge component to why people stay around human services. And I think that's a huge benefit too when we look at hiring new employees and when we hire this employee to make sure we still remain efficient and do the work we need to do and that the public asks for. But I also believe that adding those pieces in there keeps our employees around. Questions?
I just, my only comment, Barry, is I think your department does very well with working with grants and with the community in whole. And I think that Veterans Service Officer who came here, he expressed that you guys do more than I think than anywhere else in the state. And so the work you do is important, and the numbers show it. So, Ms. Haggard?
So it's, it's kind of funny to look at his FTEs have not grown over the few years and look at the services he provides. And we keep talking about that we need to get those services and make sure we provide good services and retain good employees. His workload hasn't changed, but he's retained his employees. He's not increased his employees a lot. And he could, I can tell you from experience, he needs more case managers and other things, but he works through that. So to me, it's a good example. I know you get grants and other things, but a lot of that is to help the people that come in, which also increases your workload. But you have not increased your FTEs through that. So I don't know, it's just to me, it's a perfect example of that more is not always better. Your leadership has shown through all of this. And since I've known you, watched you, and you treat your people really well, and not that the other ones don't, but a lot of it's communication. And I think by watching you and seeing firsthand your case managers and people, Barry, your leadership is what's doing it. And I'll keep saying that if you're going to be a leader, if you're going to be a person in charge of your department, it's all about communication. And when people don't feel like they're communicated with enough, they quit. So some of this is not about the money, if you notice. If anybody could pay more, it'd be some of these people that work in this case management, because go, go out and see what they do for their job. But they still stay with us. They deal with one of the hardest things in the public, and it keeps increasing is the homeless. Yet, Barry, you've retained, you haven't asked for much, you've went and been innovative on your grants and things to get things done. I commend you on everything you've done, Barry, because I've watched you firsthand, and I know what you've done has been pretty amazing with what you've had. So one FTE for you, I think if anybody would increase for services and needing help, it would be you. But you're only asking for one. And again, he's retaining his people. He's not increasing his FTEs. He's been more innovative. It's, it's amazing. Because like I said, if you go see what they do for services, they do like three different other areas besides Rome. So good job, Barry. And I think one FTE just for your veterans, like I said, if you ever ask for more case managers and stuff, I think you should get them. So that's my opinion.
Thanks, Deb. Mr. Drews?
Barry, on the Veteran Service Officers, I think the last time that I had the conversation with you, there was, we have about 13,000, it seems like, veterans that could qualify for benefits in Pennington County. And I presume as time goes on, as, as they age, more of those are going to utilize benefits than, than they have at a, at a younger age. So can you tell us a little bit about what you do project as far as that need is concerned? I understand, you know, there's, there's only so many people that each Veteran Service Officer can handle. And then also, are we really bound by county borders here? Or do you end up dealing with veteran, veterans from other areas other than just Pennington County?
Sure. So to your first question, it's really hard to anticipate. And I know you hear this all the time, but when we try to project what that veterans' growth looks like, for years, we used 12,000 veterans in Pennington County. And I think because of this increased growth and some of the unknowns that come with the expansion of the base, it's really hard to tell. But I can tell you that there was a time, it's been probably a year, year and a half ago, where we were tracking calls from new veterans who had just moved into our community. And they were averaging five to seven a week. So these were retirees who came and moved back to this area. And so basic expansion will obviously impact us. We go out once a month. We might have increased that to twice a month. We have a VSO that goes out and provides the TAP briefing, the retirement briefings to Air Force Base Personnel. And I mean, that's once a month. And so a lot of the folks are sticking around Rapid City and Pennington County. A lot of people are moving. But, you know, that hasn't tapered off. And as you know, growth is fairly significant in this community. When it comes to the surrounding counties, we work really hard at making sure we would never send a veteran out of our office because they are from a different county. And our service officers answer a lot of questions. It's my understanding that right now, there's a VSO, there's no VSO up in Meade County. And we just found that out a couple of days ago. But the state works really well with us on that. And so they have a field representative out in this part of the region that can help with some of the Meade County VSO or veterans until they get somebody hired. And so we, I would say, most of our clientele that are coming into the Veteran Service Office are Pennington County residents. Sometimes we get a Meade County veteran that lives on the, the border and comes in, and we're not going to send them out the door because they've made an appointment, they've waited for the appointment. And for the most part, we wouldn't know until they show up. But our staff does a really awesome job of communicating when they're calling from another county and making sure we get them connected to the right resources. And I have to dovetail on Commissioners Hagg, Commissioner Haggock's comments because I wish, I shouldn't say I wish, I wouldn't stand up here and ever say that the office functions as well as it does because it's me, it's the entire office. And we have 160 years of employment within, with the 16 employees there. We have long term employees. They do a good job. As you all know, it's not necessarily the funnest work. It comes with very few compliments. But it, you know, our, our employees come back every day. And so that's a huge piece. And they do really good work with things that are often not very fun.
So Barry, one of the things that I've learned as I visit with people now is a lot of the veterans that are moving here, never came through Ellsworth, which is interesting to me, that they, they never had the experience of living here previous. They've just learned that this is a good place to be. And so they're coming here. So.
Secret's out.
It is.
Just to tack on to that, Mr. Chair, you know, sometimes they hear about it through their network or friends, and they're like, oh, this, we got to go.
You know, with, with that being said, Barry, this, this is time for, as department head to, yes, it's to go over your budget, but anything else you'd like to address to the commission about your department or?
I don't believe so. We always appreciate your support and the support of the other department heads and elected officials. And I think it's good for the public to know that there's a lot of good work that is done within Pennington County government. And there's a lot of pieces that we address that sometimes our community doesn't understand. And so we've done a much better job of trying to work on the PR and marketing. And of course, when it comes to the work that we have to do with employees, we really appreciate the Human Resources Department for helping us out and helping us with the marketing side of things. Because like I said, we have a strong office, a really good culture up there. And I'm fortunate, we have awesome employees. So.
Thank you, Barry. Is there any further questions for Barry on his budget? Cindy, thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Next, we come up to Pub Defenders, Eric Richard. Next we come up to Public Defenders, Eric Witcher.
Good morning Commissioners, Eric Witcher, Public Defender. I do have a annual report for my office. Thank you. For those, the Commissioners that are not on the Advisory Board, let me just start by saying, I know one of the questions that the Commission had asked of us is what is sort of mandated services? The public or indigent defense is a mandated service. Starts with the Sixth Amendment to the United States Constitution as well as state constitution. I did list a statute which requires if someone cannot afford an attorney, one must be appointed to represent them. And then the funding of that is 100% by you all, the county. It's sort of interesting, the, after we became a state, we were really organized by counties. There was a county judge, a county prosecutor, a county commission. And later, some of those became statewide systems, like the Unified Judicial System is funded by the states. State's Attorney's Offices as well as public or indigent defense is really a remnant of that old system where those offices are 100% funded by the counties. So that's where it's a mandated service. So then it's about like, how do you do it in the most efficient manner possible? There's been three counties in the state of South Dakota that have decided to use a Public Defender's Office. That's Pennington, Minnehaha, and Lawrence. And Pennington made that decision back in 1972 based on caseloads. So it's really, it's got to reach a point where the efficiency makes sense. When I first started running Public Defender's Offices, we could do on a per-case basis, deliver that service for about $350. That number is a little over $600 now. On the private side, it used to be about $1,000. That's about $1,800 now. So it's about, it's been about a third and remains about a third of the cost by going through a Public Defender's Office, as long as you have enough cases where you can build in those efficiencies. New attorney in my office will represent individuals on over 400 misdemeanor cases in a year. And so that's, you just build that efficiency. Our felony attorneys are able to practice in front of two or three circuit court judges and the rest of the day is they have time to go to the jail and have office appointments, do legal research, et cetera. It's just, you build in efficiencies and they can handle 150 to 200 cases annually. So we are bound by ABA standards. Attorneys cannot take more cases than they can take. Otherwise, it's considered an ethical violation. So that's what we are sort of bound by as well. The, and I thank the Commission for prior support of our office, but that just kind of gives you a kind of a rundown of unfortunately, this is a mandated service and you are required by state statute to pay for it. Looking at our budget, we have, really all of our employees and line items remain largely the same. I think you will notice that we have a switch of 16,500 that went from repairs and maintenance into rentals. That reflects our contracts for our maintenance for our copiers. We just got instruction from the Auditor's Office, it preferred in that other line item. So that's just a switch from one line item to another. The rest of it, we just added 4% for inflation for all the other things that we have in our line items. So that's our main budget. The one FTE request that we have this year is requesting another legal secretary. You know, through COVID, we almost overnight went from having a paper-based system to a digital system. And that's been, it's had its pluses and minuses, but one of the things that we've discovered is it actually takes more time for our staff than just making a copy and putting that in a lawyer's inbox. And so we have, and just to look, to advise you, we have four legal secretaries for our 20 attorneys. So it's for every five lawyers, there's one legal secretary. In the law, that's pretty remarkable. Normally, it's one-to-one almost in a private firm. Some firms have two-to-one for two staff members for each attorney. So what we're requesting is one additional secretary. We're finding that they're just unable to get to go through the discovery, get that placed in the location, in the electronic file, do our initial conflict check, because they type in all the names in our software program, run through that. And so we're just, we're just behind. And then whenever somebody's, you know, of course, takes vacation or sick, then we get really behind. So that's just sort of where we're at. We are merging to a new software program right now that is taking twice as much work. But that's, anyhow, that's the other thing on our horizon. But I'm afraid we're, we've tried everything we can internally, so we're requesting that one FTE. Otherwise, I will, that's a quick summary. I can say the, you know, what's going to happen? I don't, it's hard to say right now. We are mid-year, it looks like cases are going to be, we'll have about 6,000 cases this year, based on what we've got in the first half. That's back up. We had a dip because of COVID, which is good because we've had a real challenge in recruiting and retaining lawyers. Our staff is quite stable. It's lawyers, we have a lot of long-term lawyers. We go, you know, four years, we go 11 deep now for lawyers that have been there with us for over four years. But we expect, Public Defender's work is not for everybody. It's hard work. Oftentimes, you know, we pay pretty well initially in comparison with private firms, but at that three or four-year mark, then we fall behind. And then we can't even come close to competing with the federal Public Defender's Office and some other places like that. So we, they get recruited out of our office to go to those other offices as well. So some of the things that we do is, you know, out of our FTEs, and we have 36 FTEs, one and a half of those are unfunded. And we do that so that we can go recruit in Vermillion at these on-campus interviews. The best way to recruit for lawyers is a year in advance because the firms are there and they're, and they offer and get jobs oftentimes about students in September or October of their third year of law school. They graduate then in May, they study for the bar and take that over the summer, and then they're able to join our offices in August. So the State's Attorney and I had asked years ago, had asked for a half-funded FTE. Last year, he provided me another unfunded FTE. So I'm going to go try to get two or three this year. So I have the confidence, I have the FTEs, and I'm not offering a job that I couldn't later fulfill. So you know, right now, we're down two lawyers and we just, we just don't have applicants right now. We're just, we're just very, very, very few. So backfilling and lawyers, and it's not just our office and the State's Attorney's Office or South Dakota, this is a national issue right now. There are just, I think people dreamed of a day where there'd be less lawyers. There are the negatives to that as well. So recruiting and retaining lawyers is going to be a continued challenge. One of the, as far as funding goes, I hope you will have some relief on the horizon. I'm part of the statewide task force that's reviewing a potential statewide system. We are in the middle of the beginning of the work, so it's hard to say what's exactly going to happen. But I'm hopeful that there's going to be funding from the state. I think there is recognition across the state that counties just simply cannot keep up with the cost of indigent defense. And it's like we talked about, it's a remnant, but you know, the cities make arrests, Highway Patrol makes arrests, et cetera, and then 100% of the backend costs is on counties. I think there's a recognition that that's an unsustainable proposition. So hopefully, we'll get some funding relief for counties going forward.
Well, thank you Eric. And just for everybody who's out in the audience, typically what we do in our budget hearings of the week, as he just did with his FTE, presented that and his justification, but this board's typically taken all FTEs separately at a different meeting. So we'll probably end up having a set time to review and go over those so we don't get bogged down. But I mean, because we've always done that, taken them up separately as the budget process goes on. But yet, this is the time for you guys to express why you need it and if you have any outrage to communicate that to the Commission. Is there any questions for Eric?
No, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Eric, under Personal Services, line 411, the change of $141,012. Can you just give me, explain that, what that entails?
Could you, what line was that number again? Sorry.
411. Under Personal Services.
So as I understand it, that is just the formula that we were asked to put in. So just the increase of 5%.
Okay. And then right now, you rent your current facility? So is that in here?
Yeah, that's included in that rentals. It's, and I know I had this question come up from as well, it's just over 19,000 is, we're in one and a half years of our three-year lease. So this will be our third year of that and then we.
So then if you in the future get relocated, then we won't have that expense.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any further, Ms. Hagcock?
So Eric, it seems like a lot of times when we do the budget, you're usually down two FTEs. I guess, I guess, number one, that's why the one and a half unfunded didn't make any sense. And then if you're not being able to fill that other position anyway, but you need and not want a legal secretary, it seems like for me, I'd take that, one of those down FTEs to a legal secretary, if that's the want. Because like I said, you have, there's a pattern that usually have two FTE down every year. So that tells me that if you have a need, I would have switched that to one of the needs and not, you know, like you said, lawyers are hard to come by for Public Defender. But if there's a pattern of voice too, it seems like you'd use that to your advantage if you needed somebody that's pretty important to your office.
I appreciate the comment. What I think hope springs eternal that we could be fully staffed for attorneys because it's just such a critical component. And if our caseloads just really rise, then we're in a real pickle. So that's the difficulty of, you know, trying to do that shift when we may be in a situation where we really need 24 or five lawyers. And that's what I'm really worried about is where if we have a year, you know, like next year, they start rising, you know, cases rise again to 7,000, which they could, but there's going to be 20 some new police officers.
And do you do comparables to funding outside? Remember, I talked about public-private partnerships. Is it cheaper to fund it outside than keep funding in when you can't fill those positions anyway? And maybe they are having better luck at, you know, what they're doing. So I guess I would do the comparables and maybe already have. Instead of keeping it in-house, maybe instead of having to have more space, which costs more money, to have more employees, do that comparable about somebody else being able to basically take some of that caseload. Because we just talked about, you're really always down two FTEs. That tells me that that funding and FTEs are hard to come by. And if they're staying pretty consistent, that tells me maybe I need to farm out some of my stuff a little bit more instead of keep it in-house.
You know, I'd love to do that. I'd actually love to do that. The problem is cost. So like we can do 400 cases for, you know, like one lawyer FTE can do 400 misdemeanors as an example. So that's, you know, 100,000 with all benefits, et cetera. That same bill going into private is going to be at least a half a million dollars. So that's where, if there's a few cases, yeah, we can, it's cheaper to go out. It's just if that number gets to a certain point, then it gets very, very expensive because they're still, they have to, they bill for all their time. This is where your efficiencies get built in. When we have a magistrate lawyer over in magistrate court at one o'clock, they're there on their own six or eight cases, maybe 10. And then they're oftentimes covering for felony lawyers that have a tag on misdemeanor case, so they cover for six or eight cases. A private, and so that's a two-hour court session where they've got, they're doing 10 different cases in that two-hour period. And so it's a very efficient use of time. A private attorney will have to go there and maybe have one or two cases and spend two hours in that one courtroom. And so then that's a 200 and some odd bill that they bill, whereas, you know, we're just there for 20 cases. Does that make sense? So that, you gain some of those efficiencies if the numbers are there.
From what I've talked to, I talked to Paul that works with Golden Plains and they have a lot of cases like you guys do.
They do.
They actually do that efficient, effective stuff as well. So maybe there's somewhere you can visit or talk about, you know, comparables and what would that take? And you have to pay what you're paying now and by, like you said, running more people, having more space, all of that. And those benefits and everything, all that adds up to a pretty good amount as well. So that's just food for thought.
Is there any further questions for Eric from the Commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I just want to thank you for this very detailed report.
You're welcome.
See you after. Thanks Eric. Next we come to the State's Attorney's Office, Laura Rutzel.
I need just a minute to put my presentation up on your board. Just because you knew, you better have this down pat. I do Commissioner. I do.
Welcome to your first official budget hearing.
I'm just going to welcome you. I'm not going to harass you. How about that one?
If you've been well-trained in compensation, you're ready to go.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Laura Rutzel, State's Attorney. Thank you for having me here at my first budget hearing. Huge thank you to Susan Shepherd for her endless time and patience as she has prepared a new State's Attorney for her first budget hearing. It's a big budget and there was a lot to know and understand. And I'm really excited to just spend the first 10 minutes here, kind of giving you an overview of State of the Union at the State's Attorney's Office. The majority of the work we do is obviously criminal prosecution. And the first thing that most people think of when we talk about criminal prosecution is felony cases. So looking back in 2022, where we have complete statistics, our office handled 2,552 felony cases. So felonies are the highest level of crime. So they start with a class six felony, which would be like a third offense driving under the influence of alcohol or. or, uh, possession of a controlled substance, um, low level, um, small amount of methamphetamine, for example. But they progress all the way up to our murder cases. So grand thefts, burglaries, robberies, rapes, murders, the full gamut of felony cases, two thousand five hundred and fifty-two in two thousand and twenty-two. We had a number of major felony jury trials in two thousand and twenty-two. I've listed them there for you with the name of the case, the type of charge. And I've listed there the top charge and then also the charge that they were convicted of, if it was a conviction, and then the verdict. So you see, we did four murder or homicide trials in two thousand and twenty-two. Ashley Pelter, which was a domestic violence homicide where a woman killed her intimate partner by stabbing. Maxton Pfeiffer was a first degree manslaughter conviction of a young man who shot a friend of his up in Keystone. Arlen Hatton ended in a hung jury. I can tell you nothing's worse for a prosecutor than having a jury not be able to make a decision. And then having to decide whether that case can be retried. It ended up being resolved by plea agreement after the fact, after the first trial. And we also did one vehicular homicide case, Russell Martinez, which was a guilty verdict. We did a lot of rape trials and they're listed there for you. Um, guilty verdicts, we move down into our aggravated assaults. So where you see DV aggravated assault, domestic violence indicates that it's an intimate partner violence case. So very difficult when you have family violence crimes committed between two people who are intimately involved. Those are the most challenging for victims, um, to be involved in. Work our way down then to a drug case, aggravating a looting case. The Kirsten Jacobson case is interesting mostly because it was an accessory to a murder case. So although it was just a classified felony, which is a lower level felony, it was a very big trial because she actually was an accessory after the fact to a homicide. Um, simple assault on law enforcement, Michael Stevenson and Cody Cedarface. Whenever one of our law enforcement partners is assaulted, we take those cases very seriously. You might remember one of the things, the first things I did as interim state's attorney in two thousand and twenty-three was, um, excuse me, in two thousand and twenty-two was appoint a law enforcement liaison deputy state's attorney to be assigned exclusively to these cases and work with law enforcement, um, really hand in hand. Um, she prosecuted one of these two cases. Eric Biggico was also a simple assault on law enforcement. So we had a total of nineteen felony jury trials in two thousand and twenty-two, fourteen guilty verdicts, four not guilty verdicts and one hung jury. So statistically, I think that's about seventy-five percent. Um, prosecutors want to hit about sixty percent. Of course you'll, it makes sense, the most difficult cases are the ones that go to trial. Um, the ones that can be resolved by plea agreement are obviously done that. Statistically, if you did the quick math there, we only try about one percent of our cases. So out of all those two thousand five hundred felonies, you see nineteen went to trial. But it's still a really big and important part of the work that we do in the office. And questions about felonies? Misdemeanor filings are huge. So misdemeanors range from anything from a speeding ticket all the way up to like a, a driving under the influence second offense or a simple assault, um, second offense. So there are some pretty serious crimes that get involved in there. Sexual, um, sexual contact without consent, um, by someone who can consent is a misdemeanor. Five thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven misdemeanors filed in my office in two thousand and twenty-two. We do try some misdemeanors, not as many as you would think. I've listed them there for you. A DUI, sexual contact without consent, simple assaults, another DUI. Um, a total of eight misdemeanor trials with five guilty's and three not guilty's. So we're still hitting right about seventy-five, seventy percent there. So the criminal department gets all the press and all the attention. Um, but it's not everything that we do. As you're most familiar with, our civil department, um, does a lot of work, um, both with the county department heads and the county commission. Um, I have Jay Alderman there as civil chief, and then he has two deputies assigned exclusively to him, Alexa Moller and Megan Kruger. I've also, I'm, I've posted and I'm hiring a third deputy for that department to make sure that the county department heads are getting the representation that they need. We also do juvenile cases. So remember that any crime an adult can commit, a child can commit too, as long as they're over the age of ten. We prosecute a lot of those cases, one thousand two hundred and eighty juvenile case filings. That does not factor in the cases we divert out of juvenile court, which I'll talk about in a minute. The number's about the same. We divert a lot of juvenile cases. We had three hundred and thirty-four felony cases filed, um, nine hundred and forty-five misdemeanor cases filed in juvenile court. And those, those cases are handled exclusively by one and a half lawyer, all of them. Juveniles can ask for trials too. Um, they use different language, they're quasi-civil proceedings, completely closed to the public. So there's no names here. Juvenile trials are called adjudications. We had four, um, two of them were forcible rape trials, a very difficult trial. They're trial to the court, not to a jury. Uh, we also had a simple assault on law enforcement that we tried to the court and then a truancy case tried to the court. All four of those juveniles were adjudicated, which is the language for convicted or found guilty in juvenile court. We also do abuse and neglect cases. So remember that whenever a child is taken into the protective custody of the Department of Social Services, our office handles those cases too. Uh, we had one hundred and forty-four abuse and neglect filings. Those are just cases, there are numerous children involved in each of those cases and numerous parents involved in each of those cases. It's very complicated litigation. All of those cases are handled by one attorney, Roxy Erickson, who's an amazing prosecutor. And point five, um, so one attorney shares a juvenile caseload and an abuse and neglect caseload. So three people in that entire department doing all of that work. We do divert a number of cases. Um, we previously had kind of two silos of diversion, adult and juvenile. Um, I've deconstructed those silos and combined them all together under Kim Morsing into one diversion department. Because of the overflow of resources, we really don't have the need to, to keep those separate. So many of the people, whether they're adult or juvenile, are using the same resources and there's no reason to box those off. So I've brought those together, but just to give you some kind of categorical thought concepts, we're diverting drug cases. We're diverting young adults, um, general adults. We're doing a little bit of domestic violence diversion. In two thousand and twenty-two, we had one hundred and fifty-seven adult over eighteen diversions for case management by our diversion specialists. So when we're talking about drug diversion, we're looking at first or time, first or second time felony cases. Um, we weren't prosecuting marijuana cases in two thousand and twenty-two for a bunch of legal reasons. Um, young adult diversion, we're looking at kind of targeting that, remembering back to brain science, that eighteen to twenty-five age. Um, making a lot of bad decisions that their brain's not fully capable of understanding the consequences of. Capturing those first and second time offenders, diverting them out of the system, giving them the opportunity to address issues and hopefully be, um, able to keep them out of the system. I have the success rates for that I can give you as soon as I can look at my slide a little bit better. Juvenile diversions are tremendously successful in the State's Attorney's Office. I think when I look at the slide, you'll see that my adult diversions are successful at about like seventy percent. Juvenile diversions and ninety percent success rate. So we did eight hundred and sixty-three juvenile diversions. And remember that's on top of the, what was it, twelve hundred that I just showed you kids that we actually had to bring into court? Seven hundred and seventy-seven of them were successful. Um, meaning that they did not reoffend within the next, I think we use eighteen months as a, as a goalpost. Ninety percent success rate. We also do mental commitment hearings and a big part of our budget goes towards paying for mental commitments. And there are a lot of people in our community who are struggling with mental illness. So whenever someone is suffering from a, a severe persistent mental illness and they are in danger to themselves or to other people, a loved one or law enforcement can file a petition requesting that they be committed for either short, long period of time, depending on the finding of the board, um, which we pay for the board, we pay for the commitments. We had one thousand three hundred and fifty-four commitment petitions filed and ninety-one hearings held in two thousand and twenty-two. Those are big numbers. Again, that's Jay Alderman and his staff in the civil department that are handling all of those. So moving on, just to give you a quick overview of who we are at the State's Attorney's Office. I have seventy-six staff, twenty-six attorneys, seven advocates, six diversion specialists, thirty legal secretaries and seven, yes, seven summer law school interns. They're everywhere. They're coming out of the crevices up there. I have no room for anyone, but there, we have found space for them and we love having them around because they have such great energy. Um, we remain challenged with vacancies. Um, we have not been fully staffed, um, I don't think since two thousand and twenty. Um, I have four open attorney positions. Um, one of them is posted as a civil position for Mr. Alderman. Um, the other are all criminal positions. I have posted one of those attorney positions converted into an investigator position. We have Steve Neville working right now as an investigator in the office. He's tremendously helpful to our cases. Law enforcement is so challenged just to get through arrests and initial reporting that when I come to the point of trial or in the course of working a prosecution, find additional investigation that needs to be done. They're really challenged to come back and be able to do that for me. And Steve Neville enables us to do that in-house, take a little bit of that pressure off of our law enforcement friends on the backend. As you know, from your last session, um, you permitted me to convert one of my legal secretary per, um, positions into a public information officer. I posted that. I'm really excited about it. I think that's going to bring a level of transparency, um, to the State's Attorney's Office that's just really unprecedented. Mr. Witcher, my friend and colleague spoke briefly about numbers at the public defender's office. And these, these are just going to blow you away. You know, he is blessed, in my opinion, with limitations put on him by the, um, national standards for defense lawyers. There are no national standards for prosecutors. If law enforcement makes an arrest, commissioners, I prosecute the case. I don't get to say I'm at my limit or I'm full, or it's time to send it to Paul Brankin, or you're going to have to find a conflict office to take the overflow. I just cannot emphasize that enough. It comes to the State's Attorney's Office and we prosecute it. So just to give you context, Mr. Witcher, my friend and colleague told you that his lawyers will prosecute one hundred, one hundred and fifty felonies in a year, okay? Look at my numbers. Brayden Hodak, who has not been out of law school for one year, has right now today, two hundred and twenty-two open felony cases, not in a year. Right now, open felony cases. Natalie Gronland, not out two years, has two hundred and six. Roxanne Hammond, who is one of my highest level felony prosecutors. So that under three years is deceiving because she's been in our office under three years, but she prosecuted elsewhere for four years prior to that. So she's a seven year prosecutor. She has one hundred and sixty-nine open files, commissioners, but they are almost exclusively rape and homicide cases. One hundred and sixty-nine. Mr. Witcher's attorneys have one hundred and fifty felonies in a year. She has one hundred and sixty-nine rapes and homicides open right now. I'm just, I'm just trying to give you some perspective here. Like we are drowning. Adam Schiffer Miller is at what appears to be a nice, comfortable one-on-one. He's an administrator. He is supervising the rest of the, the people on this page. Um, Aaron Hellbush has been out less than three years, two eighty-one. Angela Shute, she's again, she's doing rapes and homicides at the seven year mark, um, hundred and forty-six. These numbers are absolutely astronomical. Current open felony files in the State's Attorney's Office, one thousand three hundred and thirty-five open felony files. I have twenty-six open homicides. Current misdemeanor numbers will even further blow your mind, I hope. So my friend, Mr. Witcher, told you four hundred misdemeanor cases in a year. Emma Kalkowski Farand, who has been out of law school for less than a year, has six hundred and fifty-two open misdemeanors right now, not in a year, today. Randy Reed, seven hundred and seventy-eight open right now. We are so shorthanded that my felony attorneys are doing a misdemeanor split because I had an attorney walk out on me and resign with less than two weeks' notice. And so that's six hundred and ninety-one is split amongst the felony attorneys at seventy apiece. I have seventy of those. I was in misdemeanor court yesterday. It is all hands on deck. Current open misdemeanor files, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three. So thank you for letting me give you a little bit of an overview. I felt like as a new state's attorney, I should give you a baseline for where my office is at. I am very fiscally conservative. I run a tight budget at home. I intend to write a, I intend to write a very tight budget at the State's Attorney's Office. Um, in sitting down with Ms. Shepherd, we talked a lot initially about my budget philosophy. I have never, had never heard of such a thing. Um, my budget philosophy is, um, I'm going to budget for what I think I really need. I'm not going to shoot high. Um, so I have, I have cut a lot out of my budget. So my first line at four-ten Personnel Services was nothing I could control. That was dictated to us by you. Um, I gave the requested increases. My Personnel Services budget is the majority of my money because my budget is mostly people. Five million nine hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, the increase is due to the salaries that you mandated or not mandated blessed us with and our medical insurance cost increase. I am not asking for any additional FTEs in two thousand and twenty-four, despite what I've just told you, and I'll tell you why in a minute. My operations budget at, at line four-twenty is one million six hundred and three thousand eight hundred and ninety-two. I have decreased this budget line by eighteen percent, commissioners. By really looking at what we spent last year, really thinking about what I need in the next year and pulling that number down. Um, historically, what's been done at the State's Attorney's Office is to take last year's expenditure and just add six percent. Just keep adding for inflation. Don't look at what we spent and what we need, just keep adding that, that cost, you know, the cost of living. Keep adding for inflation. And I just thought through it a little bit harder and I did not do that. Um, no new programs, no new expenditures. I cut out eighteen percent of this budget. My witness budget is, was fun for me to learn about. Apparently I share it with the public defender's office and it's a good thing that Mr. Witcher and I have been friends for thirty years because I'm happy to share my money with him. Um, I am asking for an increase here. So I asked for ninety-two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars last year. Um, well, Mr. Vargo did for our expert witness shared budget. I am asking for an increase to a hundred and twenty-five thousand this year. Um, that's still ten thousand dollars less than PBO asked for last year. And I'll tell you why I'm asking for that, you know, about thirty-five thousand more, whatever that, that math is, thirty-two thousand more. So when I go to trial, jurors expect a show. They expect a high quality performance. I do murder and rape trials, right? So, but the expectation is even there on a PCS or a DUI trial, they expect expert testimony. They expect high quality production and that costs money. And so if I'm going to do four murder trials in a year, and we've already done four murder trials this year and it's June. Um, and we'll be doing many more yet this year. It costs money to bring in the expert testimony to prove our cases beyond a reasonable doubt the way they need to be proven at a quality level that is expected of the state of South Dakota. Um, in our last trial that we did, it was State versus Dion Bordeaux. Um, he executed his girlfriend, staged it to look like a suicide. I hired Paulette Sutton, if you have Netflix. Um, she is, um, highlighted in the show The Staircase. Um, she was an expert witness out of Alabama who came in and was able to testify that that, that scene was staged. The jurors loved that testimony. It was very, very compelling and I think it went a long way in convicting him of, um, first grade murder. Revenue line is consistent from two thousand and twenty-three with the exception that we're no longer housing that FTE from the Attorney General's Office. I explained that to you at our last session. Um, Mr. Jackley has pulled that FTE back into the Attorney General budget, which left me with an FTE open. That's the one that you converted into that public information officer. But we've lost that revenue source of fifty-two thousand dollars. So that's a hit. Um, conservatively, I estimated our diversion reimbursement at seventy-five thousand. Hopefully that will come in higher. But remember that pool of money, that, um, diversion reimbursement comes from the state. So there's a pool of money and then any county that's done diversion efforts puts in. in for that money, and then they divide it out equally. And we historically have been very lucrative because we do a lot of really positive diversions, but everybody's on to us. And like, we've shared all of our knowledge, and they're going to be coming for that money this year, so I didn't want to go high and take a hit for it later. So, yes, there's going to be an overall decrease in revenue of nineteen point seven-three percent, but remember, I've saved you eighteen percent in that operation line, so what you're seeing in my budget is less than a one percent increase from last year, which I'm really, really proud of. So here's my goal. What I'm going to try to do is I'm going to fill those FTEs. I just, I have to fill those FTEs. I have to bring in our new CarPell software, see how that impacts our legal secretaries, see how that impacts our victims' assistance, and stabilize the state's attorney's office. Once I'm full and stable, I'll be in a better position to really come to you and tell you what I need. I don't feel like I'm in any, in any position to tell you that I need anything more when I'm not full house and I'm not stable. So I'm going to spend the next year stabilizing my office, filling it up, getting everybody comfortable with the workload, and then we'll see where we're at. So, any questions for me?
So Laura, you're short two lawyers, right?
Four.
Four. And if I remember, it was last year or the two years before, we approved legal secretaries because, you know, we were, the crew that you had couldn't take any time off, really. I mean, they were, they were working hard.
Yes.
And so we approved that. And that's probably, once you get fully staffed with four, you may need another legal secretary to be able to help. Am I correct with that?
Yes, that's certainly possible, Mr. Chairman. And I may have to humbly come back and say, now, I have my four new attorneys, and now my legal staff is drowning. I'm hoping CarPell and that new software will balance that out.
Okay. Okay. Is there, Ms. Hagcock?
Well, that was a presentation. I liked it. I liked it because a lot of times we don't know on the state's attorney's office, and I think I told you that when we, you first started. The difference that I'd like to see for myself was, what do you do? I mean, we see numbers, I need another FTE, I need another this, I need another that, I've got a budget, felonies are up, drugs are up, blah, blah, blah. That's not a presentation for me. A presentation is on your budget of, of how you're doing, how many people you have, what kind of cases you have. I mean, that was very thorough, and that's, since I've been here, that's the most thorough presentation from the state's attorney's office. Plus, on the budget, you were smart enough to figure out and look at what if in some cases, and the others stabilize it. So that's huge. That's huge for me because that's kind of what I do when I do stuff, is I look at it. Not the greatest at budget sometimes, but I get help, and it looks like you've got a lot of help. I'm seeing you out there, sister. But that makes a huge difference. And then you plan for the future, what mighta, coulda, woulda, shoulda, and knowing that, you know, four percent, and we talked about that in conversation again, you being in there, I think, made a huge difference for you and just our compensation to see what that means to the employees and what you've changed since you've been there in the six months or four months, I can't remember when you left and then came back. But I like it. I like what you do. I like your efficiency and your effectiveness. Like I always tell people, not everybody's going to love that at first, but once they see that that stabilized, your budget's good, and you're taking care of business, and you're actually looking and showing us how hard your employees work and your people, our Team Pennington County, I call it work, it's huge because whatever the sheriff's office, the police department, care campus, or anybody else increased their loads, that increased your load. So we got to be careful in some of that.
Sure.
So I appreciate that, very efficient, very effective presentation.
Thank you, Deb. Mr. Drews?
So Laura, excellent presentation. Thank you much. So explain to me, mental commitments. How, how does that process work? And where does the county mental health advisory board come into play on that?
Yes. So it starts with any family member or loved one or a law enforcement officer coming into contact with someone in crisis. We have a lot of good resources now, especially now that we'll have Pivot Point to try to stabilize people. But sometimes when you can't stabilize, you have to look at something a little bit longer term. So hopefully Pivot Point will pull our commitments down a little bit. But what's done is a petition is filled out. There, the criteria are, they have to be severely and persistently mentally ill. They have to have a qualified mental illness. And then they have to be presently, in the moment, a danger to themselves through an inability to care for themselves or through suicide, or a danger to someone else, like a, a physical danger to someone else. If those criteria are met in the opinion of a qualified mental health professional, then they are held until they can go before the board. So the board is paid for by the state's attorney's office, and also the, the chairman are paid for by the budget of the state's attorney's office, and, and they just asked for and were granted a raise on the recommendation of Presiding Judge Feifley that was given through our office. So I had to kind of counteract that in my budget a little bit, too. So we seek reimbursement for other counties. If someone's home origin is in Mead County and they end up being placed here, which happens all the time, we'll seek reimbursement. That doesn't always happen that we get reimbursement from every county. But then if someone is found by the board to be in need of care, they can be held for shorter periods of time at our mental health facility here, or for longer periods of time at the Human Services Center. We pay for all of that out of our budget.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Laura, thank you for your presentation, and this kind of goes out to all, all the departments. I mean, as commissioners, you know, as everybody knows, some commissioners are specialized and special in each different departments, and so that each one knows a little bit about it. But being able to get this information at the budget hearings, getting the full detail sometimes of where we're at right now and how our things are going is, is very helpful in the future decisions for this commission. I had the opportunity to see you present before this on some of the diversion stuff, so I know your passion for it and thoroughness on it. So the presentation was good, not only for us, but this is live streamed, so the public gets to see this. So that kind of educates the, the community as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Raskin.
I think it was an excellent presentation. I echo Deb's sentiments. I would like to see the other departments do something similar that makes it so easier so we really understand, I can look at this and I can understand each of these numbers. So I'm really impressed with the reduction in services and fees of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I mean, that, that's impressive.
We'll see if I can hold to it.
Anyhow, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any further discussions? Do you have any final comments, Laura?
No, thank you very much. Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
I believe we have another first budget hearing for, well, it's not your first, but...
You might want to take a break before mine.
You know, we could. We haven't taken a break. That'd give you guys time to switch. Are you guys okay with that?
Take a motion to take a ten-minute break.
Second.
Moved and second, take a ten-minute break. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The floor is yours, Mr. Mueller.
All right. Good morning.
Congratulations on your first-year budget.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff, and I brought the A-team with me today. We have nine different budgets through the sheriff's office, and I'm not an expert in every area, so I wanted to bring our accountant staff and some of our administrative staff over in case you had any specific questions so we could get those answered for you while we were here today. And I just want to give a special shout-out to Stephanie Born, the admin in our office, helped with this presentation, and then our accountants. And Courtney Rayburg, one of our accountants, last year when we were working on budget prep, said, you know, we provide reality to your vision. And so they definitely do that. We come up with all kinds of crazy ideas, and our accountants and the auditor get together and talk about whether we can do that or not. So we're going to see some of that today. And I did a PowerPoint today, a little bit like Laura did, to give you some background and context as to our workload and some of the things that we're working on. But I'm going to bounce back and forth a little bit between the PowerPoint that I have, and I gave you all a copy. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the details of it, but so you can flip through it a little bit later, give you an idea as to what some of our workload is in the different divisions, and what some of the trends that we're seeing in Pennington County are. And then I'm going to spend some time in the budget narrative that we, that we submitted to you. I think I submitted about twelve pages of budget narrative, so we really tried to take the extra time. I'm not new to the budgeting process with the sheriff's office, but obviously, this is the first time that we went through it when I am the sheriff. So we spent a lot of extra time trying to get more staff familiar with the process, our captains, our lieutenants. Obviously, the commanders and chief deputies, our accountant and administrative staff, spent a great time going through every line item that we had in the sheriff's office, and like we've been doing with every nook and cranny of the office, questioning why we're doing things, are there ways to be more efficient in, in the way we do business? And then you know, from the, the last few years, some of the guidelines from the commission, we've, we've been running at nearly a frozen operational budget for the last few years in our, in our divisions. So you're going to see some increases in the operational budget, and I'll talk through that a little bit. But we also worked extremely hard to try to come up with new innovative ideas to solve some of our own issues, to create some extra revenue to offset some of the rising costs for Pennington County, and we'll talk through that. And I did not, I'm going to apologize up front, I did not coordinate with Holly as to the exact order that you have things in. So as I switch gears and talk from budget to budget, I'll take, if you need a little bit of time to get to the right section in your budget books, just let me know, and we'll slow down and, and do that. So we're going to start off today talking about the law enforcement division. And the, provided a little bit of crime data for you in this presentation to just look at our workload. And as you can see, over the last five years, the black on this first screen talks about calls for service, our citizen-initiated calls for service, and deputy-initiated call for service. And on the left side shows five-year trend. And then I tried to, we've made some changes in the office in the last few months, so I tried to do some first-quarter comparisons, just so you can see how things are trending in the first few months that I've been in office. So we've put a, we had a little bit of a lull in deputy law enforcement-initiated services through COVID intentionally, both the Rapid City Police Department and the sheriff's office. And we've been really making a, a really concerted, concerted effort to get back out there and be more proactive, and you'll see that reflected in the first-quarter comparison. Our deputy-initiated contacts are up about a thousand in the first quarter from where they were last year. So we're out there working more. A lot of, a lot of those are traffic-related. This next slide breaks down the patrol activity, arrests, case reports, vehicle stops, citations, warning, and DUI arrests. And then again, the, the first-quarter comparison in the lower right, it just shows that, you know, we're out there, we're being a little bit more proactive, specifically with the traffic. We've had traffic fatalities have increased in South Dakota the last two years, accidents are on the rise, and I think that's, there's some direct correlation between that and the couple of years in COVID with less proactive law enforcement work. So we're out there trying to increase our visibility in Pennington County, and you're going to see that more in the, the months to come. Our overall crime data, we usually show this two ways. If you, I, I gave you all a copy last month of our annual report, but we, when I release crime data, I try to show an overall crime data in Pennington County that includes the numbers from the Box Elder Police Department and Rapid City Police Department with ours to give you a true picture. And that's what's on this slide, different types of violent crime. And Laura talked about some of this, how it drives the, the workload, obviously, in her office, too. And then the next slide shows Pennington County-only crime, just to give you an idea of the, of the area that we're directly responsible for law enforcement patrol response to. And you'll see a majority of our violent crimes have been trending down in these categories in Pennington County the last couple of years. And you're seeing that across the country, too. They, you know, a lot of the violent crimes spiked hard during COVID-2019, 2020, and there are certain parts of the country where that's, that continues to be on the rise, but here in the Midwest, we've brought a lot of those numbers back down again. And I think you're going to continue to see very positive results with the partnership that we have here in Pennington County with the Rapid City Police Department, our office, and with Laura in the seat in the prosecution office here in town. Our quarterly crime data, this is just the, the comparison. On the left has Pennington County and Rapid City together, and then on the right is Pennington County only, just to give you an idea. Between twenty-two and twenty-three in the first quarter, what some of those numbers look like, and, and a majority of ours in Pennington County are trending down, other than burglaries. We had a rash of burglars in the first quarter here in Pennington County, out in, out in Rapid Valley, and we have closed out nearly every one of those burglaries that we had with that rash with an arrest that are setting up in Laura's office now for prosecution. So that number did go up a little bit, but we're on top of it. Then I'm going to bounce back over to our budget narrative. The, you guys have copies of that with you?
You got the...
The law enforcement.
Enforcement two-eleven?
The law enforcement budget narrative. Holly, did you break those down? So they're with their individual budgets in two-eleven? They're all separate?
The word that we have here...
The narrative is all together.
Yep.
Behind all of the budgets.
Yep. That's okay. And you don't, you don't need to look at that now. I'm just going to summarize it just a little bit, so you don't have to look directly at it. But, you know, and I tried to categorize all of our budget narratives the same. When you looked at the law enforcement budget narrative, I tried to give you an idea as to all the different services that we provide under the law enforcement division. And then also went into a, a kind of a detailed breakdown of the joint services that we provide with the Rapid City Police Department in the state of South Dakota, and talked through a little bit of the benefit that I believe that those partnerships have. We certainly, if we didn't have the partnerships that we had with, we have with Rapid City, our number of FTEs and our cost of Pennington County would be much higher than they are. We have, we do a lot of things joint with them, so it's mutually beneficial, but Rapid City Police Department runs the evidence facility. We have no staff in, in that. Pennington County owns the building, but we have no operational costs wrapped up in the evidence. They run the records division for the police department, does all of the records, release and information for the sheriff's office. We have no staff. They don't charge us anything for that. And then I listed the several different things, you know, obviously with the way we run our investigations jointly together, our special response team, mobile response team, dive response team. Those are all, those are all joint functions that we do together with the police department. And most, most communities across the country have separate county-city functions with those, and that, I can tell you that that saves, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars combining those teams together.
So you guys got a joint psychologist, too?
We do. We currently, our, our psychologist position is open. We're trying to fill that right now, but that's a county employee, but it's also funded through the, by the Rapid City funds it, through their fire department uses it, the police department uses that position, and the state of South Dakota provides some funding also through a joint memorandum that we have with them. And then I covered the non-mandated functions. I know that was one of the requests. I'm glad that you asked for that because I think, I think sometimes when we talk through what we do, what we do as a county, what we're mandated to do and what we do because we need to be doing it, I'd tell you, through our office, I feel strongly, the things that we're doing that are not mandated are critical to public safety. I listed those out in there in detail, so I'm not going to go through that unless you have, have any specific questions. But the non-mandated functions that we do under the law enforcement division are the school resource program, our wellness program, Rapid City Youth Council contribution that we make, and courthouse and campus security. we make, and courthouse and campus security. And I know that we've talked through those in detail in years past when we've looked at needing to tighten up budgets and do different things. But I wrote a detailed explanation in my budget narrative out for each one of those, why I think it's important that we maintain them at the capacity that we currently are. And if you have any specific questions on those, we can go through it. Otherwise, you can read that later. But I just wanted to make sure you had a good detailed accounting specifically with the non mandated things that we're doing in the sheriff's office. Any questions on that? When it comes down to the sheriff's office budget overall, the, our operational costs in the law enforcement division increased $134,000 from last year. And a majority of those costs are related to, are rising costs related to the increase in coroner calls. Our morgue rent has gone up, the cost of autopsies continues to increase. And the number of autopsies that we're doing, the percentage of autopsies that we're doing compared to what we've done in the past has gone up a fair number too. And a lot of those are due to, we're getting a lot of younger people that are passing away in the county specifically related to intentional and accidental drug overdoses. And those require more, a higher percentage of autopsies than with that number on the increase. So those are not cases that you can just do an initial investigation and make a determination on cause of death. We've got to go through the autopsy, run a full toxicology to get the reports back to make a thorough determination on the cause and manner of death. So as we see those types of deaths continue to increase, and you're seeing that all the way across the country, some of those costs associated with the coroner's office is going to continue to increase with that too. The, you know, the other factors on the increase in operational costs is our fuel costs have gone up and our cost of vehicles and some of the cost of supplies, we've not caught up with some of the supply chain issues, but cost of ammunition and some of those other critical law enforcement supplies, those costs have continued to increase. We've kept them down where we could. We continue to look for different vendors that can save us money. And we've got a pretty good process in place for that. Along with the increase in overall on operational costs in the law enforcement division, we increased our revenues by $106,000. So we, we offset a majority of the cost of the operational increase in law enforcement. And those increase in revenues in the law enforcement division are really a combination of grants. We renegotiated our rate with the U.S. Forest Service. They continue to cut our rate back for, for what they pay us to provide summer coverage on that. We got that rate back up to 25,000. So a lot of smaller things, when you look through the law enforcement revenues, a lot of small increases, but mostly grant related for what we picked up on that. And then at the end of my presentation, at the end of, on the budget guidelines, on the law enforcement division and both of our correctional divisions and the care campus under other considerations, Commissioner Hancock asked a question earlier about, are there critical areas that we're way behind in that we need to do some catch up in? And I've got a few that I want to point out, but I'm also going to try to bring part of a solution to you for that at the end of my presentation. So under other law enforcement considerations specifically related to the deputy wages, correction wages and our detox tech wages, I'm going to give you some, some thoughts and some ideas and a potential solution at the end of my presentation. Any questions on the law enforcement division?
That was the law enforcement. The wellness.
Next one's going to be care campus.
Kind of looking, you got a narrative for that?
I do. There should be a narrative for each one of the budgets.
Yep, there we go.
All right.
Page 11, guys.
It's at page 11?
Yep, it's page 11. It's the second to last page.
I apologize. I'll do, I'll coordinate with Holly next year to make sure I have my stuff in the same order you have it in, so.
I like the narratives.
All right, good, good. We tried to give a lot of detail in there for you. And I know that when you look at these budgets, you're looking, you're looking at a lot more than just the ones I have. And they're pretty complicated, so I tried to give enough detail in there so you have a good understanding and, and what we're doing. The care campus on this first slide just breaks down the admissions, total admissions over the last four years. You know, we're, we've stayed pretty consistent since we've opened. The, we're an accredited facility. As you know, we moved down to the current campus in 2018. Our admissions are staying pretty consistent. And our big emphasis in 2022 and in moving into 2023 is to increase the number of people that we have in our treatment beds. That number's been low, it's been hard. There's so much bureaucracy involved in getting somebody into a treatment bed once either the attorneys or the courts have determined that they need a treatment bed, working the process through the state and actually getting them into that bed before they've absconded, committed another offense or decided that, that treatment may not be an option for them has been a challenge. So we're trying to shorten that time down once we identify that somebody needs a treatment bed and actually getting it in there. And as you'll see from our, the graph at the bottom, we've, we've really started to pick up some 6,000 on that and get those beds filled up. So Willie's been working with our crew over at the care campus really hard on this the last couple of years and all of our partners. And that's something I think will, you'll continue to see improvement on, but that's been a, a pretty big focus for us. And then the second slide here is just a first quarter comparison between first quarter last year, first quarter this year. And as you can see, our numbers have stayed, you know, pretty consistent, other than residential admits have gone up quite a bit.
Would he consider residential over, over two nights or?
Yeah, they, if we move them upstairs into a treatment bed, you know, so they're, none of, even if they stay four or five days down in detox, they're not counted in those numbers. They have to move actually up into the residential treatment upstairs, either into one of our beds or the beds that we run with our public private partnership with Lutheran Social Services. You know, the, there's been a lot of questions back and forth about the care campus and, and if you build it, they'll come and, you know, why are we providing all of these additional services? And I tell you, I mean, obviously it's not a mandated service, there's not a state statute that mandates that the county runs a facility like that. But the, you know, it's not, it's not happened by accident either. You know, years of looking at the data and looking at the cost, if we don't have a facility like that of building a bigger jail and incarcerating people that don't need to be incarcerated. You know, Barry Tice and his predecessor have done a lot of tremendous work on statistics and looking at that and talking to our community partners. But just, I want to break down just a couple of things for you. In the first four and a half years that we've been in business over there, we've done about 5,000 low level law enforcement diversions, straight into the care campus that did not come to the jail. And these are low level intoxicated individuals, trespassing, those types of things. And Barry and his staff did a good job of getting a breakdown, criminal justice costs specific to one night in jail, if you need an attorney. And that cost to Pennington County is about $800 per arrest. So we're looking at close to 5,000 diversions over four and a half years out of cost savings on the criminal justice and jail side of about $4 million to Pennington County. And we're, you know, our Pennington County tax report is about a million dollars a year into that building. And that's not the only diversion that we're doing with those specific cases over there too. That doesn't count the number of individuals that we have checking themselves into a safe bed, which we're running pretty close to 70% self admits on, on those safe beds right now. And that, that, those are not counted as diversion, but a lot of those people, if they didn't have a place like that to go and check themselves into, would be having law enforcement contacts. So there, there's a lot of good work going on in the, in that building over there, I think. And we've got a new mayor in town, you know, we've got some issues going on with homelessness. And that, there's, there's more work that needs to be done. And I think we need to start pulling some levers and making some changes. I'm willing to do that. We're working on programs right now to incentivize some volunteerism with our homeless population that are coming through there. We're cracking down on, on poor behavior. We've got, we've got some individuals that act poorly almost every time they come into the facility, they're assaultive to staff, they're disruptive to the facility, they're causing damage. Diversion is, diversion into the care campus is no longer an option for those individuals. I've been working with Laura and with the Quality of Life Unit with the police department. We're sending strong messaging to our high utilizers that if they continue to commit crimes in our community and they're repeat offenders, we're not going to divert them over and over again. They're going to, they're going to wind up in the jail versus the care campus. So we're making some changes to try to address and improve some behaviors in our community through the work that we're doing over there.
So Brian, on this, I just wanted to share a little bit of the history on what detox is. It's a city county joint venture, number one. But part of how this started out was collaboration between Rapid City Police, I believe it was Mr. Hennies, number one. I can't remember if Holloway, it was those two that worked together on this?
Yes.
But you know, the, the housing started in, on Silver Street, their initial house for, for this started out then. And I know Glenn Rodriguez and Jim Menard helped, were like one of the ones that first took people on and then, because they were street people also at one point in time had those problems. And they went on to be counselors and worked for city county alcohol and drug programs till they retired, continued on with that. But I just wanted to bring where the, where it started at back in, on Silver Street to help deter people from going to jail and so forth. And where it's at now is a tremendous change. A lot of people say, as you said, we're drawing people in, but in all reality, we're changing lives through that process. And it was former sheriffs and, and police, city chief, police chiefs that initiated that from way in the back. And people have tried to copy it in the public and found out it's not as easy as they thought.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr.
So Brian, in 2024 budget, you mentioned that increased state contracts and requests from Rapid City, does Monument Health participate in operation of care campuses?
Yeah, the, the last, the last few years, they've given us a contribution. I think last year, they gave us $250,000 over two years. They gave us a, a contribution a couple of years ago. Prior to that, they've, they were a big contributor into what we're doing at Pivot Point. And we will continue to ask them for ongoing contributions. I don't have a commitment past this year. However, the work that we do is a big diversion from the emergency department. And as, as you know, our, our medical director at the jail and over the care campus is also an emergency room doctor, so we work very closely together. And they, they recognize the importance of the work that we do over there to create diversion. And I'm very hopeful that we can continue that partnership and be looking for longer term funding. In the, when I flip over to the budget narrative, you know, our staff worked hard, look, we've got four years of, of data to look at now, we worked hard, we actually decreased our operations budget by $40,000 at the care campus. And we increased our revenue by $394,000. And that was, we had a 16% increase from the state in funding the different contracts that we do for treatment and detox services, which it's, it was long overdue, but we're very thankful that the legislature bit that off and gave us that increase because it was costing us quite a bit more to perform the functions in the detox side and in the treatment side than, than what we were getting reimbursed from the state. So it was nice to see that, that state increase, bump that up. And then the other thing that I did is I increased the city's contribution by $197,000 based on the fact that the city is such a high utilizer of that, of that facility. So that's where you see the, the increase in the revenues for that facility. We did, I did request one additional staff over there for a counselor staff. And that staff would be paid for through our opioid settlement dollars for Pennington County, which that's a, that is an authorized use. We've talked about it as a group with the, several of us here from Pennington County and agree that's a good use going forward. And we're hoping that that'll be a longer term funding source for that type of operation for us. So there's no tax dollars related to that increase. And then the other consideration on the detox side is the detox tech staff. And I'll talk more about that at the end of my presentation. Any questions on the care campus? Next, we're going to move to the jail.
It's page five in the
I really got you out of order.
In the budget book. But next on your slide.
There we go. Yeah, it's much easier to have you flip around than me to try to redo this PowerPoint presentation standing here in front of you. We wouldn't be started till noon again. All right, so the, this first slide that you're looking at the jail is the intakes and releases in our average daily population over the last five years. You can see, other than COVID, we've stayed pretty consistent with the majority of our We, the jail is considered at full capacity by national standards at about 525 inmates. That's about 88% full. Anytime we creep up over that 525 number, classification is very difficult and we wind up with people housed in the wrong areas with the wrong people in the jail, which creates, you know, issues for our staff, mostly behavioral with those types of inmates. And we've been running over that 525 number consistently since 2014. The only time we've really dipped below it, as you can see there in the last few years, is in 2020, we, you know, we did release several pretrial people out of the jail during that period to help slow the spread of COVID in the facility. Our numbers dropped below it, but since then, we've rebounded and we've stayed consistently above it. Today, we're running, our number in the jail today is 615. We have 601 beds in the jail, we're running 615 inmates in there today. So there's some real challenges with that. And then again, the quarterly comparison on intakes and releases and average daily population on the bottom there. And I'm going to talk through several of the things that we're doing over at the jail as we move forward through that. The next slide, I just want to show you, a lot of people don't realize this, but we do, we do a lot of work with inmate labor in our jail. And as you can see with that kitchen laundry program, we do the equivalent of 60 full time staff of work with inmate labor in the jail. And those of you that have done a tour know that when you walk past the kitchen, we're, you know, we run that 99%. Usually the, our contractor has one or two employees in the kitchen, the rest of our work done in the kitchen is inmate labor. 100% of the work in our laundry is inmate labor. We do have a staff that, that oversees that, but it's all inmate labor. And we use inmate labor for cleaning custodial duties on every cell block in the facility that we're able to do that in. Couple of our higher classification, that becomes a little bit more difficult. But we are, we are doing a lot of work in saving Pennington County a lot of money with the amount of inmate labor. And that doesn't only benefit Pennington County. You can imagine that if you're, you're in custody for weeks or months or years, it's nice to have something other to do with your time than just sit idle. So a lot of our inmates are appreciative of the fact they get to get out of their cells and, and go do some work and be productive too. I'm going to flip over to the budget narrative then, on the jail side. We're the only accredited correctional facility, adult and juvenile, in the, in the state of South Dakota. And we house, house the largest number of, number of U.S. Marshals. And I tell you, we're also the largest mental facility in the state of South Dakota. When you look at the number of severely persistently mentally ill people housed in the jail, it's more than they have at HSC in Yankton. And our staff do a pretty tremendous job, that the mental, number of mental illness and complicated medical issues that we're seeing in our correctional facilities is through the roof. And our staff in our correctional facilities is through the roof, and our staff do an amazing job taking care of these individuals, keeping them stable through the court process and trying to return them back to our communities in at least as good a shape if we find them, but usually much better shape. The only non-mandated function that we do in under the jail budget is our prisoner transportation system, and I'm not going to go through a lot of details on that because we did a study that most of you were here for a few years ago. But, you know, that we've got that system set up to create revenue from our partners. And it doesn't negate 100% of Pennington County's cost, but it drastically reduces Pennington County's costs, probably down to about 25% of what our actual cost would be to transport our own prisoners without running that system. And that's even taken into account that every six years, we buy a new prisoner transportation bus with that fund. So that's the only non-mandated thing that we're doing. Under the jail budget, we increased our operational cost $153,000 from last year. And about half of half of that cost, $75,000, is specifically related to a Windows update we need to do on all of our computers throughout the jail to maintain our several million-dollar compute, our security system that we have over there. It's outdated. The system that we have will no longer operate that next year, so we're going to use some money towards the end of this year and then budgeting a little bit next year to try to get that chunked off. That's over $150,000 project, and we needed to put some money in next year's budget to finish that up. The remainder of the the increase is related to core EMR, which is our medical interface that we use for medical records and vehicle costs and fuel costs going up. In the jail, we're able to increase our revenues $471,000. And I'll just give you a little bit of a history, and you know it because I've been saying it for for the last year, but two years ago, we were running 225 marshal inmates in custody. Based on our local population growth in custody, I've had to reduce that number down. Today, we're running close to 140. Our rate for the last three years has been $85 a day. In the budget this year, we have, we budgeted that we were going to have 160 U.S. Marshals in custody at $85 a day, and I'm running 140. So we're taking a pretty big hit this year in in under collecting on our U.S. Marshal inmates by several hundred thousand dollars. We'll know a little bit more when we get further in the year what that actually is going to be. But we just spent the last month renegotiating our marshal rate, and and on Friday last week, we just signed a deal with them to increase it from $85 to $108 a day, effective sometime here in July. I'm hoping here in the next couple of weeks, we'll have it finalized, and that new rate will kick in, and we can start to recover some of that money that we're behind based on the fact we've had to kick 20 marshals out from what we'd budgeted for this year.
That's good to hear. You just did that.
Yep. And next year, based on our our local population is not going to go down that we're housing in custody with all of the work and the initiatives that we're working on. So next year, we had to reduce that marshal number down to 140 in the budget, but with that new rate, we were still able to increase our overall revenues at the jail. And the legislature this year, first time in over 10 years, increased the state rate from $75 to $95 a day. And and each year, we do a contract with all of our neighboring counties that choose to house with us, and I changed that rate to $95 a day for a regular rate. And we're the only facility that I know of in the state. We created a specialty rate at $120 for our neighboring counties. If they're bringing somebody down that has, it's a behavioral issue, has mental health issues or medical issues that we need to take care of, we put a secondary rate on there. And what what we're finding is a lot of the surrounding counties were using cheaper alternatives for their easier inmates and then bringing their more challenging, difficult inmates down to our facility because our staff deal with them better, frankly. They fit in better here with the inmates that we have. But we put a rate on there to make that worth our time to house those higher-risk inmates. So that's having a positive impact. My colleagues, the neighboring sheriffs are understanding of that rate, and they're willing to pay it because, you know, some of those people are just that difficult and challenging that no other, no other facility in the state will take them other than us, and that that's attributed to the quality of staff that we have that's able to handle that that high risk of inmate.
So Brian, I know you guys do the breakouts, but we don't have it with us. But I mean, that cost per day, I mean, you're talking three meals, supervision, the medical, I mean, all of that, that's quite a bit of services for that price.
Yep. Yep, it is. You know, just the increase in the rate from 85 to 108 increased Pennington County's revenue by over $3,200 a day in what we're housing for those inmates. So we're pretty happy to come up with that negotiation. The several of you are were involved or understanding that we we launched that Ignite Initiative. We've got, we had, I think, 27 applicants for that position. We're going through the selection process. I hope to have that coordinator up and running here probably within the next 30 to 45 days. So we will, we'll hope to see some some positive impact with our recidivism with some of our folks in the jail once we get that up and running. The staff increases that I put into the jail, I put two specific things in there that I'm trying to accomplish. Both of them are related to the fact that we're running over 100% capacity right now. And the first one is adding five inmate security officers to start a in-custody work release over at the care campus. We have a vacated section at the care campus that has, we can house 12 to 16 inmates at a time over there. It used to be the Crisis Care Center that moved over to Pivot Point. And we're having a real issue with low to mid-level offenders in our community, with the attorneys, with the judges not having good options for them. They're hard to put them in custody for these low to mid-level offenses, but the people that are repeat offenders were not getting their attention. You can't put them on on an alternative. You can't put them on an ankle monitor because they don't charge it. You can't put them on 24/7 because they're not showing up for testing. So I'd like to do a pilot for a year, add five ISO staff over there to run a community, community work project, in-custody work release in partnership with the Rapid City. And I talked to a couple of council members. I haven't talked to the mayor yet, but the cost of Pennington County to add that staff, and I put that in my my memo, is a little over $300,000. There'll be a few other costs related to vehicle and fuel that that go along with that. But if I, I won't be able to increase the marshal numbers by 100% because that's not the type of people that we're going to put over there. But I do believe that we're going to have enough of an impact on the individuals that are in our current jail that I can add the marshal number, I can add five to the marshal number, so that'll increase our marshal revenue by $200,000 to offset most of the cost. And then I plan to go to the Rapid City Council and the mayor and ask them for $150,000 to support that program. So I'm not looking for a commitment today other than, you know, when we go through this process, if you'd at least allow me to go have that conversation so we can see if Rapid City will fund that at $150,000. There'll be no taxpayer cost to Pennington County if I can increase the marshal numbers. And then I'd like to use that inmate labor for a couple of different things, and I've met with Mike Cool. I'd like to use that inmate labor for two days a week, working on projects for the city, cleaning up things in their park. I'd like to work two days a week on projects for the county, the projects that Mike and his staff currently do on buildings and grounds in our, any of our facilities, cleaning up, you know, various things. And then this would be part of our Ignite program, also working with some specific job skills and getting people's attention for 30 to 45 days on these mid-level offenses in our community to try to get them, get them sober, get them thinking differently, work on some job skills, address some issues in our community that some of the homeless people are causing, and try to make a positive impact at, you know, low cost to the taxpayer. So that's five of the FTEs that I've asked for would would run that program next door. And the other five, the other five correction staff that I would like to add would be to reopen Jail South down at the Juvenile Services Center. That'll, that'll give us 38 more adult beds that we can open up. The cost of adding that staff is about $368,000. That's in your memo. Again, I can't move 38 marshal inmates over to that facility, but with the with the individuals that I would move out of the jail, I am anticipating that I could add 20 to the marshal number next year, and that's going to be an increase in revenue of about $800,000. So that'll pay for all of the new staff that we would add, plus add a little over $400,000 additional revenue to Pennington County on top of it. And before you take too many notes about the extra $400,000, at the end of my presentation, I'm going to try to spend that for you.
So thanks for being upfront.
Yeah.
So Brian, with that being all said, the city's going through their, going to be going through their budgets, too.
Correct.
So at what point would you want the commission to approve you going to the city?
You know, I mean, if you're, if you're willing to let me go make the request, I'd ask you to do that, maybe even next week. I don't know what that looks like for you.
Yeah.
But this is just a conversation. At this point, my presentation to the city would be, the county is going to have to agree, and you're going to have to agree, or this isn't going to work. But I do think that, you know, enough of enough of our elected officials on the city side have also been pounding their chest on, we need to hold people accountable, lock them up, increase them accountability, and they do that by putting more law enforcement officers on the street, but they're not, they don't have any skin in the game when it comes to the cost of corrections, public defenders, state's attorney. So I think there's an appetite for them to partner together on something that could have a positive impact and a bigger umbrella overall for Pennington County and for Rapid City.
Okay, so you'll bring back something later for today, it's just informational.
Yeah, for today, it's information, but I do plan on putting together that request to go to the city unless you guys discuss it and think that it's a terrible idea. But I do think with the fact that jail's running, you know, at 100% capacity, we need to increase some accountability. I don't have any place to put those people right now. I've got to create an additional place to put them, or I have to kick more marshal inmates out to do that. I could kick, I could kick 20 more marshal inmates out, and I could just do that without adding staff in the jail. That's going to cost Pennington County about $700,000 in revenue in the marshal inmates if we had to remove some to start this program. So I think there's a real benefit in adding the staff to be able to do it in this manner.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I would think that we would want to extend that authority to allow him to have that conversation. We're going to need to know the end result from the city before we make that final decision ourselves. So I think the sooner that he can have that conversation, the better.
Okay. Mr. Russell.
Brian, you estimate that adding five USM inmates would generate around 202,000? So how's that work?
If I, if I open this up, my hope is it'll reduce the current population in the jail enough that I can add five more marshals in to backfill them. And if we called the marshals up today and said, hey, we'll, we'd take 10 more inmates, tomorrow they'd have 10 more inmates here. They're housing inmates in Scott Bluff, Scotts Bluff, Nebraska. They're housing inmates in Winter. They're housing inmates in Kansas right now as a result of us kicking over 100 of them out the last year. And actually, the the South Dakota Marshall and the Chief Deputy are in town. We're meeting this afternoon just to talk through some of this, some of them being nimble on being able to move their inmates in and out based on what our local capacity looks like.
So it'd just be able to collect higher rents in situations that would be warranted then?
Well, right now, in the written into next year's budget, I have 140 marshal inmates at $108 a day. What I'm telling you is if I can do this, I could increase that number to 145, and if I can get Jail South opened up, I try to increase that number to 165.
So in my presentation, it says 111.
Yeah, the numbers, the numbers are probably off just a little bit. What, when I, when I, when I wrote these, this and gave this to you, we were looking at trying to get that marshal rate to 111. We negotiated down. They stuck at 100, and we ended up negotiating to 108. So my numbers are going to be off just a little bit, but.
Okay.
So this is a new program, and it'll cost five, you're saying 550, 400 for us and 150 for the city? Or you're, you're including the 150 and the 400,000 you're talking about?
The, you know, staff costs altogether are 670,000 roughly for all 10 staff. That's a rough estimate. And the revenue costs, the revenue we bring into the marshals is roughly $1 million, and I'm going to ask the city for $150,000.
Okay.
And I'm going to try to spend that other 400,000 here in just a little bit with you.
Got that. And then you want to do the Ignite program as well, or is that included in? That's part of what you're doing is to reprogram people?
The the Ignite program is something that I launched already. I used an existing FTE for that position. I don't have any existing FTEs or funding in the budget for that.
Okay, so at this point, did you put in, in your budget, the five, total of 10 FTEs added already, or that's a decision that hasn't been made? Maybe Cindy can answer that.
Those are.
That money already been in the?
It's not in my budget. All the FTEs were presented to you guys separately, so you should have that on a sheet in there, what an explanation as to what those FTEs are.
So five FTEs for JAC and then five FTEs for this program?
It'd be, it'd be a total of 10 FTEs under the jail, five correction staff and five ISOs.
That aren't included in your budget.
They're not included in the overall budget numbers, but but those 10 staff are included in the extra FTE supplement that we submitted through Holly.
So, okay, Cindy, so it's not budgeted in at this point? None of the FTEs at this point for anybody are budgeted in their budgets?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, I, the reason why I say the FTEs are different and, and his presentation now, yes, they are listed but not included, but he's, he's already said it's a wash as far as how it's going to be. So those 10 that we see would be covered under what he just explained. That's why I think Mr. Drews was saying we should give him the direction now so he could move forward with conversations with the city because pretty much it's a wash. He's going to make 400 with those 10.
Well, he said, yeah, four, and then he was going to say, hey.
He'll use that somewhere else.
So what I'm saying is, I'm not against what you're doing. I mean, it sounds like a great idea, but there's only so much in that budget. And then we're going to give you direction to go see what you could do, and we don't even know at this point the dollars that we're spending, and does that mean you're agreeing to five FTEs, guys, and that we have the funding for that? Does that make sense to y'all? So what I'm saying, Brian, is, I don't know if you saw this budget this year.
You have, you have, the commission has all the control over this.
Yes, and that's, that's what I'm saying, and this, and 16% on those reserves is where we're at right now, and you're in an inflation-type environment right now. Brian, you do a good job. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying right now, hard decisions need to be made. Are the programs getting dropped? Maybe some of that needs to happen. I don't know. You're the sheriff. I don't run your programs. What are working, what are not? Where can some of this come in anew in different areas? I like what you're doing. I like what you're seeing, but you also have to have a funding source for all of that, and so do we, so.
These, all 10 of these FTEs will be 100% funded, no taxpayer increase at the end of the day. Because I haven't included any of those, that extra $1 million of revenue is also not in the budget.
He won't have, he won't have that revenue unless he opens up the JDC and care campus.
That's why I'm asking you. How much is it, are you adding to the general fund? You said you didn't have any money to fund the 10 FTEs, but now you're saying you have the funds, that you're just switching the revenue in a different way, so it's not going to increase our budget. Is that what you're saying?
And I detailed it out also in the budget narrative to you.
Yeah.
The five staff, the 10 total staff is going to cost about $370,000.
Right.
If you let me hire them, I can shuffle some things around. I can add 25 U.S. Marshal inmates and increase Pennington County's revenue by $1 million.
But when I saw your budget, it was 2.5 increase total, looks like, and I didn't know if you were offsetting some of it. I didn't know if you were um offsetting some of it. I already know from opioid and different things that you have on some FTEs, but again, then you're two point five short this year.
Well, you're not taking into consideration the revenues. You got to look at the expenditures with the revenues, and I have that later in the presentation to take a look at.
Okay.
But bottom line, I think by doing that and getting those federal inmates is covering those costs to, in order to move forward. So it would, the rest of its other stuff that's increased. If, if he does nothing, that, none of it, then the cost of the jail could go up.
So you're not starting any of these programs or doing any of this increase this year to your budget? You're going to do all of this next year?
I'd do it all next year, other than, I mean, we can get our staffing uh righted a little bit with our correctional staff. I can start bringing some of these Marshall inmates in earlier, but this is a request for next year.
Yeah.
So that would you be, as Mr. Drew said, to suggest that he move forward with his discussions with the city to move forward? Because it would be more, it would be, actually, well, he's got to use for the four hundred, but be a wash.
I think we should have this discussion tomorrow. That way we have time to think about it, talk to Brian, make sure we're getting the numbers and, and things right. So we have a frank discussion um that we're good to go and that Brian has covered the questions that we asked, um not understanding some of it. It's a lot of numbers.
Lot of numbers. I apologize for that.
Bottom line, you can put some of those bottom lines together, um and what I'll do is I'll meet with you or talk with you today afterwards, and then that'll simplify it for me. And then by tomorrow, I don't think it's going to hurt to be today.
That sounds fair. Tomorrow, we'll have that discussion in the afternoon.
Totally, totally fine. And then any, any memo I would submit, I'd run it past you. We could work together on it before we submit it, so.
You bet. You done?
But Brian, if I'm doing this right, I would take a hundred and eight times three hundred and sixty-five times twenty, and that would show me that revenue for the extra twenty uh beds that we would uh house US Marshall inmates.
Correct.
Okay.
That's seven hundred and some thousand dollars. I might have to, like I said, when I initially put these numbers together, I was working on a hundred and eleven dollars. My real number's a hundred and eight. I might need to move that number to twenty-one inmates instead of twenty to make that math work, but I'll do that.
So it sounds like Holly that you got, tomorrow we'll add this to our agenda. So everybody's agreeing to that?
Yep, that way hopefully we talk to Brian by then. And if you come back tomorrow, Brian, just in case.
Yep, just tell me what, rough time, and I'd definitely be here. I appreciate that.
We'll work, work with Holly.
And I know uh, I'm throwing a lot of stuff at you in a short period of time, and I apologize for that, so.
Well, you're being very thorough, which I appreciate too.
All right.
Um, but we still have to know those numbers and add those in our head right now.
I got you. It's a lot.
That's a lot.
We get to look at it every day, and you're trying to look at everything all in two days for the whole county. That's a lot.
Awesome, thank you.
The uh next section is uh our juvenile services center. We'll let Lloyd find the page for you.
Page ten. Page ten. That is the JSC Juvenile Alternatives?
Yes. It's the, and I'm going to talk to both of them at the same time. The Juvenile Services Center has two separate budgets. One's for our regional secure budget, and the other one is for juvenile alternatives budget. I'm just going to talk through them at the same time a little bit here for you. This first slide that's in front of you just shows the average daily population and the length of stay in Pennington County. And as you all know, this is, you know, we, we run this as a user group with our seven surrounding counties. They all contribute funds if they're housing detainees out there. And then we're one of, we're the only juvenile accredited facility in the country, and we're one of three juvenile facilities in the country that house Bureau of Prison detainees, and they pay us about five hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. That offsets a lot of costs for Pennington County. That number, you know, a few years ago was running in the high teens, low twenties. Through COVID, it dropped down to we were housing two or three. Now we're, we're getting that number back up again um to where it's uh been a real benefit for us to continue to, to house those detainees in our facility.
I'm going to interrupt you a little bit. It's page nine and ten, sorry. I just told.
Page nine and ten.
I just gave him the end page.
I'm all over the place for you, yeah. Again, I told you that this, this budget's broken to two different uh sections. The second one is the alternatives, and this, this second slide just shows uh, you know, what some of the different things they're doing, what their daily population is uh with our contract with Lutheran Social Services.
And they're still, the reception center running Lutheran Social Services is and?
Yep, they're still running that. The sixteen beds on our non-secure side of the juvenile center. So operational costs at JSC in the secure side increased a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars from last year, and that's specifically related to our uh rising cost in mental health care, a rising medical cost for the juveniles that we're housing, and again, uh fuel and vehicle costs are in that. Uh, we were able to increase revenues at JSC by three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, so we um over-collect revenues about twice what our operational cost increased. And that primarily is a, is a result of our State Department of Corrections, uh use has gone up, and then our use of our US Marshall, um which is pre-trial federal detainees uh has gone up also out there. That's helped to increase our, our revenue. One, one misperception I think that some people get when they, when they're looking at what we're doing out at the juvenile center is they, they believe that what we do on the non-secure side with Lutheran Social Services is a non-mandated function. I tell you, I don't, I don't think that that's the case. In the past, Pennington County has staffed the non-secure side at JSC at a much higher cost than what we can contract with our private partnership with Lutheran Social Services. As a non-government entity, they have access to different grants and funding mechanisms that we don't have that offset some of our costs. They contract with the Department of Corrections and Department of Social Services to house non-criminal individuals out there that offsets our cost. And, but what I would tell you is that we, we are, continue to evaluate our partnership with them. On the, on the non-secure side, the operational costs went up eighty-one thousand, and that was specific to the Lutheran Social Services contract. But just like Pennington County, they've struggled to hire and retain staff. They've had to increase their wages, and that eighty-one thousand is a hundred percent due to staff and wage increases. If we were running that with correction staff, that number would be, that increase would be two hundred and some thousand dollars for the wage increases that we're going to do with it. So I do think it's a, it's beneficial. I do think it's mandated. It's not mandated that we contract with an entity to do it. Pennington County could do it, but we're going to continue to monitor that, and if we can do it cheaper, I'd get rid of the, I'd bring that back to you. We'd get rid of the contract and we'd run it, but frankly, we can't. We're running our uh, our cost to house a kid in JSC in Pennington County is three hundred and ninety-five dollars a day. Our cost on the non-secure side is closer to a hundred and ninety dollars a day, so there's good cost savings to use that mechanism. And again, at the end of my presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about correction staff salaries. Any questions on the JSC budget? I'm getting pretty close to done, I promise. Only got like six to go. I just wanted to talk just momentarily, and, and I get to hear all of you recognize our volunteers on a regular basis, so I know that you understand the importance of volunteers in Pennington County for the amount of work that we get done with volunteers, and it lets us do things we frankly just wouldn't be able to do. And this is just a slide to give you a little bit of a snapshot on the volunteers associated with the Sheriff's Office. We have, you know, over seventy volunteers a year that are coming in and out of our jail, providing services, over thirty a year coming in and out of our juvenile facility. Um, our Explorer Program is something that we've had in place for about five years now. It's a great partnership with the community, with young people in our community, and it's turned into a good recruitment tool. Uh, our young people that we got involved in this program when they were sixteen, seventeen years old now have gotten to the age where we're hiring them as correction staff, we're hiring them in detox, we're, we've even hired one as a deputy. So that's been a, a long-term good recruitment tool for us. And then the only budget associated with our volunteers is search and rescue. And I, I covered a little bit of this, and I've got an update to this. And I'm not exactly sure how it's going to shake out, but in, in historically, Rapid City and Pennington County have split the cost of search and rescue, the tax support cost, and for the last several years, it's been right around twenty-two thousand dollars apiece. Uh, this year, without any warning, the city reduced their portion down to fifteen thousand dollars, which I don't blame them. Majority of the work our search and rescue folks do are, are out in the county. Uh, the city gives us a building for a dollar a year. They don't charge us anything for that, so that's a good partnership. Uh, the fire chief oversees the search and rescue budget part for the city, and in a conversation I had with him when I was preparing our budget, um, he was going to make the pitch that the city provide no funding for search and rescue next year. We do so many joint things together. I, I just uh, I wrote, I wrote the city's portion out of this budget and funded it. Pennington County had a hundred percent at fifty thousand instead of the, you know, we're going to be funding it at thirty-five thousand roughly this year with the city withdrawing part of their funds. But I got a call from him yesterday. He reconsidered, he's leaving the fifteen thousand dollars in there, so I need to go back and make a couple of adjustments to this budget, which will be a benefit, benefit to us, but I'll get those numbers to Cindy. I just found that out yesterday. So the city is going to fund that at fifteen thousand dollars for next year. Um, I do anticipate likely that that funding will go away the following year. Um, so I'll probably ask Pennington County to up theirs from thirty thousand to forty thousand. I'll get those numbers to Cindy. I've got it in at fifty thousand, so that'll actually be a savings to our budget. But they, our current search and rescue crew does an absolutely amazing job. They handle about a hundred and fifty calls for service a year for us. They have fifteen specialty vehicles, probably the least expensive one they have is thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, they maintain fifteen of them, and they've done it for a number of years at about twenty-five thousand dollars cost to Pennington County. We're going to need to increase that. They, they're phenomenal fundraisers. They've got some of these vehicles paid for a hundred percent by contributions. Um, that's not something we're going to be able to sustain, to sustain forever, so I'd like to, over the next few years, increase this amount a little bit. Doesn't have to be huge, but um I just don't know that we can rely on fundraising as a way to fund, you know, a life critical mission for them when we've got to upkeep these vehicles, so.
So Brian, most, most of the search and rescue are, are they the uh fire department employees?
No, I don't think any of them.
Retired ones or?
Maybe a couple of retired ones. We work, we do work closely together with the Rapid City Fire Department in a lot of the things that we do, uh but, but they're a hundred percent volunteer.
Yeah.
Organization for us. We do have a, a couple of liaisons that we train up deputies, we train up to work on the side of them and do incident command when we have large-scale incidents, but it's a hundred percent volunteer outfit, and they are.
Quite right.
They are used a lot. And then, I don't have slides on it, but the uh, the uh twenty-four-seven program, I just want to discuss that briefly. That's, that's been something historically across the state that has been run with no taxpayer support. However, we, we had built up several hundred thousand dollars in our twenty-four-seven fund. Over the years, we've used that for some building remodels, rent for the facility. Um, in, during COVID, our numbers dropped to the point that our, our utilization was low enough, we reduced the hours, we reduced the staff, but we, we ate through that few hundred thousand dollars in that reserve over the last two years, and we actually depleted that reserve this month. So there'll be a little bit of taxpayer money, guessing close to probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars taxpayer money supporting uh twenty-four-seven this year. And I wrote seventy-nine thousand dollars tax support into the twenty-four-seven budget for next year. Um, that, that'll get us through with how we're currently operating. A couple of things on that front that I'd tell you, it's a non, non-mandated function, but we have several participants that are on that at a time that are out as a condition of bond, and the judges use it as a condition of sentence. So without that program, we'd have a number of people that were serving a sentence in the jail and a number of people that the judges wouldn't be comfortable that were monitoring, that would be sitting in jail with a higher bond. And at seventy-nine thousand, that equates to about two point three um individuals that we'd be housing in the jail. So if we, if we wanted to not put any tax support in it, I could close that program, but I would guarantee you the number of people we'd be housing in custody would be a lot higher than two point three, and our cost would be way more than eighty thousand dollars. I'm on the state committee, twenty-four-seven committee under the Attorney General that houses the rules, um that works on legislative changes, and our group has been actively discussing. We haven't done a rate increase on PBT since the program started thirteen, fourteen years ago. Um, there needs to be a rate increase, but each time we bring it up, there's a contingency that goes with legislation that tries to get rid of the user fees altogether. Um, if they were able to successfully do that, this program would cost us, you know, probably close to uh three hundred and some thousand dollars to run it. So we want to be a little bit careful in timing, but we are going to work with that committee to try to increase some of the fees to get this back to a user-paid, non-tax support program. So that's something we'll be working on. If we're lucky enough to be successful on that, then um whatever excess that we have will continue to go back into that twenty-four-seven fund, but I'll keep you updated on the progress on that. But I did write in some tax support for that twenty-four-seven budget. And I'm just going to flip through the next couple of deals. This is just an overview of our budget. This first sheet, these should be, in some fashion, you guys will have this uh in your packet. I don't know exactly if it's, probably not broken out by division, but I just wanted to show you that there is no increase in FTEs in this. All the FTEs were provided separate. The only FTEs that I'm asking for is the, the uh um one over at the Care Campus, uh the counselor position that's funded by opioid money. And I did, I forget to mention, I asked for a half of an FTE increase for a transport officer if we're going to run the same type of security out of the new facility that we're running here. Right now, I'm able to be very efficient with that because I can bounce staff back and forth for breaks and other things, but if we're going to move out there, I'm going to lose some efficiency. So I did ask for a half of an FTE that's included in your, your budget sheets for uh transport, uh building security, if we decide to go that with the same level of security out there, if they want it staffed uh the entire time they're open. But if they wanted to staff it less, we could have that discussion and take that one back off the board too.
So that, so that half point would be for the, for the concourse facilities.
Correct.
Security.
Correct. We're, and, and that's also with all the other buildings, if we're not doing any additional security in the other buildings. But I, I would advocate that we don't increase security in buildings we're currently not doing security on. And then this is just an overall, an overview of the expenditures with the comparison. This is in your guys' sheet too. I just wanted to give that to you all in one place with the Sheriff's Office budgets. I think that's the number that Commissioner Hancock was talking about. At the bottom of that, net change is two point, two million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars at about six percent. That's just the expenses. We did increase our revenues by over a million dollars. That's the revenue sheet. That's in the packet that you have, and that's, I just took the revenues out of your, you've got them in order, all the revenues for Pennington County, but I just wanted you to be able to look at the ones under our divisions in one spot. Again, this number will change a little bit because we'll increase some revenue back in for the city that's not in there. So we increased our revenues just under six percent. And then I want to show you this sheet for a minute because in our, last year, when you guys approved some of the bu- budget, some of the increases in the budget um for this year, uh when you look at our overall expense increase, those raises that you approved last year are into that budget. So that's green column, this twenty-twenty-three supplemental approved column is what you approved last year that's in this year's budget. So when you look at our Pennington County and the Sheriff's Office under my budgets, what the actual tax support, once we figure those raises that you approved last year and we factor in the revenue that we're able to increase, this shows you the dollar amount and the percentage amount from each one of my budgets. this shows you the dollar amount and the percentage amount from each one of my budgets that they actually increased. So you can see, overall, in law enforcement, the increase is 579,000 roughly at 5.5%. At the jail, the overall tax increase is 262,000 at 3.19%. JSC only had a 1% increase overall. We actually decreased tax support at the care campus by $87,000. The search and rescue number, the percentage will scare you, but that number will go down because we'll reduce that number by 15,000. It'll be closer to what it has been. And then, for the first time, we did put that tax support in at 24/7. So overall, at the end of the day, our tax support increase from our office is 891,000 roughly at just about 4%. Any questions on that? All right.
Are those revenues really seeing to offset the tax support?
Yeah, you know, roughly 46% of our overall budget is offset by outside revenues. And I don't think you'll find another sheriff's office in the region that runs it like a business like that. So when, each area that we had operational increase, we tried to go work hard to be constructive, to find a way to increase revenue. But that revenue, we create that revenue on the backs of our employees by extra work and extra responsibilities. And nearly every area that we create revenue is an area that statutorily we don't need to do. It's extra work that we take on that helps Pennington County overall operationally by bringing that revenue in.
So if I'm looking at this right, revenues for projected for 2024 would be $19,643,473, and then we can expect those to be higher in 2025 because of the capability to house more martial inmates?
If we, if you let me increase that staff by 10, that revenue line will increase by a million dollars. Our expense line should increase by about, what did I say, 300, 670,000. But I'm going to try to spend the balance of that here in a minute.
You don't forget, do you?
I don't. I don't. So I didn't put this in my actual budget presentation because I didn't really want to blind send it to you. But I've been working with Carroll County HR a little bit and our staff. And I just, I want to bring a couple of things up that is an immediate issue for us right now, but I want to, I'm hoping to bring a solution to you, too. The, our deputies right now are currently at between $3.40 and $4.50 an hour behind our main competitors in law enforcement. That's the Rapid City Police Department, South Dakota DCI, and the South Dakota Highway Patrol. That's the main entities that when we lose staff in law enforcement, they go someplace else. That's where a majority of them go. We do lose some for the feds, too, but I'm not, their rate's even higher, but I don't factor that in. That's a smaller number. Rapid City, as you know, they're $3.40 an hour higher than our deputies right now. Plus, on top of that, they put a package in for over $400,000 worth of wellness benefit for their staff mid-year, non-budgeted, on top of what the other city employees get. And I tell you that to say, not to tell you I'm having a huge issue right now on the deputy side because we're keeping pretty fully staffed on the deputy side, but our staff are watching this process. We've never gotten this far out of whack with the police department, and they could, you know, they have been 30 down. The police department, I think they're down to maybe eight or 10 openings right now. But our staff easily could transfer over at, you know, close to a $10,000 raise for a lot of them and go work for a different agency. But they're not doing that because they love Pennington County, they love the work they do and being part of our team. But I need to work to try to get that fixed, and right now, our process that we have in place is an awesome one. I love the fact that you trusted the department heads and elected officials to work together on the compensation committee, to work on the, our future, what the future wage project looks like, and we're having really good progress on that. But with a couple of these positions, waiting until 2025 to try to make any adjustments is going to be very problematic for us. And I have staff that are watching this process. I've just been asking them to be patient till we can get in front of the commission, talk through what some potential solutions might be. So that's one issue that I'm having with staffing. The second one I want to talk about is our corrections positions. And when we look at the corrections position, the market, we're pretty, we're pretty close to right where we need to be with the market. However, the type of caliber of employees that we're hiring in corrections right now are highly recruitable into these other law enforcement agencies. So they could go make $5 to $6 an hour more going to work for another law enforcement agency right now. And there, we're losing, we've lost a fair number. And I've been asking the police department not to go recruit out of the jail, and they've been helping us with that, but that's not going to be a long-term thing. I need to get them a little bit of relief, too. As you know, and I've talked about this in the past, last year, we paid about $1 million in overtime to our correction staff. This year, we've got that. We're going to have that down a little bit, but not by maybe 100,000 or 200,000 less than that. It's still going to be way too high. But I need to be able to take a package to these correctional officers to help with recruitment, help with retention long enough that I can get that number stabilized, reduce that overtime. So that's another issue that I have, both at JSC and at the Pennington County Jail. The third group of people that I'm going to talk to you about is our detox technicians. That position is graded too low, and we've got a few other positions throughout the county, and I'm sure each department head can get up and talk to you about the specifics on that. But that position starts at just over $17 an hour. I mean, you can go, you'll work about anywhere in town in any job, starting at about $20 an hour right now. I'm 11 detox tech staff down, and I have several that are out there looking right now because they can almost go work anywhere else as a medical tech in that field and start between, you know, $20 to $24 an hour in that field. So those are the kind of three critical positions I'm trying to figure out, short term and longer term fix for. Part of this, we will handle and have a lot more data when we go through this process with the light cast through the compensation committee on all the wage comparisons. But what I would propose, what I would like to do is, if you allow me to hire these additional 10 FTEs and I can get that marshal number back up 25 like I think I can with these additional FTEs for next year and increase that revenue by a million dollars, what I'd like to do is utilize that $400,000 extra to help increase the staff costs right now, the wages for deputies, correction staff, and these detox technicians.
Mr. Chair.
Are you finished?
I just wondered how many, what your numbers are there. So the first one was, we talked about employees, I guess, with law enforcement. So how many employees are we talking about, Brian?
Just be the, just the deputy staff.
Or deputy?
Yep.
What kind of numbers?
What I'm going to ask you here for today is the option to bring this back as option to sheriff's office budget, provide it to Cindy and Holly so they can put it in your numbers for, to take a look at. What I would like to do is increase our deputy, and we could negotiate this and make this look however you want, but my ask is going to be that we increase our deputy wages 2% at the end of September this year. And the correction, sworn correction staff 2% at the end of September this year, and put that 2% on top of whatever the commission guidelines are next year. And I'd like to reclassify our detox technician positions to the inmate security officer level. They're doing the same amount of work, and that position starts at just over $19 an hour. So that would help us get that, get parity with that. And I can absorb that cost if we start it at the end of September in this year's budget. And then, but there's going to be an additional cost next year. I'd like to figure that number out, get it to Cindy, and then be able to compare it to the extra $400,000 that we're going to create with the marshals, with the extra staff, and see if I can offset a majority, if not close to all of that.
So would you be able to get with Cindy and get that information by tomorrow afternoon, bring them both?
I can get a ballpark of it together by tomorrow afternoon, so. I'm not asking for a commitment. I'm just, I'd like to bring that to you as an option so you can take a look at it overall with your numbers as a way to try to get this. Now, 2%, it's only, it's only going to get these staff 50 cents closer.
Yeah.
And it's not going to fix the problem, but when we're looking at where we need to be in 2025, I don't want to be $6 behind. We're just not going to be, that's not going to be realistic, so. I didn't want to surprise you with it. Have you tried to understand it in the packet? I wanted to have a discussion with you. I'd get the numbers to them so they can understand it, and we can talk specifically about what the impact would be.
I think that's a good idea for tomorrow, going to bring them both to get, they both coincide together.
Okay.
So.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then the last thing, I just wanted to, this is my wrap-up, so just about done. If you need a break, you're just about to get it. I talked a little bit earlier about the Ignite Program, things that we're trying to do internally to try to change some recidivism with our local inmate population. You're all fully aware of the jail infrastructure issue that we have with the sewer and the issues that we're having over there, the capacity issue. We're working through the building committee on a potential fix for that. What a lot of you probably are not aware of is Laura and I and the chief of police and the mayor out here are working with our counterparts in Minnehaha County on a group called Safe South Dakota. And we are working specifically with the Department of Corrections and the Unified Judicial System on offender accountability, specifically related to people that are being housed, people that are on parole, people that are on probation. Last week, when I looked at the numbers, and I haven't looked this week, we were housing roughly 88 individuals that had a new charge and a probation violation in the jail, and 47 that had a new charge that were on a parole violation in the jail. So creating some accountability is one thing, but once somebody's actually being sentenced to prison and they're continuing to commit crimes in our community, my belief is they need to go back to prison and serve out at least some of their time to get their attention. That hasn't been happening. This group is bringing some of those issues to the forefront, so we're working on that. That will help with some of our local jail population, I believe, if we can get, if we can get the state on board with the backend of what that system looks like. And then, as you all know, we need to find an alternative to county funding other than property taxes. And I know a lot of you are part of those discussions. We had, Commissioner Drews was able to speak with me last week with a group of 25 appropriators. Several of those are on that county committee group that are looking at the state mandate, county funding issue. I just think that as a group, the commission group, the, you know, through your association, through the Sheriff's Association, through the State's Attorneys Association, we need to all band together to be able to work on coming up with a couple of what we think are good solutions to some of the county funding and get on the same page to work with our legislator to get that pushed through. Because when I look at the future, what the TIFs do, what the counties have, what we've done with property taxes, I think we're going to have, whether the number is realistic on adding 100 people or whether it's 50 people, you know, we're going to have more work to do than what we have funds to do it. And I think, I think, I just want you to know that that's something I'm working on behind the scenes through our association, and I'd like to partner together more with you guys on working on that in the future. If we can come up with two or three solutions and try to find something that makes sense and sticks with the legislature to get the county some alternate funding, whether that be, you know, a 1% sales tax, you know, a variety of different things that I've heard kicked around, I just think we should use our collective associations to try to lobby together and get something done on that for next year.
Ms. Hancock?
I also think we should push back from the state on some of the stuff they keep pushing onto the counties and expecting us to fund it. So they save, and I kept hearing when I was on a committee, SB 73, how much the state is saving and how much they've done through corrections and what they've done for their prisons and what they've done. No offense, but I told them what you did is you diverted them to cities and counties without giving the funding in order to divert. So I think there needs to be some pushback from the state. How much are we really saving you? And how much are you pushing back your class onto other counties? Do they already know that? Pretty sure they do by now. But again, we get no sales tax, we get no extra money, we can't get any extra money for different things on sales tax and stuff. So it's time, sometimes when you have to, when you're thinking straight, that some people just need to go back to jail for a while to correct. Not everybody. You guys are doing some really good diversion programs in Pennington County, but other stuff. Like I said, state needs to feel some of that push as well. So I think you're trying to do some really good programs and things to do that. It's just, we need some more funding from the state. If we're going to keep diverting and keep, you know, saving the population from going to prison through means of city and county government, then again, that costs us a lot of money to do that, so.
We're on the same page. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are. Yep.
So thanks, Brian, and I think, I think you got the support from the commission as far as some additional funding, I think. I think we all seen the letter that Holly or Jonah sent out from, was it Wisconsin, where the state started to give the counties, I think, 20% of the revenue coming in. I mean.
We'd take 10, right?
Yeah, we would take 10.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll get some information back to Cindy and Holly, and they'll be available tomorrow.
That sounds great. Any further questions for Brian?
Brian, if you would, just like I said, put an in chart, put an out chart, what's a wash and what's your total amount? That's, now that you've talked about it all, that would be huge for us to have an understanding. Meaning, you know, you said you need 10 FTEs. This is what's going to counteract it. This is a wash. And the bottom line, this is what it's going to come to. Add your 2% to your budget this year. What does that do? And then next year, it'll be 6% on some of it. Well, you already did 2%, so you're 4% for next year. I mean, that's a lot to figure out.
So if you could just chart it. That's why I brought the A-team with me because they've all got it in their head already. We'll put it on paper, and we can discuss it.
Well, it's easier. Like I said, you have a chart that says you're in, you're out, you're washed. Where are you at and how much bottom line do you need from the county this year and next year in order to make these plans come to fruition?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We've come to the time where we are going to take a lunch break until 1 o'clock.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Motion was made and seconded by Rosknecht and Lassiter. Any further discussion? Here none. All favors the aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasurer's first up at 1 o'clock. We'll go back into session, and the first off our agenda at 1 o'clock is Annette Brandt with the Treasurer Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Annette Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer. I submitted the budget as requested from all of the departments with the 4% increase for current staff. And I have separated each of the line items where you see an increase or a decrease there for you to see why those changes are there.
I'm struggling to find him, Treasurer.
She's at the very end.
I see you thumbing through. That's okay.
You're there.
It's fairly short and sweet, and so if it would be okay, I'd like to indulge in a little bit of time just to, as being your newly appointed treasurer, just to tell you where we're at currently while you're looking at those numbers and to inform you of our immediate focus.
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Our main outlook will be for retention of our valuable employees. This in turn will help us to offer faster processing to the public. We're down four processors, and our priority, like all the departments and the businesses, is to get those positions filled. Being down in staff does not stop life happening with the few planned absences and mostly family illnesses in the lives of the existing employees. It puts a bottleneck to the workload as well as a burden of added stress to those that are working when, in addition, we're not fully staffed. We're looking for vibrant energy, or excuse me, vibrant energetic qualified applicants to work well and enhance the staff that we already currently are blessed with. The team has been great, and those with available time and in good health offer up to their, excuse me, offer up their time to fill in extra hours as they can, but four down is a lot of ground. a lot of ground to make up. Less applications and few qualified applicants continue to add to our struggle. We do, however, have two new employees starting with us in July as a result of our efforts. Fridays being focused specifically to mailed-in transactions with no interruptions has been a big game changer for those customers, as well as a morale boost for the staff, being able to totally focus on that workload for our customers. The seven AM opening time face-to-face with customers is also a bonus to us, as those that arrive early getting the added benefit that the system, we work on, is faster without all the other counties on it as well. We can definitely tell when all counties are on the system as the processing time gets significantly slower through the lunch hours, starting from, with central time, which is ten o'clock, which obviously we have no control over. We staff to our fullest availability, always with a particular attention to those hours because of it. Unfortunately for us, the system does completely go down from time to time. Again, nothing the county can do for this but wait. The legislators just approved for financing to the tune of twenty-five million dollars this year for the Department of Motor Vehicle to replace this system. So they are fully aware there's a huge need for an upgrade in speed and programming. But in the meantime, we work with what we have, we have pulled all incoming calls off the front line with our call center to focus on the front line. We have the kiosk that the state runs within our building, as well as three located throughout our community for the public to use for their renewals and driver's license needs. They can utilize the state mailing system. We have added to our website frequently ask questions on motor vehicle and real estate transactions for faster reference for the public. It tells them everything they need to know for their specific transaction. If we're missing something, we start getting a lot of calls with the same question, we'll be adding to that. We have an email contact there also if further information is needed. A live cam's been added also that the public can view for the current line in our office so that they can estimate their wait time before they even arrive to choose to come or not at that specific time. And we have separated the line so that the ownership changes requiring our tax and title specialists go directly to those trained staff, and the faster transactions utilizing our newer employees, license renewals and property taxes can be in and out in a faster manner. It is two different groups of trained staff being utilized in the most efficient manner. To the left are the ownership changes when you're viewing on the camera, and to the, excuse me, that's not right, to, to the right are the ownership changes when you're viewing on the camera, and to the left are the faster transactions, if anybody's viewing them and want to see it before they come down. Title ownership changes in South Dakota continue to require all original documents to be reviewed by the county team prior to being submitted to the state. So those are the lengthier transactions and the ones that have to be done in person or through the mail. All other transactions within our office can be done via our website payments for property taxes, tax payments through the mail, our seasonal drop box, or for motor vehicle payments online, either through the state, if they are a South Dakota driver's license holder, or through the mail with us. Delinquent taxes will still require a daily calculation of the interest due and do require certified funds up to the date that they pay. So once delinquent, those transactions do need to be in physical contact with the Treasurer's office for quoting payment postings. We're struggling to get qualified applicants and applicants that follow through on a commitment of an accepted job offer prior to their start date, just like most businesses in town, I have heard. We recently have had three that were actively looking elsewhere along with our openings and accepted our job offer, received a date, and then received a start date, and then called prior to that stating that they decided to go elsewhere. They've been in the middle of the same hiring process with other areas, Black Hills Corp., Rapid City, Monument, all other departments in the county. It's just, it's a different, it's a different type of hiring out there right now, it's tough. We see hundreds of community members on a daily basis, so recently I posted help wanted signs for awareness to the public in hopes that first, they realize we are down staff and want them to appreciate those that we do have, and second, if they do know of somebody that might be interested, they could pass that information on. Also, there's a lot of training that happens before an employee in our office is at the level to transfer documents, so how they are treated by the county and the public before they get to that level of being trained matters a lot. Our programs are specific to the need, so unless someone has come from another county in South Dakota and has trained on transferring titles in the state system, they're starting from scratch and can't just be thrown out to the front line right away. I want to stay committed to spending time on educating our community on the other avenues that they have available to them to conduct their business. The state-run kiosks have really kicked in use in Minnehaha County with Minnehaha County residents. It's made a difference in their offices workload. They have more available because their size had, they have more kiosks available because of their size, but they also have much more use than Pennington County's do, and until the use of hours increases, the state will not be adding to the three Pennington County has already. Mead County is our closest neighbor, and our length of line is usually the motor vehicle transactions are the culprit. Oftentimes, we're compared to their lines, their lack of lines versus Pennington County. Pennington County completed over a hundred and twelve thousand transactions through May of this year, and over twenty-nine thousand of those are the more detailed ownership changes versus seven thousand in Mead County. Custer County, same thing, we hear that a lot, we don't have to wait in line in Custer County. Again, we had twenty-nine thousand of those lengthy transactions, Custer County had twenty-five hundred, eight thousand in Lawrence County. Our demand for services is no fair comparison to the wait line in, I'm sorry, our demand for services is no fair comparison to the wait line in our office here in Pennington County. We'll continue to strive to do better and focus on making our customers comfortable for the wait in the new move to our concourse drive in 2024. I'm being conservative in this budget and trying to stick to the 2023 expenditures. I'm not asking for any new FTDs because we are having trouble filling the four that we still need to. The increase is largely in part to the new software that the county will be implementing at the request of our own IT department for county administration building, excuse me, business. For our office, that is vouchers and taxes, maintenance of which is anticipated just for the Treasurer's Office usage is approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars per year until we either add to that or eliminate some of the modules as we progress through the learning of the new program once it arrives. We won't know until that actually happens or what that's going to fluctuate to, but with that, I'll stand by for questioning.
Thanks, Annette, Mr. Drews.
So, Annette, are you, are you full with your phone bank with the rotation of people that you use on the phone bank or not?
No, we're one down in the phone bank. We're actually, we have three back there full-time, one is off on FMLA, so.
Okay, okay. So have you found, since you started the phone bank, have you found that that's, has it been efficient and effective for the office?
I believe yes, it has. It has cut down on the amount of people contacting our office with complaints that their own transaction face-to-face was interrupted three times because of phone calls coming through. That's helped tremendously. We separate that so that the staff members can focus directly on that individual. The phone lines have increased. It's definitely effective to have it separated like that. What we struggle with and what we're still playing with is you don't know what call that's going to come, that's going to come in. So we're able to separate our lines out front, so I'm looking at separating the phone calls, you know, the callers coming in so that the faster transactions can also go somewhere else, so that the program, or excuse me, the processors that, that can do all of the transactions can focus on the lengthier calls that are coming in too, so that we can get through those calls a little better. But right now, we have, we have to man them with our processors that know all of the area of the office, because you don't know if it's going to be a delinquent tax or if it's going to be regular tax or just ask how we're open, so.
So one follow-up question, and that, this has to do with, with the new registrations? So obviously, to me, it's much easier to come to the office to do a new registration if I've acquired a new vehicle. But can they do those by mail, and how does that process work for you if they can?
Yes, we, we do thousands by the mail as well, and that's what we focus on on Fridays. We try to do them throughout the week as well, but that's our main focus on Friday to the ones that have come in through the week to go ahead and get those processed. You have to do it with us face-to-face or through the mail, those are the only two options that you have, because we have to physically see those documents. It's not something that, it can just be sent into the state or done online, so.
So the time element difference of being able to do it face-to-face as compared to them doing by mail?
We charge a twenty-five dollar service fee to do it through the mail, and we go through all of the processing, or excuse me, all of the paperwork that's there, contact the person at the, wherever they tell us to contact them at, to let them know if they're missing something or if they need to make a payment. And then it's filed until that customer either comes in or it's completed, or we're typically touching that transaction probably about three to four times when it's mailed in, so it is a lengthier process. It's quicker when they come in because you're face-to-face and all those questions are answered right there and they've got their checkbook right with them. So, and we're handing out the, you know, handing out the plates for it. So it's definitely quicker from there based on face-to-face content, but the lines are there in order to do it as well. So those transactions usually take anywhere from, if it's, if it's done by a South Dakota dealer, it'll be a twenty-minute transaction, that's about average. If it's a private person or they're coming from out of state, it can be anywhere from a thirty-minute to a forty-five minute transaction. So if you figure that by each person that stands in line waiting, it is going to be a little bit longer wait, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinect.
I have a few questions. So the budget that you're proposing for 2024 that reflects twenty-six full-time employees and then one part-time?
Yes.
Okay. And the website, you mentioned website quite a bit, so in your opinion, what was, what's the one thing that we could do to enhance the website to make it more effective?
Communication to the public, I think, of just getting that out. We have the website on all of our business cards for people to click, click out to as commissioners if you get phone calls, if you could, you know, have them, have them go to the Department of the Treasurer on there. The frequently asked questions on there is very long because there's a lot of frequently asked questions, but then we also try to do, if you're, you know, if you're new to the state and have an out-of-state title, this is what you do, this is what you need. There's so many different ones that to put signs up in the hallway up front, which was suggested at one point, too, there's, there would be so many signs up there, and right now, they're really not being utilized, the signs that are up there, we're having to go out and move people in line, and it's just, we do it every day, they, you know, and when you buy a vehicle, it's probably once every five years, so we get it, we just need to educate the public more.
And you know, I like the camera that shows the length of the line and whatnot, but I just wondered how do we get that information out to the general public so that they utilize it more, so that they could, you know, that they could actually see what the line looks like, make a decision to come another day. And that could probably, I assume that's on the website?
The live cam?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's under the Treasurer's Department, though, if they're clicking on the Treasurer's Department, there's a live cam that, that shows it, so.
You know, I know you guys get really busy at certain times of the month and certain times of the day, and then you get lunch breaks. Is it possible that you could cross-train maybe somebody with the Auditor's Office? If you get real busy, somebody could come from the Auditor's Office to fill in during those peak periods, you know, cross-train? I'm just thinking out loud where we could actually maximize the, or...
It's, it's not totally out of the question, but we're all, you know, we've got memorandums of understanding with the state for privacy and, and the training that goes into it for them to, all of the departments are busy, so to pull through, and if we're going to stop and train somebody from another department that's only going to be there part-time, we'd much rather be training somebody that's going to be there full-time and keep enhancing on what they're doing, you know, it's not totally out of the question, though.
Thinking outside the box. My last question is, when we move with the kiosk that we have here, stay here, or will it leave?
My opinion to, to just answer it off the cuff would be for it to stay here to start with, because there's going to be many people that aren't going to know that we've moved. And I did check with the state to, to see what the possibility was to just get a new one, and that's where I came up with, in my information I just gave you, that they're, until we have a bigger following on those kiosks, that they, they probably wouldn't give us a new one, but I don't think it should be moved right away, I think it should be a while until the public knows that we're actually on the other side.
I just wondered, I think that's a good idea to keep it here for, at least for a while.
Yeah, I'd rather add to it and keep nudging the state for that, for Pennington County to purchase it, we could do that, they're quite expensive, however, I'd rather have the usage up where the state says we need it and give it to us, so.
Well, Annette, I think Treasurer's Office has always been doing pretty good, and your only increase by three point nine percent, but one of the things, I did look at your three-to-five-year plan, which I really like, the idea of, that you talked about increasing staff, add an additional full-time trainer to the mix, which, which I think, in, in your guys' case, is probably a priority, I mean, someone who's well-rounded and being able to train instead of pulling people, because I think you got so much that you got to train them on as far as, I mean, you got the technical part of it and plus the legal requirements, trainer's not a bad idea, you know, I, I've seen that, and I think that's really good, especially like you said, with your being down and, and then you get the training and people coming and going. I'm not saying you got high turnover, I'm just saying.
We do, we have, we, we do have a high, high turnover, and for the volume of work that goes through there, you know, honestly, that's why we lose some of the applicants that are out there filling out the applications, because we're like, does this like this all day long? Yes.
Even, you know, I mean, I could see your department also, what I call a floater, a person who, if you could ever get full staff, a floater that could give you breaks and does all that type of stuff, but.
We do have that, yeah, we do have that, the back, the back staff that are in our office right now do, do that, they are the ones that come and we leave them for breaks, and, and we could work through breaks, you know, but honestly, you, you need a break from that. It's one customer right after the other, and, and we do our best to get those fifteen-minute breaks in, in the morning and the afternoon, and a full lunch hour, unless somebody comes to either myself or Laura and says, you know, that they want to, they're willing to work an extra half hour, I would rather they, it be their opinion than it be a mandatory thing, because, especially with us being four down, I want them to stay healthy as well.
I, I have to admit, I went up there, was it last month to do mine, I picked mine up and stood in line and watched the operations, and I, I, you know, I seen your people taking their breaks that they needed and so forth, and so I think it's, some of the stuff is just, it's time-consuming, as you said, I mean, that's just all there is to it. The only other suggestion I have, and I've gotten on the website and gone through it, is sometimes I think people are getting to where QR codes are really, you know, you scan that code, it takes you straight to that line, or you scan that code, it takes you straight to that, that site instead of going to Pennington County, da-da-da, those, I think a lot of people are using those, it's a possibility. I don't know how simple they are to make or whatnot, I know some.
I'll ask Holly later, okay, yeah, that's a good point, though.
It is, I mean, if they're standing in line, they get a QR code that says for camera, they can scan that, or, well, they're already there, but I mean, for doing other stuff to the website or takes them directly to that site, so they don't have to try and search through.
Right, that's a great idea, we'll make a note of that, Laura's here with me, with her pad and papers.
But you guys, I think your, your crew does an awesome job, I mean, they work hard, there's no doubt about that.
They do, thank you for acknowledging that, and, and as far as the trainer position, you can imagine that that trainer position has to come up through the ranks, because they need to know everything that is... to come up through the ranks because they need to know everything that is, and right now, we have one trainer position, and then we have leads that are under her, so that the, and the leads help out with that as well, but I can foresee, especially with the new state system coming and our new county system coming, we're gonna, we're gonna need to adjust that a little bit. She's going to be pretty stretched thin, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good investment for you. Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chair, one more question.
Mr. Oskar.
Interest income in 2022 is 440, then last year 130, and now it's 205. I just, can you explain how that works?
Well, if I put what I hope to get in there and it doesn't come through, then I'll be in trouble, right? So, I am conservatively estimating that. 2023 is, we're up to, well, 20, 2022, our interest rates as we're doing our, when we were doing our budgets, were barely up to 2%. Now, as of this morning, it's 5.12%. So, who knows what it's going to be in another month to next, I'm trying to be conservative with that, so I will take.
So, it just reflects the fluctuation and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, which is huge with the amount of money that we have. We have a sweep account that that was in 2022, early 2022, when we were doing budget, was under 1%, and now that same sweep account is over 5, so.
Okay.
Big difference.
Thank you.
So, Nat, did you have anything else you'd like to share with the commission?
I don't think I did. I think I think those two pages were long enough. Steph was yawning.
Just before you end, could you, could you just elaborate a little bit on the interest income?
More so than that?
Just a little bit.
Okay, sure. Well.
Just to, you know, explain that how, I mean, your department also does.
Right, the investing with the county. Well, again, it's it's totally an estimate, as anybody's going to tell you that does any type of investing at all, but I can, I can tell you for the 2023 budget because of how we, we estimated 130,000, we're already at 692,000. So, that fluctuation is is huge. We're going to have a, you know, we're going to have more more revenue coming in than than anticipated, and I don't know, it's it's a guessing game because there's only certain things that we can invest in by state statute for county government, so we're limited limited to those, and I am watching them on a daily basis and moving money as quick as we can to try to capture the higher amounts for the less amount of time, and that's been very lucrative on that line item, and I'll continue to do that, but we have no control over what that percentage is going to be. Is that what you meant by elaborating on it, or?
That's exactly.
Your guess is as good as mine.
That's exactly what I wanted to know. I think for the public that that YouTube in probably don't know that you take that money and move it around to try to get the best interest for it, and it's paid off.
Right, we need to, as the Treasurer's Office needs to make the, make as much money liquid for the expenditures that the county has as we can while still being able to invest as, you know, at a shorter term so that, again, so that that money is available, but we're getting the highest rate, so.
Well, thank you, Nat. Any other questions from the commission? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Okay, we're trying to find the registry of deeds, at least I am. Audra, Audra, let's see where, everybody else probably found it already. Oh, you're right on top. Okay, has everybody found it? Think they have, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Audra Castile, registry of deeds for Pennington County. So, my salary revenue lines, I am a little higher in that. I had a staff member leave during budget last year, and I forgot to include their pay, so I re-included that, so I, that was kind of an error on my part, otherwise it wouldn't be as high as it is. It would have only been a 5% increase, otherwise 4% for what was supposed to be, and then a 1% to have promotions and whatnot. I have a couple of employees who are on my lower end of starting, and I'm hoping to maybe promote them within to a higher position if they do well. And I had one start about two months ago, and she's doing rather well, and I had another one start, I had three employees start on Monday. So, I'm fully fully staffed this year as of Monday, and I'm looking forward to having a full staff this year. So, and another thing is, is I can reset my budget revenues to Holly and Cindy to decrease my insurance, because a couple of them don't need as high of insurance that I had, so I can reduce my budget revenue or budget amount by 20,000 because they don't need the insurance that I thought they needed, so I can save us a little bit of money there. And then unfortunately, my revenues aren't as high this year as they have been in the past. I'm about 30, 30% behind, so that's why my revenues, I'm kind of estimating to be behind where I normally am. I'm kind of afraid with the economy, the way that it's going, that it's going to kind of continue this way into next year. So, I think just the way that things are going, the interest rates are higher, that we're just going to kind of continue through the next election cycle, and we're just not going to see, mortgage rates are are high and people aren't refinancing and doing what they've done in the past. So, I I kind of want to be conservative in my revenues for the next year. So, that's kind of what I've done. I don't think in the next three to five years that I'll need to add any staff. I want to stay where I'm at. I want to work with my staff and kind of get them trained on both sides of my office. I have, would like to see adding my documents online to be able to let the public access them online so that, like, appraisers or different mortgage lending institutions could have access to my records. Are you okay? But I think that'll help alleviate a little bit of 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 need for additional staff members as well, so.
How how would that work? Being able to look it up online, what's that going to entail to you? Is it all digitalized now, or is it?
It is digitalized, it is digitized now. They would kind of have like a membership or a username. They'd kind of have to pay like a membership fee, they'd have a username and whatever, they have to use their credit card and pay a service fee and pay for those copies. They'd pay that the dollar per page cost.
Okay, so that's something like, is it Mead County that?
Yeah, Mead County has that service right now. I still have to kind of do some curative work. There's a lot of old documents that have social security numbers on them that I have to redact in order for me to put my my services, my my documents online for the public to be able to view them.
So, that, what what your goal is, and endgame with that would be, it'd be more user-friendly, more quickly available to these firms, the title companies or whoever may need them?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And then they just print them off themselves and have the paperwork there?
Right, right.
Any transa, would they be able to do transactions that way, too?
I'm sorry?
Would they be able to do all the transactions or just just gather information?
They'd be able to gather the information, yeah.
Is there any questions from the commission?
This is a hard budget to figure out.
I don't think, is there anything else you'd like to share?
No.
But your fully staff now is just.
Fully staff, just need to get them trained.
Get them trained.
Yep. All right.
See no further questions?
All right.
We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Am I pronouncing your name right? Am I slaughtering that every time I say it? It's Audra? Audra. Sometimes I go back and forth, so. Mr. Cool, Buildings and Grounds, let us find.
Good afternoon, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. I have brought Dave Eccleston, my Assistant Director, with me, as well as Rita Bender, our Office Manager. If if there's some information that I'm trying to seek from my head, I'm hoping that I can turn around and they might be able to give me the right answer. Since the last budget cycle, Buildings and Grounds has added a couple of buildings to our responsibilities, the 900 Concourse Building, which was a acquisition late last year, which will become our administration building, and Pivot Point, which came online early this year. Those buildings do add some costs to us. Pivot Point is is basically just some county's contributions relative to the operations of that that have been laid out through some agreements. Pivot Point, of course, will be, right now, that's mostly utilities, but as I know that that will become our administration building in the future. Overall, we're seeking in the, increase our budget by 487,283 dollars, or 8.68% for 2024. That is related primarily to utilities and increases and to some additional equipment we're requesting relative to the 900 Concourse Building when that building comes online, so expecting that we'd need to acquire that towards the end of next year. Or as long, as challenging as sometimes being able to buy things still are, the ability to try and acquire that early is important, that that we're get going on it sooner, probably. Personnel, we are not requesting additional staff in 2024. The reason being, 900 Concourse will require additional BMGs, B&amp;G staffing. We're expecting that we need to add three custodians to maintain that building when we do that, but as part of the, our transitioning, we don't feel that we probably need to, we'll relocate people as we, as that building comes online, one of our other facilities won't have the demand that currently currently has here, so we'll just be relocating custodians for a timeframe. Technicians and specialists, I'm not seeking any additional there. I would just like to fill the, fill the FTEs that we have, which has been a challenge. We're currently down seven overall for for our department. We're doing a little bit better in being able to hire some custodians. We don't see, there's no change relative to being able to hire technicians or specialists. We did hire a construction specialist, Doug Besmer. That was a, just a lucky fluke of, he was seeking a life change and became, and it came to us, and we were able to hire him. Very fortunate for us. Overall, our department, you know, we're made up of, our custodial services is 15 people right now, and our techs and specialists, we have FTEs, they're 20 there, and we have six administrative people.
Mike, what, you said you were down eight?
At that point in time when we we did it, we we just started a new custodian on Monday.
So, you're down seven total in the department? I mean, for for what, building techs?
We're, right now, is it two custodians? Two custodians, and the rest would be techs or specialists.
So, two custodians and?
And.
Building techs?
And five.
Five building techs, and that's in a wide variety, probably plumbers, electric, electrical.
And we're down.
And just general construction also.
Yes. We, the, we're down, we lost an electrician. We have, right now, we currently have a, one of our HVAC specialists has come back to work for us part-time. That's how we're making, kind of making that work, three days a week. But we've lost construction specialists, and and the rest would be building techs.
Well, I I like how creative you guys got with the three-day-a-week H-rack, because some, you know, some people, that works for them, and trying to get an H-rack out there nowadays is really tough, so that that's offering them three days is good, I think.
What's the difference between a construction specialist and a project manager?
A construction specialist? What we call our construction specialists, and we're probably looking at trying to change the names because it makes, seems to make a difference relative to hiring or being able to to talk about a salary amount. But generally, I would view them there as carpenters, experienced carpenters, or metalworkers, or.
Specializing in their.
They're, specializing in the trade is the best way to describe them. Plumbers, electricians, HVAC techs, a carpenter, so somebody who's got some experience of a building tech, and we have some good building techs, but generally, the way I kind of talk about them as in terms of a handyman, they do a variety of things, very capable in a lot of ways, they generally don't have either the license or experience in a trade like like, like a specialist would.
Thank you.
As I noted at the beginning, our our cost increase is, are generally related to some changes in in our, related to the new facilities, but an example of a difference relative to service and fees, we are seeing an increase where we have to now, dispatch 911 is no longer going to monitor after this, at the end of this year, will no longer be monitoring our facilities for fire alarms or any kind of type of panic alarms, anything like that. Sheriff's Office is take care, takes care of the panic alarms. We take care of most of the other dialer type of functions or elevators. Those now will have to go to a call center, and I'm expecting an increase of approximately 21,000, just about $22,000 relative to picking up those monitoring expenses. I haven't requested anything additional in relative to repair and maintenance costs, the the costs that we use to pay contractors. The, the costs that we use to pay contractors coming in, that, that might seem a little counterintuitive, but it's, it's in regard to, I, at the last budget cycle, I asked for a pretty big bump in that because of concerns of staffing shortages. And so far, indications are, it seems like we're okay. So I'm not asking for anything additional there. Utility services is a, sorry, let me go back to supplies and materials. I am seeking an increase there. When we, last year, we transferred some of our budget to the sheriff's office relative to jail supplies. So that they, you know, they were purchasing some of those materials and had a place to store them within, within, in the old kitchen laundry area in the building. That made us, we actually increased our supply of materials budget last year as well. Overall, though, the impact was, we didn't ask, our increase overall last year was pretty small because of that, but because of that transfer. This year, I have bumped up that number a little bit, $23,000, just over 3.75%, it turns out, or equates to, for those materials. That's mainly because of rising costs is continuing to seem, seem to be an issue.
Well, Mike, does, on utility services, do all departments have, pay for utilities or something? Why does all the departments almost look like have utility services on there? Yours is to pay utilities, right?
Yep. We pay gas and electrical. A quarter, over a quarter of our budget goes just to pay utilities for operating the facilities.
Even like 911 or 911?
Registered date is 2450, so...
Yeah, 87.
How, how do they arrive at the 20? That, that, I would assume that is related to phone services and, Mike, the way that that gets split up is, IT gets that, gets that one bill and that gets split up across all of them depending on your usage.
Basically phones?
We, we carry...
Like long distance, long distance charges, phone connections, cell phones? That's where that comes out of?
We do carry some, we carry the, those, have continued to carry like the phone lines that are used for dialers for alarm systems and stuff like that. So that, our, the theory had been is that those aren't accidentally terminated or something. We continue to have those in our budget to maintain those alarm systems for the buildings.
Since we're on utilities, you said there was a significant increase in water?
Water, I hadn't accounted for how much water was going to go for in last year's budget. That shows up in this year's budget, you know, because there has been a big leap in what we're paying there. We made, we did all right because we could cover it with, because we were short staffed, so we could cover those expenses.
I was just curious, you know, when someone sees an increase in water, that's usually, there's a leak somewheres. That's why I asked, I didn't know if you had...
I think there was generally increases across the board relative to services from Rapid City, so...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ross.
So, Mike, on a 900 Concourse, I know the building's empty, but what are we seeing for, on a monthly utility expense, including gas, water, sewer, electric? Just ballpark?
Are, are you able to tell me, say that? I don't think I can answer that without looking at it closer.
Curious what that's going to run, go in?
We, we stuck that number in there. I, I stuck a number in there for, for budget. I'm, I don't think I have that broken out.
Because you only have $1,011,000. When you first started in '21, you're up to $1,606,000. And you're going to have a whole another building this big, or bigger? So, seems like, did you budget enough in there?
Next year, it'll be under construction.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're running, you know, we've got, you know, generally, we're not cooling the building unless, you know, we'll keep it from getting probably over 80 degrees in there. But we're not cooling it and we didn't, we don't use gas. We'll try and keep the temperature at 50 during cold weather. So, I think, I, I think for some reason, I plugged in around $100,000 for utilities for that.
What's this building's utilities?
I, I don't think I can tell you.
I can get it, but I don't know enough.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know, because like I said, the increase of staff, the increase...
It is, it is significant, but I, our expectation is that we aren't going to be running, because the, the building will not, for the most of '24, will not be operating. Literally, the systems will get probably shut down for, once construction starts.
And we're estimating '25 is when the building will be ready? Or when were you thinking the building's going to be ready?
Well, there's, there's potential that it could be ready near the end of '24, and that's the way we kind of looked at it. You know, how this, the planning develops, it kind of dictates how that goes. We're trying to utilize the building as it is to the greatest degree we can, but we're, there's a challenge to that. And that, as we've gone through the first cycle of, through a couple of cycles of meetings with departments and stuff, now we're trying to, to massage that a little bit and try to make, make better use of the, what we have rather than building more enclosed spaces, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Kind of threw you off track.
I guess in, in the end, the other big element, you know, as I said at the beginning, my, our costs were associated mostly with utilities and, and equipment. I've got a big, pretty good number in there for vehicles and equipment. Most of that's related to 900 Concourse. You know, we're looking at mower, a utility tractor, skid steer. Some of this may change as we think through how we want to try and do that. These numbers are in here based on the discussions we've had thus far. And a forklift out there. That's, but overall, I'm seeking $260,900 for equipment. That's replacing two service vehicles. We're going to, we're going to have people moving around more. And replacing another plow truck. We've, traditionally, we have, the way Buildings and Grounds has done things is, we only buy used pickups and vans and stuff for our service work. It, it suits us relative to, we only, generally, we, that we don't do a lot of traveling outside of the city area, and that work has worked well. And we only replace them when they break down. Now, through last year's budget and asked, there was, the board asked questions about how we might look at how we would upgrade our fleet over time. We've looked at that, trying to replace four or five vehicles every, over the next, per year for the next four to five years. And this, it's taking that first step. You know, in general, that's, this, this year, if, if we're not able to fill slots for, for staff, I'll be trying to replace vehicles with funding left over from, at the end of this year, to aid that. But I do expect that, you know, I'm going to have expenses in this $200,000-plus range for the next three to four years, at least.
I'll just say, Mike, that's, thanks for sharing that reasoning behind buying used vehicles. You know, I'm not so sure about used lawnmowers and, but even, used forklifts, as much as they get used, that's a good purchase, buying used. But the vehicles that you guys use for snow removal and that stuff really get hit pretty hard. So, you know, investing $60,000, $75,000 for a vehicle that you...
It's, yeah, my, my comment would be that when it comes to, we buy new equipment. When it comes to skid steer loaders or something, we buy new equipment. We don't buy the pickups and vans that we use for take to...
Because you guys got, you guys spray the chemicals on the back of those trucks too, so you got all that that comes with it.
I, I do have, if the board is interested, you know, how we kind of, we're thinking, how we came to the conclusions of trying to buy, you know, that number of, you know, four to five vehicles per year, you know, we do have that. I have that broken down in their spreadsheet and I can put it up on the, on the screen if you guys would like to see that.
I, I don't know, we need, how many do you have on your fleet?
I can't, I, I've got everything listed here that, you know, from skid steers to mowers to, so in, in the range of vans and trucks, we're in the...
But you put the total amount of what you're needing for the new facility, that's, that's the bottom line?
Yeah.
I mean, the majority, half the cost of the requested amount is relative to equipment for the new facility.
That makes sense.
And you got a replacement plan for your fleet?
Yes.
That makes sense.
I think I'm good with that.
I, with that, I guess I would stand for questions.
Mr. Do you have any questions, Mike?
Mr. Chair, just one question, Mike. The only revenue your department has is the reimbursement for the public safety building?
Yes. If I'm missing anything else, that, that, that's just from the, the city.
The city, any part of the building is not just the public safety building?
So is that like for maintenance or?
Basically, their share of, their, for their percentage of ownership in the public safety building.
Okay. And then, does that go on our general fund then, that?
When, when the money comes back, it goes into the general fund.
Okay.
That's my question.
So we take care of, you take care of in your department, court, the courthouse, safety building? And we get reimbursed for some of that, you said? Because some, not the courthouse, no.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We are required to provide the services relative to that.
And then you have this building. Then you maintain the jails, or does the sheriff's office, they clean it and do their own?
The sheriff's office, anything behind the detention line, the security line in the, in the jail, they take care of the, basically, the, the painting and cleaning on that, that side. We do everything on the outside of any of those detention facilities.
Basically, we do the, we do all the maintenance and everything, care campus, all those buildings. We don't have any others in that. Do we, we have care, we have the ones across the street?
We get, we, we invoice for the east side of the care campus in terms of those costs, because that's split between multiple agencies.
Detox reimburses BMG for a portion of the utilities and then janitorial supplies.
But do you clean it?
No, no, not, 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 because that would be considered on, on the detention side of things more.
Okay, so basically, if things built, anything to do with those buildings, oh, you have to replace, you have to maintain, make sure they're in good running condition, then nobody else takes care of any of that?
No. Pivot Point is a little different kind of a situation. The way that agreement is written, you know, that'll have to evolve too. But we take care of the outside of the building, grounds, snow removal, exterior of the building, and the general care of the, 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 the equipment for the building. Anything on the inside, those are their expenses.
Just for the buildings that we have right now, how many FTEs do you have?
Well, we're authorized to have 41.
Okay. And you're adding, how much square feet and how many more are you, people are you asking for in, you're not this year?
We've had, with the 900 Concourse, we've added 76,000 more square feet. Here, my, my thinking is, you know, that, you know, what the commission has asked for is, is to, how can we be, be more effective, efficient as well? We don't need those, we don't need to add anything relative to that building certainly for 2024.
Right.
You know, my desire would be to see how, how we can do going forward. If we can just fill our position, our FTEs, you know, that would be thrilling to, to fill our FTE slots.
Why, that's good, not just...
And there will be some evolution in terms of what job descriptions we have. That building has 45 rooftop units on it. That has an impact on our, on our HVAC people.
My issue is, and that's what I'm saying, is, okay, so when we transition in '24, we're going to just say, in '25's budget, we're going to add all these FTEs at once? Because by '23, we need 100 to 150. So when are we going to start transitioning and adding these to our budget so we don't get stuck? If we're behind, because remember, you're going to have another building? Are we just going to start with the employees we have and then add it on later? You see what I'm saying? When you're transitioning into something, you got to think of that budget's got to transition with it. It can't just be like boom, '25, '24 to '25. Now, everything's going to increase because now we have a whole new building and we have more facilities. We're going to have to start filling those with the services because we're going to have more services. I mean, everybody keeps talking about, that's why, I'm not getting it all. 100 and 150 employees we're going to need added by the, by '23.
'24.
Said 10 years, that 2030 on the one, but, so when do you start adding all those people? When do we start transitioning? When does Mike decide in '24 that he, he might need six new or 10 new FTEs if he fills the others? How's that all going to happen with our budget? I mean, just food for thought, because it's a new building. And if we get more buildings, you need more maintenance, you need more money for utilities, you need, I mean, you need, you need, you need. So we're going to come into the next '24 budget and go, okay, building's going to be done at the end of the year. We're doing the budget for '24, am I correct? How are you going to transition from '24 to '25 budget that you're using for '24? And you still, you're adding 76,000 square feet? I mean, that's why I'm saying, how, how are we doing this? Am I, I being crazy about this, but I'm just thinking in my mind, this is what I do. If I'm transitioning to another building, this building's going to have FTEs, this building's going to have maintenance, this building's going to have utilities. Then we're going to do another building, and then we're going to stay in '24, that we might be finished in '24, but our budget's not going to reflect until '25. But we didn't put it in, you see, we're going to be a year behind. Or we're going to stack the next year, and how are you going to do that if the growth and everything else does not reflect that? So I'm just asking, how are we preparing for the future of what we've added right now?
Dave, you can come up here, maybe you have some answers.
We've talked about this a little bit ourselves, once, once we move out to concourse, this building will be primarily empty. So the, the staff that's here will probably move out there, and so we, it, it, this, this building won't be utilized as much. So we won't need the staff that we have for here until this building's ready, so this building might not be ready until twenty six. So we're, we're planning on staging those people, but a- as the buildings come into full use more.
So you have time, thank you.
Yes.
So you have time in between, because when you transfer a lot of the people out of here, you're not gonna have all those people, meaning two buildings, you're not gonna have all the utilities much, all the, all of everything, it's gonna come back until twenty six. Because once both and everything's fully functioning, that's when you have to prepare. So you're thinking it'd be better, twenty four is not so bad, but that twenty five is when you're gonna start doing more, twenty four to twenty five is gonna be a major.
Twenty five, we certainly need to have three more conservative positions in twenty five.
We're go, we're okay transitioning right now, you think, Dave?
The way that we're thinking so.
The way that we're talking about this is that we're gonna have to, if, if a building, we take a building down for remodel or something, we got, we don't, we're not gonna be cleaning it anymore, so we're gonna relocate those people to the new facility as we bring it up, when we'll bring it online.
This is gonna be like a two to three year plan, because as they remodel that, they're still working here when people transfer there, then these workers will transfer over to there, because this will be under construction, so that, that's gonna give you another year, or however long it takes to get this done. As this gets closer, then you're gonna know what the needs are, which, you know, this one will be public safety, they.
We're, I'm trying not to ask for positions that I don't know if I can keep them busy until we get that building up.
That, that covers yours, but, so, if we're talking about other people's, are we transitioning the same way when we move over to the other building, we're just gonna slowly do it because we really don't need them right away, we're just gonna do it as, as they come along, kinda like we're doing now, even if we have more facilities, we're just gonna do it as they come along, meaning as the need?
Yeah, we'll have, what we'll have is, as the needs, every year's gonna be no different than the other, we'll have the same employees over there, the same ones here, every year, we're gonna look at our needs, if we need to hire more employees, these departments will come to us and tell us, they're not gonna ask for more additional employees just because we got more space.
Okay, Holly, make.
Well, and I guess I just, and I don't, Annette, don't, speak up if I'm speaking out of turn, but like, she doesn't have the physical space here to meet the demand and the need that she has now, but when we transition into the new building, I would imagine, haven't talked to Annette about it, but at some point, she's going to have to request additional FTEs as that continued growth and that continued demand increases year over year over year.
And some people, isn't it true, Holly, that some people right now could, they don't have the room, kinda like Annette, they don't have the room, but they could, if they had the room, they probably have.
They probably would have asked you for FTEs already.
That's what I'm saying too, is, is, so when you move over there, are we preparing for that?
Yes, but I don't, I think the department heads are trying to be responsible and conservative and not coming and hitting you guys all at once and saying, we need these thirty employees, they're trying to figure out how to stagger it and still meet the services now as we're working up to it, you know, whether that twenty forty number and a hundred and a hundred and fifty employees really holds true, nobody knows.
We, I mean, for, for relative nine hundred concourse, the way that we've planned, tried to plan, or planning that building is that there's, we, we're hoping that we have twenty years of growth in that building once we move out there for those departments, so, but they won't need all the staff for that. They're, they're, they're making predictions on what they think they'll need relative to the growth that the, the county is seeing, that won't, but that won't happen immediately in terms of.
But I think one thing you guys are seeing this year and kind of the trend is they're presenting their statistics to you, they're presenting your numbers, and, you know, maybe even for Cindy in twenty twenty six, the next election, when we have however many more citizens that she has to vote, that's when the need would come for her for more FTEs. It, it's just kinda cyclical and we'll see how it actually plays out.
I just, I just, the main thing is to be prepared, I'm always what if, it's better to be prepared than get stuck later, or in a, in a way that, you know, we're going, what do we do? You know, we're behind FTEs, we're, you know, trying to pay people, but we also are trying to make sure we have the services we need, I mean, I'll just keep saying, we've added a lot of space for the future, it's not like you have to go and fill it all up right away, but there's a lot of stuff that comes with that, that I think sometimes we forget about.
You're absolutely right relative that there are more utility costs, those are, and our, our budget doesn't reflect that yet because I don't expect to have that building up and running until the end of the year, at best. I, I do have money in there for increased utility costs, I don't have probably enough to cover that building when it's occupied, and, you know, I'm hoping we'll get a little better feel for how.
That might switch over too, because if this building's not as full, those utility must.
There will be, there will be some, some of that, but, you know, that, that's a little harder to predict because I, no matter what, we expect that we're gonna have some people in this building, no matter what, I mean, dispatch nine one one, we're not gonna relocate.
Yeah, and you can't just shut the rest of the lights off because of the water.
And let me, W, you're absolutely right, but every year, when you talk about buildings and, and people and what those projections are, and I, I get your concern, but really, every year, our, our department heads, I think, are very well at working with what they have, what they need, and FTEs still come to us every year, so it's not like, you know.
I just don't want it to happen in boom, twenty five to twenty six or something where.
No, I, I don't think.
I like transition, and then if we work up to where we need to go and not figure out that we're behind the scale too far, we're, we're just like, holy crap, what are we gonna do?
But at least we'll have the space to build, to do.
I, I, I don't wanna, you know, I, I fear a little bit that the perception is, is that I'm not accounting for the new building that we have, it's just that we're not gonna have it operating, you know, for that year yet.
You and Dave both explained it good, I just was forgetting that we're emptying one, and we still have some people, but that would save, give us some cost savings, I know that from one of my other buildings, until you get it fully operating again, so that didn't come to my mind, so I appreciate that, you and Dave refreshed my brain.
Do you have anything else, Mike?
I, if that's all you have for questions.
Any other commissioners have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys, for.
We will get you some more information regardless.
Okay.
If you would, thank you. First highway.
I seen Joe, is he hiding out in the conference room?
I say we skip him and move to the next person, I heard he's coming, I think how fast he started walking, that's.
Well, I think that's quick.
We're trying to get in and out, Joe?
So next, next on our agenda is highway, and it's Joe.
I'm blanking Shannon, he got me talking about hunting back there, so. All right, good, yeah, it is afternoon, usually it's morning, so, throwing me for a loop here, Joe Miller, Panct County Highway Department, don't have a whole lot for you, different than the last several years, one big change is we are finally underway for the South Rochford Road reconstruction, they will start putting the shovel in the ground on that project next Wednesday, road closure goes into effect, so, we're planning on doing a tour of the hills, the road will be closed to through traffic, and it'll be under construction next Wednesday, yeah, next Wednesday, so, that won't hit the highway department's budget as we're using the SIB loan and what we have at, banked up in our STPBG account, they keep changing acronyms and I can't keep them straight, so, shouldn't see any hit to our local budget for, for, for that project. The other large project that we have is Deadwood Avenue, currently still in negotiations with landowners, or with a landowner, think we're getting somewhere, so that project is currently slated for a twenty twenty four letting with a twenty twenty five construction, so we won't see anything in our twenty twenty four budget for that, but I figured I'd touch on that.
So how long was that, that one been worked on, it seems like four years?
Since I've been here, since, before I've been here, the city completed theirs, their portion, I think, this year or last year. So, that would be, those are the, the two major projects that we'll have for next year, transportation plan and corridor studies, those are currently going on this year, they'll spill into next year, there's some money in the budget for both of those. With that, are there any questions on our large projects?
Mr. Drews.
So, Joe, on the Deadwood Avenue, remind me, is the Mead County portion of it all okay?
Yes, Mead County redid their, what we would call Dead Man's Curve south of the county line several years ago, now the city's done their, their first portion, now it's the city and the county have to do the middle portion and then it'll all be reconstructed.
And, and the city's ready to move forward with that as soon as we're able to?
Well, the city needs, the, the city needs right away from the same landowner.
Oh, okay.
So, we're, we're working together, I'm working on obtaining the, the right away for the city as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
With the same landowner. Anything, any other questions?
Joe, how about the, for some reason I saw the wheel tax and then it was down?
Uh, no, actually, I just.
For the year, I mean, it was up last time I looked at it when we're, Holly gave us the paper, but then I saw the overall for next year or something was like a million more or something, and I was looking and I was like, not, I can't find the paper, you know, or the.
Um, so the wheel tax this year, currently we've collected, and let's see if I can read.
It was in our paper, anyone gave, remember where it was, I looked at it and here.
Currently, we've collected one point six million dollars in the first five months of the year, whereas last year we collected one point four, or one point five for the entire year, so, we're on track to reach that three point six that we projected, and I believe we left that same projection in our twenty twenty four budget, we didn't increase that at all.
I thought you changed it, that's why I said, and I can't find it now, it says five, I thought you projected five point something, but.
Right, so the original twenty twenty three was one point five, so, and then we changed the wheel tax in, I believe we changed it October?
Well, it started in effect in November, I think.
Started to affect in November, because that was changed at the end of the, it was before September, wasn't it, last year? And that, so that, we didn't get a chance to put it in our budget for twenty twenty three, and then we changed it to the five dollars an hour, or five dollars a wheel from the two dollars a wheel, so we're over collecting on the one point five that was currently.
So Cindy, do, do you remember in the budget area, or Holly, where you put the wheel tax in here? Number, that's, that's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to find it, but I can't find it, I found it at one time and now I cannot, sorry, Miss Cindy.
It should be on this, it's almost like second to last page, well, third to last page.
Your book or? That's why I said it.
That was, that's what we projected when we increased from two, two dollars an hour, two, I want to say hour, two dollars per wheel to five dollars a wheel was that three point five million dollars, so, we didn't change that projection from what, when we changed it in twenty twenty two for the twenty twenty three budget, we kept that number the same for twenty twenty four.
So you believe you're gonna double this year?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll actually be about two and a half times, is kind of what we figured.
That's where I saw it, because I was.
The original budget number, I think, was one, one point five, and I think we're projected to collect like one, or three point six.
Three five.
Yeah.
So you've almost got a two million dollar increase.
Correct.
Okay.
But only for roads and bridges?
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
That's good though, you done, you done, W?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Okay, Mr. Oskar.
So Joe, on capital outlays, there's six hundred thousand for the starting process of replacement Hill City shop, are we currently in negotiations in with the Forest Service?
I actually just fired Jim an email, I, I spoke with Jim verbally and we had, after a meeting that we had on a different matter, our Hill City shop foreman Dustin Lindstrom picked out a different site up Deerfield Road, and Jim thought that would be a better site than the one right there by Prairie Berry, and right by Niven there, talked to Brittany a little bit about it, sounded like there shouldn't be any issues with planning and zoning, so, I asked to set up a meeting with Jim and, and yourself to figure out what the process is next to start down the process of what Sher, excuse me, Silver City did for their fire hall, so, we've, that's kind of, that six hundred thousand is to get the design process started, and hopefully we can finish that in, in twenty twenty four for a construction of a new shop in twenty twenty five.
So, yeah, just give me a heads up, you set up a meeting with Jim so I could.
Yeah, I copied you on the email, so.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Are we done with big projects, road projects? I'll move on to, to bridge funding, so, Dan brought up wheel tax, so, since the, the passage of the wheel tax, the, the county has received nine bridge improvement grants, totaling about three million dollars, so it's allowed us to do a, a ton of work, that doesn't include the federal grants that we've been able to apply for. Just to recap, twenty twenty, we had three federal bridge grants, one on Paul, two on Paulson Road, one on Heather Road, twenty twenty one, we were awarded, that was our first year for the big grants, we were awarded Thunderhead Falls, four hundred and seventy million, or four hundred and seventy thousand, excuse me, then twenty twenty one, they also did federal grants again, and then we were awarded one on Thunderhead Falls and one on Hammer Quest, the twenty twenty two big grant replacement awards, we were awarded Sherman Street and Thunderhead Falls, and then the preservations, we were awarded Spring Creek, two on one hundred and sixty first avenue in New Underwood, and then one on Neck Yoke Road, which those are actually about wrapped up, I think that the only one they have left is the Spring Creek Road, Neck Yoke was closed for a week here, this week, they should be finishing that up this week, then twenty twenty three, we applied for, I believe it was six, we were awarded two of the six, one on Reservoir Road, one on Thunderhead Falls Road, Reservoir Road was two hundred and thirty three thousand, Thunderhead Falls was three hundred and five thousand, so, total to date for the grant funding was two point nine million dollars, total federal grants were two point five, so the total grant funding was five point five million dollars that we've received so far, twenty twenty four budgeted bridge work is about one point three million dollars, six hundred thousand of that is in grants, we elected to do one bridge on Norris Peak Road that our engineers felt that it was critical that it gets done sooner than later, we're going to do that with local, local funding, at the cost of about four hundred and forty thousand dollars is what it's, what it's estimated at. Capital, going into capital outlays, I guess, are there any questions on the bridge stuff? I kinda talk fast.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. Joe, on your twenty twenty four proposed versus twenty twenty three adopted, with the wheel tax stuff, we had three point five as projected for twenty twenty four as far as revenue in, but what's the big funds, how come you only have projected five hundred ninety eight thousand when we had one point seven for twenty twenty three?
Because we're constructing all of the, so we've got, oh, let me see here, we have the four bridges on, that we are currently construction, constructing, or the preservation, so two on one sixty one, and then one on Neck Yoke, one on Lower Spring Creek, then we have two on Thunderhead Falls and one on Sherman Street, so that one point seven, we only get that once we get the project constructed, so, since we're constructing those in twenty twenty three, we'll be reimbursed that big grant funding in twenty twenty three, we're only planning to do the two big grants, the two big funded projects in twenty twenty four, so that's why it's only five ninety eight.
Gotcha, okay.
For the two we were, were awarded this year, so from the first years, you know, we were pretty hopeful that we were going to be able to, to get the grant and get it let. So from the first years, you know, we were pretty hopeful that we were going to be able to to get the grant and get it let and get it constructed that year if we had a shovel ready project. And we're figuring out that that's not the case, just with the time that it takes the state to get them through the Transportation Commission, get them awarded, it's usually late March, early April. And most of the contractors are pretty much full at that point for that construction season. So we've taken, now we're we're applying for the big grants in January, they're getting awarded in March, April. And then we're letting them in the summertime, late, late spring, early summer for construction the next year. And we're hopeful that by doing that, we're getting a better bid price because we're early on the contractor's list. So before they get full, they're able to bid our projects.
Okay, thanks.
All right, capital outlays, as Ron said, we are planning to do our Hill City shop. That current property is about 1.6 acres and it is not going to fit our needs once South Rochford Road is constructed and we're going to need to add another truck in the the Hill City area, just because we're going to add another 10, 22 miles of asphalt. That'll be plowed at a higher level of service than the gravel it is currently. So we're not able to, currently, we're not even able to get all of our vehicles in the the shop that we have to keep them out of the weather. They're they're out in the cold storage. The motor grinders don't even fit in the cold storage. So we're looking at, it's about, I believe it's a nine or a 10 acre parcel up Deerfield Road at the Forest Service. Preliminary, preliminary discussions, they they think is a good piece of property to do a lease on and get a building constructed up there in the the Hill City area. Going down the line here, our equipment purchase plan that was approved by the board in 2022. You guys approved a motor grader and a truck last year, last meeting. Those will be here, the motor grader will be here in January, February, truck will be probably next June, July timeframe. The motor grader, for instance, last year we paid 365,000. This year's price was 425,000. We were actually able to save some money on the trucks as we piggybacked off the bid from last year that we did. So we got the same price last year for the truck as we did this year, so 153,000 essentially. That is all for capital outlay that I have unless there are any other questions.
No questions.
No questions, okay. Road and bridge maintenance items, we're going to continue to crack seal, chip seal about 30 miles each year in the pavement marking programs. The pavement marking program might get changed up from the state a little bit. There's, we've been ongoing with the the state on figuring out how to to best do that for the counties. We're actually going to add more overlays into our budget for 2024. It's, we didn't do any in 2023. The, we did the PCI study this last year and they gave us a budget model. You guys remember the presentation they came and gave, I believe in December. Our PCI is actually very good, so we're gonna jump in and start following their plan and hopefully we can keep our PCI to the the level that it is currently. Just in closing, summary of our current bridge statuses. 2022 inspections, so poor ratings, there were 19. So they used to give a numerical sufficiency rating and they went away from those, I think, 2020. So now they do a poor, good, and fair, or poor, fair, and good condition rating. So currently we have 19 bridges that are in poor condition. Of those, we currently have seven, seven of those this year that will be rehabilitated and and put up to a good standing because we're rehabilitating those. We're also reconstructing three of those, so and then next year we have another six that will be off of that. So after 2024, we should take that 19 down to seven unless others come on, right? That's always the game we play, so. Posting required, we have 23 bridges that have a posting that's required. And then both poor and posted, we only have 12. We have 45, excuse me, we have 21 of our bridges that are between 45 and 50 years old. And then 80, or excuse me, 69 of them are 50 years old or older. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
So with your, with that being said, thanks for, I mean, thanks for that upgrade. I mean, that was the whole purpose of the wheel tax. And I, it's apparently we're moving forward with getting our poor ones fixed. And you making a good stride on that. And one of the things that we discussed was, you know, all the bridges that we have that are 50 year, 50 plus years old. And so as you just said, as we get these ones fixed, the other ones maybe are gonna start falling in. But at least we're getting our worst ones fixed now and we'll be able to stay on track. Hopefully unless they all go bad one time.
Unless we have another 1972, which hopefully we don't.
Yeah. Miss Hackett.
So how long you been with us, Joe?
I don't even know.
Four years.
Five years?
Yeah. So just a compliment to Joe, number one, younger generation, when he's coming in, when we did the interviews, there was a guy that had more experience in one sense than Joe. Just to be up straight. And then a lot of us, not just some of the commissioners, were thinking, well, he's kind of young and he's, you know. The main thing, I think we figured is that you're very efficient and effective, just the way you talk to her, so organized. At least that's my opinion back then. But in the long run, you've been very innovative. You've helped many departments look at change because it's very hard. So when the younger generation comes in, it's very positive for us. Because number one, they're always looking at us like, these guys are never gonna change and trying to make us change is very hard, right, Joe? So, but it's just, you've done wonderful. You've done wonderful with your staff. You've done some changes that you had to have done in order to make your department efficient and effective as well, whether the employees or just how you do business in general. Joe, just a lot of compliment to you. In five years, look how far you've came. Government's not an easy year, you know that to work with. When you first get in there, you're like, geez, do I really suck? Because people complain a lot and you're not used to that in other jobs. I mean, you do to a certain extent, but not to the full extent of how government works. Bottom line is, I'm very proud of you and what you've done for Pennington County in five years. I mean, all of our departments are amazing, but you're one of the younger ones that came in and said, I'm gonna change this. And you stuck with us through the good and the bad, trying to change us. And it's been very efficient and effective for all of us, not just yourself. So just compliments to you. You can tell your staff as well, they're very happy. You're a good leader. How about that, Joe? So thank you for all you've done for us and you're frugal. And then you look at everything because, you know, I pick you apart a little bit sometimes. You always have an explanation. Here's my bottom line with picking on people or picking people apart. If you have an explanation and you can have a discussion about it, it isn't a big deal. It's when you don't and you can't, you can't explain why. It's very hard for us as commissioners to be behind you and say, you're doing a great job if we don't even understand what you're doing, if you're, if you're not doing your budgets or explaining your thing so it's efficient and effective for us, let alone your constituents. So that's what we bottom line have to deal with. So thank you for everything you've done. For me, moved a lot of what I was thinking ahead a lot of times because I'll argue with you about something, but you always have a good explanation. I go take away from it and then go think about it and then we come back and figure it out again. But thank you for everything you do, Joe, and the time you spend with me and the rest of the commission, not commission, your other department heads, because they come to you for a lot of stuff as well. So you've been good for that, Joe. Thank you for everything.
Thank you for your kind words. And I guess I did forget, I am requesting one FTE for the Hill City shop. That's just strictly in addition to the Rochford Road and and South Rochford Road being paid for 2024.
But I said, I'm not giving you an FTE, but I'm still thinking.
But it's gonna be needed. I mean, it's either that or or the the roads aren't going to get plowed in a timely manner. They'll still get plowed, but it won't be as quick as most of our residents like.
So the the request is for the Hill City area, correct?
And you had that paid, 73 or something, you had that paid through something else, didn't you? You already had that in your budget or something?
Yeah, it's already in our budget.
Yeah, through your whatever.
Anything else you want to share, Joe?
I don't, I don't have anything else. I thank you for the kind words, Deb. Sometimes I can be a little stubborn and and bullheaded, but I try and keep.
Well, you know, I think we owe you a little bit to keep her in line a little bit, so.
Well, he relates to me well then. Stubborn and bullheaded.
I thi, I think what Deb says is probably spot on. You know, you, that's one of the reasons why we like our people here at Pennington County. You tell us how it is, that's what we want to hear and that's what we need. We need honesty, so.
Both the team, and and you help all the team. You don't just help your own departments.
We don't always have to agree, but.
That's right.
We can agree to disagree, right?
There you go.
Yep, just hope you do it my way and then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
He doesn't. Who we got next?
Planning, Brittany, the birthday girl.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to Brittany, happy birthday to you.
Are you 25 today, Brittany?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I probably didn't expect that today, did you? I didn't expect to sing it either, but.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm measly misled.
So Brittany Molitor, Planning Director, just a couple of things with the budget. Our operations stayed steady. There wasn't any increase in our operation asks. We are just increasing one area in service and fees, and that's for that new agenda software going into next year that we're splitting with the commission office and auditor's office. That should actually create some significant efficiencies in our office, so we're looking forward to that new software with making staff reports and doing other things with the.
Increasing your fees for some of your.
Yes, we are proposing that.
With some of the stuff that you need for your future in planning as well, Brittany.
And then as far as the salaries and wages, the increase, some of that change is because of those bumps that were made after the budget was approved last year. There is a couple of reclassifications in there for planners. There is the increase and then the 4% plus one step. With the reclassification of planners, that's one of the things that our office has implemented, is an opportunity for growth in the position. Because of our office, there's so many moving parts and so many different ordinances to know. It's really important for retention and giving staff opportunity to learn than try to hire in and have less experienced staff. So that's, but they do have to earn it, so it isn't necessarily guaranteed. So there's certain requirements for them to get those reclassifications. But there are two class, reclassifications in the budget under salaries and wages. And then we're not asking for any equipment or vehicles or anything, so.
So Brittany, I was just glancing at this. On your second page for revenues, you have advertising fees. It shows actual, in 2021 was 19,000, 22 was 14,900. And you're expecting 15,000. Are you kind of estimating kind of low on the advertising fees or?
Um, it just depends on the number of requests. So the advertising fees are associated with variances, conditional use permits, anything we have to advertise. 2021 was a record year for everything in our office, for a number of building permits, for a number of requests. So that's why those advertising revenues are higher. We're seeing 23 actually staying pretty steady with what we saw in 2022, so that's why we kept it at that. And then as far as the other revenues, the tattoo licenses. We used to do all of the tattoo inspections in Pennington County with some further review by the State's Attorney's Office. It looks like it's under actually a municipal code and the city or the Department of Health should be doing those inspections. So we were advised not to continue doing those inspections and requiring those because of lack of authority. So that's why that is no longer in the budget.
I noticed that, that you were doing that, but it, so it's gonna go more under the public health and and city ordinance.
Or it should go under the city ordinance.
Brittany, a compliment to you as well. You took in over that department and you really took over that department. You went in there and you've been changing things since you've been in there in a positive way. I've got a nice second over there that talks all the time. I don't know if we can ever make him be quiet, but. Bottom line is, when you're up front or your team is up front, they need you once in a while, but it used to be you all the time. You had to stand up, you had to ask the questions. Now you see, a lot of times they can answer their own questions, do their own work. And to cer, certain extent, they need your help, I'm sure in the office, but I mean, out here, since I've been in here, what, nine years now? It's just empowering to watch that your team doesn't need you as much up front because you're training them well behind the scenes. Not perfectly because you'll never train enough because we'll always do something that you, as few people have said, holy cow. We can't keep track of you guys, one minute this, one minute that. I understand that, but. Kudos to you, Brittany. You're a good team leader. You keep track of your budget, you keep track of your people, and you train them well. So I'm very proud of you watching from where you came from that shy. I'm not standing up there saying anything to, you guys want change, you want me to do some positive things, I'm gonna get it done, and you did. So you're very efficient and you you have gotten it done and you keep moving forward. So that department only is getting better and better and pretty soon we'll overtake the city and we'll just do the job for them. Just kidding. You're just, you're doing well and and I've watched it and just that department and how it's evolved. And I can't say enough, I don't know how to say it, because I've been here nine years and it's weird how we can just like flailing a lot to what you've done for it. So I can't say enough about what you've done as well. Nice thing about having longevity in Pennington County is watching people evolve into these amazing leaders and going, and you knew that, I'll be up straight, I'm thinking, Brittany, she doesn't even say anything. How is she gonna lead a team? And you just, you showed me. And I was proud that you showed me because, you know, that makes me feel good that, you know, you did, so, good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. And Brittany, on the same, as the second page on this, you got your structural chart. And I think that's one of the biggest accomplishments that I've seen that when you came forward, took on the position, is you took the structure of it and you wanted to find paths for the people in the department to step up and move forward. And you and Jason both worked on trying to do that. And so your your organizational chart and offering that, I think, is big compared to what, four years ago.
Yeah, Jason and Brittany are a good team and they work well together for getting things done, so kudos to both of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Oskar.
Brittany, your increase in revenues by 3.25%. So are you seeing more, you know, the revenues for the registered deeds and treasure are down for this year because of the increase in interest rates? So are your fee, your revenue increases, is that based on an increase in fees? Or is it volume of permits, or I mean, are the volume of building permits down from last year or are they up from last year?
They're actually tracking. I mean, I have just like half the year they're tracking with what they were last year. We are proposing to increase some of the fees within our office because several of them have not increased for 15 years since I've been here in the amount of work and the amount of time that's put in between the applicants and the staff members. When people come into the office, we require them now to have an initial consultation. So that way a planner sits with an applicant, goes over their requests, so they basically build a relationship. So when they go through the process, it makes it simpler, so that communication, that line of communication is open. So some of these items are taking longer and they're more complex because what people want to do with their property is not necessarily black and white in our ordinance. So trying to work with them to find out where some of the things that they want to do fit in our ordinance. So it's taking a little longer to do things, so that's the reasoning for the request.
So then are permit fees proposed or 300,000 for 2024, 2023, they're 275,000? So to date, are the permit fees up then from last year?
They are about the same except for one permit last year was over $300,000 because it was that solar farm. So their building permit fee was like 330 some thousand dollars. One of the things with the building permit fees is our building permit cost per square footage follows the ICC proposed rates. So those adjust every year, so they go up whatever the market is. So then our building permits follow that, so that's why it's increasing.
Thank you.
So Brittany, did you have any comments you want to make?
No, I just, we are making a couple of changes. No, I just, we are, um, making a couple of changes, we're looking at some different things with, uh, possibly some drainage and, um, some other things with the three mile, um, plating jurisdiction, so we're working through that. Um, so that's taking some, some time.
And the hard rock mining.
The hard rock mining, yes, Cody is working on that as well, um, and we're also working with Dustin Willett with the, um, the update to his plan, because that follows along with our floodplain development permit, so there'll be some changes with that with his, uh, mitigation plan, so.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thanks, both of you.
Next we have IT, Lori Wagner. Big talks about artificial intelligence.
We don't even see her once a year, twice a year in the compensation, other than that, I don't think I ever see Lori Wagner. Are you still in there, that same building, or did you move?
As IT, we hide.
I don't really keep track of you very much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Lori Wagner, IT Director. Um, I think I pretty much stated what I wanted to say about the budget, our licensing fees went up. More than, even this year, I have to absorb some stuff this year, so, yeah, the, the fees are going up, so that's, that's the line item that went up tremendously online. Um, other than that, I just want to share some statistics with you guys. Uh, currently, our staff of twelve employees, two of which are software developers, support approximately nineteen departments and over eight hundred employees. Last year, we did about, there were about three thousand one hundred and eighty-two help desk tickets put in and resolved by our employees. This is an average of about two hundred and fifty per month. We manage over twenty-five hundred licensed assets, which include computers, laptops, printers, servers, switches, access points, et cetera. This year, we are scheduled to replace over one hundred computers, laptops, and tablets for the various depart- departments. This is a light year, next year, we predict we'll have over two hundred and fifty. Currently, we are working together as a team to strategize and come up with what's the best technology path to take for the new facility at nine hundred Concourse. That will not only work for Pennington County today, but will work and also work for the projected growth. We may see higher costs to implement these changes, but we are hoping to reduce costs over the year. I want to say that, over the years that I have worked with the IT group, I am very proud of them. They do, what they do, and I'm excited to watch them grow in the future. We try to create an environment in our department that encourages retention. At this time, we have three employees that have been here for at least two years by the end of twenty twenty-three. We have seven employees that are between five and ten years. One employee that will be here, that would have been here for twelve years, and one that has been here for twenty-one. I am hoping to retain this group that has significant institutional knowledge of the county's IT infrastructure for years to come. In our department, our most valued assets are our employees, and they are our top impo- um, priority. They have expressed to me their appreciation of the policy changes with the ability to use sick leave for facility closures, and they're excited to see the outcome of the wage study. I speak for the entire IT department when I say thank you to the Commissioners for what you have done for the employees. And I get choked up. Sorry. Anyways, if you have any questions?
I, I do.
Okay.
You know, with, things change as much as they are, Lori, I mean, we're look, constantly looking for ways to consolidate, to do things faster, more online, that type of thing, and you've, I think you've done an exceptional job, I remember three years ago, you know, you told some departments, start getting your own programs, start doing this, because things were changing, and you're, you guys are all, all the departments are working on some programs that have worked together to be more efficient, you know, and you're seeing it out in the community too, I mean, you, you're seeing key asks at fast move places, being able to do that, and your apps to be able to do that type of thing. So, you know, I, I think in the future for Pennington County, IT is important.
Yes, um, and that's what we're looking at when we talk to, when we talk about nine hundred Concourse. We had Golden West come in and talk to us, and we were trying to figure out the best way to handle things like our, right now, we have EVCs connecting the different facilities, outlying facilities, and we're looking to see if we have line of sites. We, the guys have been up on the building, looking to see if we have line of sites, if we can use radio towers and what we can do so that we can reduce some costs, monthly costs, for the departments and, and maybe make things more efficient, so. We're working on, where do we put servers, we're gonna have people down here, we're gonna have people out there, we have to split servers. Um, we're gonna have people down here still working, we'll have people out there working, so you know, you talked about, well, I think they have like twenty-four spots for IT in this new facility. Now, I'm not gonna fill those all at once, I won't wham-bam you guys with that, but, um, we're, we're gonna start slow to see how we need to work, because it's gonna be a different atmosphere for us. What do we need down here, do we need a network person down here? Do we just need help desk people down here, you know, a good share of our employees will be here, the law enforcement, and we support all those guys. Or maybe we only need one network person down here and no help desk, which I can't foresee, but, um, it, it's gonna be a different dynamic, and we have to work through it to see how it's going to play out for us, so. We will be gradually adding on an employee here or there, but it won't be all at once, so.
Well, I, I just wanted to make that point, that you guys are, I think it's amazing that you guys are all sitting down and talking about this, from Holly to Cindy to you, and everybody's.
Yeah, with the AVI coming in and the, all the technology that we need out at nine hundred Concourse, are we only gonna do it for what we need today? Or are we going to set it up so we have it for future? You know, it's, there are so many things to look at, so.
Right, technology is always changing.
It changes so fast.
Yeah.
Right. Done a good job, Lori, even if I don't see you, I saw you a couple times at compensation, but I saw you more when you first started, and then you got too efficient and effective as well, and so then you.
I hide in the corner, don't you know, IT people like to just hide in their corner.
But you're doing good.
Only come out when we have to.
It shows through your retention and the things you do, you do some pretty special things and funny things in your, I don't mean funny weird, I mean funny good, for your employees, so I think that's pretty cool, and I appreciate that. I appreciate, you know, it makes it more of a team when you do fun things.
Things, they like to work together, so, yeah.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on what Deb said, I think you've been pretty creative in your department for, for quite a while as far as work schedules and flexibility forms, so.
Just different events and things they have in their office is pretty cool, so. Now we have to talk to Shannon about his events and his issues, but.
Oh, thanks, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. I think we should charge Laura for all the stickers on her, on her computer, how much do you, see those stickers?
They all have a meaning though, don't they?
How many? Is that a county computer, is that yours?
Give me a minute to find.
That's something I do to mine, so I had to tease you.
Equalization, Shannon Rickenberg.
Efficient and effective, now we gotta get to Shannon.
I, I'd like to start out by saying I'm in the younger generation.
He has been listening. Younger in the seventy-year-olds generation, or the sixty-five, Shannon?
Oh, here we are. Just a second there.
Great, at the beginning of most guys.
My rule, mine just coming to burn.
Still being frugal, good job, Je- Shannon.
My budget isn't, um.
Kay, Shannon.
Isn't spectacular, so, uh, what I said in the memo is, is there's, uh, uh, there's an increase, uh, where half of it is to, uh, is just anticipated salary increases, just ordinary increases, and then I have one notable expense for replacement of computers, I'm, uh, in with that two hundred and fifty Lori was just talking about, uh, it's, it's our turn next year to replace computers. Uh, we've seen, uh, an increase, uh, minimal increase on some software costs, and that's, uh, that's what my budget is, I, I'm not looking for more people, and I'm not looking at a big expense next year, it's, uh, really ordinary stuff. Well, you're making it easy. It, it is really pretty simple, and that's my intention every time I come in here, is to make it easy.
So Shannon, your presentation wasn't nearly as good as Laura's.
I'm not feeling as much love here.
Nothing, nothing personal.
I, uh, I noticed she started out with all of the wonderful things she does, and I'm looking at mine thinking, yeah, I didn't put any of that down.
Where's Gorgman, we need him.
There's soap, we'll get done by three.
Jesus, process is simple for you, isn't it? I, I will say one thing, Shannon, uh, I think in your department, you stood up for your employees like no other, I mean, you.
I try to, which is the last paragraph that says they need more money.
I know, and you have, but, and I, I just gotta give you the kudos, and I think we're, I'll speak to Commissioners too, I mean, you, they're all well-versed, and even Board of Equalization, they're starting to come up, and they're getting a little more comfortable, even newer ones, but I mean, um, yeah, the struggle is the retention and that, but I think, uh, I think your employees know that you, you stick by them.
The, uh, we have three staff members yesterday and today that were hearing, in hearings in peer. One of them is Dawn, Dawn has a lot of experience. Uh, the other two have been with us for several years, but haven't been to a hearing in peer, this was their first year. Uh, we had somebody from another county, uh, sit through a hearing, because she has never done it before. Uh, she came to us to see how we do it. Uh, we had a conference last week, and another assessor met, uh, with Scott at that conference and sat down and said, how do I do this stuff? Uh, there are quite a few counties that come to us for the experience, because we get the experience. Uh, but now we're relying on some employees who've only had a few years in our office, and, and they're still helping other counties.
Mr. Chair.
Shannon, these are, um, these appeals in peer, these are ones that came out of.
Out of the County Board.
Equalization Board.
Yep, so we've got, uh, six that are going to the peer, we, after, uh, this morning, we've done three. Uh, we've got three more scheduled in a month, and we got one going to court, so one of them skipped peer and went straight to court.
Did we win or lose, or did you find out yet?
We won't find out for weeks. Uh, the, the office has to notify us by the middle of August, and it's usually about the first of August before we even start hearing. Uh, we're, we're pretty confident, but, um, we won't know.
Mr. Chair. I'll be out there in July at one of your hearings. I've already been contacted by Shannon, um, and she asked if I was available, because I'd made mention to her, I'd like to be out there, so I plan I'll be out there in, in July, so I'll get to, I'll, you'll get to show somebody else this process.
They're, um, they're, the hearings are open to the public, nobody ever sits through them, but they're open to the public, so I, I'm happy to have somebody sit through it. All we do is we just introduce the extra person as a guest, so everybody in the new room knows why you're there, and then, then you're not part of it, and it's, but anybody could do that. Uh, I'm happy and, to take somebody, and I've done it in the past for other counties.
So Shannon, you had a thousand people, thousand something that came back, member on appeals, and we ended up only with sixty-six guys. Um, that's how you, tells you how well-trained Shannon has his people, and I said something good about you, so I better take that with consideration there. Number two, um, I always do them teasing, Dawn and Rod and the experienced ones you have have a lot of patience, so that's always a, a nice helping thing and, uh, part of your team, because, man, you just have some really nice people with some really good patience, and that takes, that goes a long ways, so, um, you trained them well, you picked a good team, um, the new lady, um, Shannon, for your, um.
For the ag property.
Ag property, yeah, very good, um, I like it, she says it like it is, and I'm sure those ranchers and farmers don't get away as much. Um, I don't mean that mean, I mean that in a good way, they probably just relate very well, because she's just straight up, so. Um, she's one of your new additions that you hired from a different county, but just some really nice people, and even the new ones did really well this year, so, um, again, very well-trained, um, you're teaching them what they need to know.
We, uh, Gordon and I try to hire personalities, because we can teach anybody the appraisal job. Uh, but we need the personality to deal with the public and the politicians, uh, and then we teach them the job.
Okay, so you're not teaching them that, because we've seen your personality, so we're having Gordon teach them the personality, right?
No, we're hiring personalities.
I was gonna say, because if Gordon's hiring them, I can understand why you feel the love on a lot of those people, but if you, we might be in trouble.
We, we do have good staff, we have very good staff. Uh, the county in general has some good people, I work with some very good people, but in my office, I'm very proud of the employees we have, they're good.
No, they are, they have to deal with a lot.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Shannon, is there a, a date or a schedule for the one that's going to court?
No, uh, so what's happened is, is, uh, Trevor's got that one, uh, the holidayan.
What's that?
He, uh, holidayan, it's the holidayan that's going to court.
Right.
Uh, Trevor's written an appraisal, uh, we've got another appraisal from, uh, an independent appraisal, or the property owner does.
Right.
And, um, we are now working on, uh, discovery process, is it? Um, where the attorneys are talking, and then we set a court date. Uh, but right now, uh, the talk right now is, is let's get it figured out what we agree on and what we disagree on, so when we schedule for court and go to court, we're not gonna, we're not gonna argue the entire appraisal, let's just focus on the issues we disagree on. We're working through that right now.
Is that open to the general public too?
Uh, it's court, so, yeah, yep. Yeah, but I, I don't know when it'll be, no idea.
Well, let me know if you get a date.
Yep, I can do that.
So Shannon, any final comments or anything you want to share with the Commission?
Nope, I got, uh, to say my sales pitch about how, uh, my staff needs money, um, a- and that's it, the budget is really pretty simple.
Well, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, one, so, i- if it goes to court, is there a possibility that there's a compromise where, I know, I would, I know what both numbers are, but, you know, they could sit there and say, this is what we.
Okay, so the attorneys, uh, they're always looking for a compromise, this is just the nature of attorneys. Uh, but you've got two appraisers that, uh, are pretty confident in their number.
Okay.
Um, but when it, uh, when it goes to court, uh, the judge has a difficult time compromising on a number, because you've got two appraisers that say this number or this number, and the judge is not an appraiser. So unless there is something in evidence that the judge can hang a number on, it's gonna go for one, one or the other.
You know, I have been in situations, not for assessment appeals, but for values, and me and the other appraiser go out and sit on the bench, and he says, I'm probably gonna take your number and my number and divide it by two, which is exactly what they did.
And, and, uh, tha- that's what lawyers like to do.
There's one behind you, why are you talking about those?
I know, I'm, I'm sort of poking fun. But I, I don't know if, I don't know if that's gonna happen here, because we just started this.
Yep, okay, it'll be interesting to see how that goes.
Just, uh, just started talking, and, and we'll see what happens.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Cindy, I have one question before we follow up and go to public comment. Um, on your budget request proposal, since tomorrow we're gonna add, um, the sheriff with those two items that he, he had mentioned, those ten employees, and how that's gonna be paid in, in your, in this first statement, it says no new employees. This is, that would actually be a wash, so I don't think we'd have to see any changes in, in that. Because you said fifteen point ten percent, uh, our reserves would be at fifteen point ten percent, if we added all of those new employees, that would be those ten, so if, as he, as you heard him talk today, the revenues and all that stuff would, would pay for some, actually those ten, there would be a difference without those. Probably a few percent.
Holly did the worksheet, that she kind of put them all together, of all of the FTEs and then the net, so, yes, I knew there was nothing there that was really gonna affect budget, so. It's on what my numbers are, yes, that was a wash.
So the only other question I have is, could you give me the dates of, that you need? The bu- provisional budget passed by?
We have to have that approved in July.
We do the provisional by then in July, and then we, final budget is going to be by, is it?
End of September.
End of September. Okay, so tomorrow, we'll have those items from the sheriff, and the rest of our agenda, which is going to be and the rest of our agenda, which is going to be the court, well, no, court systems is gonna be moved to, with Judge Vifel, to the July.
Eighteenth meeting.
Meeting because of the conflict.
Is that coming tomorrow?
Nope, Judge Vifel.
Got a conflict tomorrow morning, so we'll start with dispatch.
Yep, we'll start with dispatch, emergency management, fire administration, human resources, commission office, then natural resources, 4H, and other requests. And then probably, probably be after lunch, we'll do the discussions of sheriff's department, depending on how things go tomorrow.
So, Cindy, Lloyd said those were washed, those ten employees. So, he has no increase in his budget, but he wanted two percent this year. Remember, on some of his employees. How many employees are that? Is that? What is he increasing? And then he's giving them two percent this year, then another four percent next year. Did he build that in his budget for next year?
That's projected in the revenue.
That he, that he already built the two percent in? He added it to his twenty-four budget?
No, that's not how I understood it.
That's why I'm saying, so he's not washed.
If, yes, ma'am, it would be.
It would be.
He explained that the cost of the employees was gonna be six hundred and seventy thousand.
Yes.
The revenue that he was gonna bring in from the feds is gonna be about a million. So, that's gonna cover the new employees, plus the increase that he's proposing of the two percent for his correctional officers and the law enforcement officers.
Yeah.
Okay, so then he wants to increase this year his detox, and he wants to increase his, some of his officers. How many is that at two percent increase?
That he is saying is gonna basically the the rest of the of the one million dollars?
That's where the four hundred thousand is going.
Is going to go towards that.
Yeah.
There is not gonna be any actual impact to the budget numbers, the the percent of reserves, because of the revenue that he's going to bring in to cover all of that. The new employees and the proposed increases for his employees.
And he has his two percent increase, so I just have to ask you guys, and I try to be mean. So, if anybody here has, needs to up their grade to two, two percent on their people, is that what we're gonna do? Because we're doing that for him. There's other people in the county that need that two percent or could bump their people right now. Are we okay adding that to our budget this year because it might be a wash next year? They can suck it up because they're down FTEs.
I I was just bringing that up for a purpose. I think that discussion we'll have tomorrow, but I mean, I I know what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not, I got the wash, and I got the six seventy and the four hundred, and he's got it worked out. But that's, you're not, you're just not affecting one department. You're affecting others if you're saying that we're gonna go ahead and do this, because other departments might need to do that to retain some of theirs.
Because you're.
Number two is, if we're down, how many FTEs were we down last year? How many were we down this year? On those revenues, did it reflect how much they gave back last year? So, if you're, let's say we were down fifty-five employees last year, did we get the money back for fifty-five employees last year? And then we put it in the general fund back in there, because they didn't, they didn't have them? Or how does that?
Anything that was unspent from wages, yes, went back in the general fund. Anything that was unspent, and that was one of the things that, I don't remember whether it was you or you, or maybe, maybe it was Commissioner Drew that asked about looking at the the underspent and the overcollected revenue. So, I will have that for you at the end of date tomorrow afternoon to discuss.
Well, that's what I mean, so.
See that, so if Holly has three FTEs and she only had, she only used one, she has two that she has extra.
Should her budget reflect when she gives that back? Did we just give it to Holly for FTEs, or can they use that money from FTEs only for FTEs? Or can they use it in their budget for whatever they want?
I see, yeah, I think I get what you're saying.
Holly, now Holly used the money because she had to get a printer, and she needed a, something for commission office. She needed blah, blah, blah. She didn't use that money, but she turned back enough for one, but she spent the other money for the other. What I'm saying is, do that, if you have five FTEs, in Laura's case, does all, four now? Does all four stay towards FTEs, or can Laura go, okay, I need to get a new computer and everything else? So, I'm only turning back for for three, and I'm gonna keep the others for revenues.
In the auditor's office, the only thing that we monitor is bottom line. We don't look at what they're spending on wages versus what they're spending on operations and say, oh, you can't spend any more in wages because you're overdrawn. It's the bottom line. So, if a department was down in personnel, they could have spent it on operations if a printer broke down, or or just the, just the fact that we know everything has went up. They could have done that, and I can run a report to kind of show you that if you'd like.
But you see what I'm saying?
What would the report?
For me to know every department that was had, because I don't even know who all has open positions. I just know I don't, and I'm very thankful for that.
And and I don't wanna micromanage in one sense, but I just want to say, if you're down eight employees, but then I just use the revenue for something else, because I don't need the eight FTEs right now, we're okay with that. Even if you ask for four more or three more or whatever, and you didn't use the revenue. You've had, you've had, for instance, two employees open for the last four years. So, you gave back that money every year because you didn't really need them?
You should.
Mr. Chair.
I'm asking.
Yeah, Mr. Glassner.
Could you run that report just, I mean, is it a big, thick report, or is it something pretty easy that you were talking about? I mean, I don't want like a five hundred thousand page report here. If it's like something in three pages and columns, maybe it's appropriate.
In the front of your binders, you have the unexpended report that is by department that shows what they turned back. Now, you have to be careful in how you're analyzing that, because it doesn't say it's due to being down five employees.
Right, that's what's always hard to know.
We'd have to dig deeper into that, but that report shows you how much they turned back.
Which one is that? Which one?
It's just stuck in the front of your binders.
I I didn't have one in.
I don't think I had one of those either.
I'm just saying if you have.
I'm sorry, it's in the back of your budget section.
So, if you have ten FTEs, you didn't use the ten FTEs, you've been down ten FTEs for most of the year, but then you're only put a hundred thousand back into the budget. Don't you think that's kind of creepy? You know what I'm saying?
Well, I don't know that it's kind of creepy, but I think that I would, I would say that the department heads are frugal enough to know
In the budget.
That if they leave that, it's gonna help our bottom line for the unassigned fund balance for the next year.
Right.
And so, they're only gonna spend that if it's something happens that they need to spend. It's gonna be for a one-time expense. It's not gonna be for something that's ongoing, because they're still gonna need that in their budget in personnel the following year.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
It's in budget.
Mr. Rusk.
So, in the real world, if we could get twenty percent in reserves, the only two ways that I really see is an adjustment in wages or an adjustment in the number of employees. Those would be the two most logical.
To get back to, yeah, to get back to twenty percent.
Well, if you're down fifty employees, shouldn't you be getting at least a million back or something a year?
The term that we hear from the department heads is when you're balancing the budget on the backs of the employees.
Always did it for years, and then we decided it was a bad idea, because the rest of us were like, I ain't doing that no more.
So, is there something else that we can live without? And support our employees so that we recruit and retain, which is the whole thing that, you know, Carol was talking about.
Yeah.
Lori was talking, I think every department head kind of feels the same way. They want to be able to recruit and retain the employees that they have.
So, a lot of people cut their capital assets, their things that they decided they didn't cut, like wages or anything like that. They just use some of their capital funds for.
That's why I wanted to know what that return was, because that kind of shoots up our reserve. I know right now it's at fifteen to fifteen and a half, which to me, it it, it's not where we wanted to be. But we also, we're in the point where we're giving these increases to employees that we know we need to do. So, are we okay with, I mean, I don't mean to get into this right now, because we posted it tomorrow, but.
It just scares you when it's an inflationary type area that you'd have reserves at low. That's not a smart move.
Well, we want.
Departments were also asked to provide you the information on what's not mandated.
Yeah.
And you can look at those programs as well, if that's an area that needs to be addressed.
Big enough. I I was listening to this stuff online too. That's, I don't know if you guys did that for, through the state, through that thing that Joan had sent us. It's very interesting. But a lot of it, you know, and some you have to be reiterated, but, yeah, we have a lot of. And is those programs gonna be affecting us that much?
Well, it might be wise to get a report from each department of what's non-mandated that they're spending money on, so we can see if we said, let's cut all non-mandated, how much would that just, I mean, what would that number even be?
There's a lot of stuff that's not mandated.
Right, they're in the narratives, but it doesn't make it just an easy look.
Right, and like, I know Laura talked about the diversion, that if you get rid of this, it's gonna cost us X number more. And Brian did the same thing with the jail. If we do this, it's gonna cost this. So, just because it's not mandated, doesn't mean it's not the right thing.
Yeah, right.
This is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. So, that's where we're at. We'll, we'll have those discussions tomorrow with Brian when he comes in, but.
Is he gonna have it outlined, or do we need to call?
I think his crew is gonna try and get you a piece of paper that has it all outlined.
But I will check that just to make sure. That way, if he wants me to call him, I could call him.
But I just wanted to make sure we knew what we're prepared for tomorrow on that part. And like you said, we have to have a provisional passed by the end of July, and then we can still work on it. So, I think Cindy did a good job of presenting this with a provisional, so that second meeting in July, we could probably approve that, but then if we have some more changes, we'll talk about that tomorrow, so.
Go outside.
With that, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we just take a recess till tomorrow morning.
Moved to recess till tomorrow morning.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to recess till eight o'clock tomorrow morning. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.